Right?
Yeah.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, welcome to the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five School Board of Manatee County Workshop. I want to officially call this workshop to order. Uh, before we begin with public comments, we did have some agenda amendments. Um, so I wanted to share that the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda and include all items listed under the agenda amendments on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five agenda. It was updated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, posted to the district website, manteschools.net. Items were just finishing up, putting up the, uh, presentations for this morning and stuff like that. Um, and, um, we can go ahead and move to public comments. So if you're new to, uh, district public comments, uh, screen above us is your three-minute countdown time. Um, we do not, uh, it is our board policy that we do not respond directly to public commenters. So if you have a question and you're looking for a response, you won't, you won't get it. We're not going to create a dialogue here. You may get a response from a board member later on, um, in discussion and, and, and mention, you know, certain public comments, but just be aware of that. Um, other than that, we should be good as long as we don't curse and yell on screen. Um, so, so, um, I'll call us up. I'll call first one up, uh, to come up and give us a public, uh, presentation, Danielle Hartley, followed by Chuck Fradley, followed by Addison Hartley. So Danielle Hartley?
Good morning.
Good morning.
When I moved to Manatee County twenty years ago, I became involved with the Manatee County School District, first as an educator and then as a parent. One of the features that sets Manatee County apart from other school districts is its robust charter school sys- um, system. These charter schools give parents choice, allowing them to send their children to schools that meet their individual needs. Today, I'm here to advocate for these charter schools. I want to make something very clear. This is a very simple issue with a complicated excuse. In two thousand sixteen, I voted yes on the half penny sales tax referendum because it would support all public school students. The campaign materials, the public discussions, and the ballot never mentioned that public charter schools would be excluded. In fact, Manatee School District officials explicitly solicited the help of the charter school communities to get this referendum passed, promising the funds would benefit all public school students, district and charter. Years later, this board decided to use the taxed revenue for district schools only, eroding the trust of the very communities it appeared, appealed to for help back in two thousand sixteen. Back then, the message was clear. The sales tax funds would benefit every student. Citizens did not vote to exclude charter schools. Instead, this board made that decision. Over the last few months, this board has offered all kinds of complicated excuses to explain why the sales tax funds have not been distributed to public charter schools since two thousand twenty-three. And honestly, none of them really matter. It's time to do the right thing, to keep the promise you made when we headed to the polls in two thousand sixteen. The solution is simple. Allocate the funds to charter schools as promised. On Tuesday, this board voted for a change in leadership. Please set an example for the new superintendent, whoever that may be, by making this right. Distribute the funds withheld for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and ensure future budget allocations include charter schools equitably. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Chuck Fradley, followed by Aunt Addison Hartley, and then Chrisa Mayer?
Time to start.
You're good.
Hello, board members. I'm Mr. Tate, and Mr. Choat, Mr. Kennedy, and Morse Spray, Ms. Felton, thank you, and, um, Mr. Chapman, thank you. Um, before I start, I also want to thank Dr. Oysong for his service to Manatee County. Being a superintendent is not an easy job. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chuck Fradley. I'm a proud product of Manatee County Schools. Um, for the past seventy years, I've served the families of Manatee County as principal and director of operations for Rowlett Academy. Prior to that, I served the school district of Manatee County for twenty-two years as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and director. My wife is a proud principal of Anna Maria Elementary. In my eyes, there's no separation between the purpose of district schools and charter schools. We are here to educate children to be successful, confident learners and leaders. Our residents want the best for their children because they understand the benefits of an educated community and workforce, as evident by the support of the referendum and the sales tax. I also understand scarcity of resources. According to Stephen Covey, the author of Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, people with a scarcity mentality tend to see everything in terms of win/lose. There's only so much, and if someone else has it, that means there is less for me. The more principled-centered we become, the more we develop an abundance mentality. The more we are generally happy for the successes, well-being, achievements, recognition, and good fortune of other people. We believe their successes adds to, rather than detracts from our lives. In two thousand sixteen, then-superintendent Dr. Green engaged in support of charter school families to support the continuance of the current half penny sales tax by offering a portion of what was left to charters after district needs were met. Charter school leaders spoke at that October twenty-fifth, sixteen, meeting with concerns about the vagueness of the plan. The board then amended the motion to say the concept is for a year, and the district and charter will work together for procedures moving forward. There never were any meetings held. There never was a plan created. Dr. Green left, and members of the board came and went. I realize this board is not responsible for the promises made from a previous board. However, this board is responsible for the decision made on August eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and I don't believe that you all had the full picture. Parental choice is not going anywhere in Florida. The one in five children in Manatee County that attend charters right now are not going anywhere, and it is going to grow. Mr. Die presented you with two choices on August eleventh. Either stop additional sales tax funding for charters or use the formula required by the state of, for continuation of additional funding for charter schools. I strongly encourage you to recognize that the parental landscape has changed dramatically since two thousand sixteen. I know each of you has the same amount of care, love, and responsibility for all the students in Manatee County, regardless of district or charter. I hope that this board follows the intent established by our most recent Florida statutes and leads the way in Florida by doing something they don't have to do now, but doing something because it's the right thing to do. Please encourage district leadership to reevaluate planned construction and maintenance projects. Please reevaluate your decision from August eleventh and take Mr. Die's option number two. Use the formula required by the state for continuation of additional funding for charters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Addison Hartley, followed by Chrisa Mayer, and then Ann Wilson?
Hello, my name is Addison Hartley, and I am a current tenth grader at Brayden River High School. I'm here today to beg the Manatee County School Board to right a wrong. Two years ago, in two thousand twenty-three, the School Board of Manatee County cut all funding from the half-cent sales tax to public charter schools. As a former public charter school student, I can confidently say that these schools deserve the funding that has been immorally denied to them. Over twenty percent of children in Manatee County attend public charter schools, so cutting the funding to charter schools is to deny twenty percent of children in our county the same funding as the other eighty percent of children. This is just not right. This should be an easy fix, but it has proven to be quite elusive. After all, it has taken two years to even get to a vote. As such, I feel that it is my duty as a student and citizen to at least speak to the school board on behalf of my peers. This sales tax slash charter school is to fund important programs that benefit the lives of students, from band programs to accelerated math programs. What is rarely recognized is the effect that these programs have on the school district of Manatee County. Most charter schools catered to elementary and middle school students, and these same students go to attend district high schools. This was the case for me, and it is the case for many of my peers. I'm a member of the Brayden River High School Marching Band of Pirates, the state champion marching band of pirates. Our band brought a great sense of pride to our district and right for Liso. However, have you ever considered that a significant number of man members came from Rowlett Middle Academy, which is a public charter schools? Is it fair to say that none of these students matter enough for their school to receive funding? That the skills they learned at Rowlett, allowing us to be a great band, don't matter? No, it is not fair. In every school I've attended, both district and charter alike, I've been taught to do the right thing. I've been taught repeatedly that kindness is not optional and that it is an obligation, that I need to stand up for what is right, even if it is not what is easy, that I need to use my voice for those who can't, that I matter and that everyone matters, regardless of who they are and where they come from. So please, listen to me now as I say this. Why, when every child in this county is taught to do what's right, does the school board not have to follow these same morals? Why, when we are all taught that people are, all people are equal and deserving, does the school board get to ignore and defund twenty percent of children? Why, when we are taught to be kind to others, does the school board get to misappropriate funds from people who deserve an equal share? All I ask is this. It should be simple, really. Please, vote to fund our public charter schools. Please, vote to help the lives of twenty percent of our county's children. Please, vote to get back, give back. Please, vote for us, the students you serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chrisa, Chrisa Mayer? Followed by Ann Wilson? And then Dr. Esslinger?
I'm not going to repeat all of the reasons that you should give this funding because you know them. Everybody here is repeating what you already know, so I'm going to tell you why this is personal for me. I moved to Florida from New Jersey the summer after seventh grade. The schools in Florida were at least a full year behind on curriculum and told my mother that if she didn't want me to repeat the classes I had already taken, she would have to send me to the high school. I was twelve, so that didn't happen. My experience that followed in the Florida school system was nothing short of horrific compared to what I had experienced in New Jersey. Caring, supportive teachers were replaced by misogynistic deans and administrators who treated students like garbage. I used to hide in my closet to make my mom think I had left for school. Why am I telling you this at a workshop about charter school funding? Because the two drastically different experiences I had in two different school systems made me really not want to have children and subject them to the education system in Florida. I am a person of action, though, and not someone who just complains. So from the time I turned eighteen and could vote, I supported every referendum, every sales tax, and every increase to education funding in whatever county I was currently living in. I worked for the Education Foundation of Sarasota County, raising money to help support classroom grants and special programs, and I did these things long before I had my daughter when I was thirty-six years old. Because education is the responsibility of every person in the community, not just people who have children. My husband and I were married for thirteen years before we had our daughter, and I worried about what she was going to experience in our schools. And then somebody told me about Rowlett, a school with a good culture and great curriculum, and we were lucky that she secured a space at the school through their lottery system. I spoke with some of you during your campaign, and I very directly asked if you were going to deliver the funds to charter schools. I've supported Manatee County schools with my tax dollars since I moved here in December of nineteen ninety-eight. I've supported an entire generation of students in this community, but now my tax dollars are not supporting my own child's education. This school board openly courted the parents of kids enrolled in charter schools to help them get this half-cent sales tax renewed in two thousand sixteen, and they have never seen the full amount that was supposed to be allocated based on enrollment. The problem with Florida schools is not with the teachers and the people who work in the schools. We should not be pitted against each other as charter families and district families. It's the elected officials who need to make the right choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Wilson? Followed by Dr. Esslinger?
Good morning, Manatee Board of Education, Mr. Chapman, and community guests. I'd like to thank the board for your continued support of charter schools in Manatee County. When I spoke at the April board meeting, I shared about my family and moving here from California with two teenage daughters. I expressed gratitude that we had a choice in our children's high school education. Attending the State College of Florida Collegiate Charter School made a defining difference in their futures and in the futures of other Manatee County students as well. When the girls were in high school, we visited Boston to explore colleges. While riding on the train, we noticed two young men sitting across from us. They had University of Florida stickers on their backpacks, so we struck up a friendly conversation. Turns out, they were from Manatee County and had graduated from the State College of Florida Collegiate School, receiving complete associate's degrees along with their high school diplomas. The boys went on to UF to complete their bachelor's degrees and were in Boston interviewing for admission to Harvard Medical and Dental Schools. For our high school daughters, these students were a tangible visual of the possibilities ahead when they graduated from the same program. One of our daughters went on to earn a bachelor's degree in engineering and works at a place affectionately called NERD, New England Research and Development at Microsoft. Our other daughter earned her bachelor's and master's in information systems and works in artificial intelligence at Google. I always tell young people that the most important name on any diploma is theirs. I know there is no school that can guarantee any specific outcome. However, for our daughters, and I would say for those boys on the train, having had the choice to attend a high school that honored their abilities to accelerate their educations, did build a foundation for their future successes. I currently work at Lakewood Ranch Preparatory Academy, a charter school in Manatee County with a college preparatory focus. It offers a variety of accelerated coursework, the Cambridge Program out of Oxford University, and we are the only high school in Florida that has a partnership with LeCom. This collaboration provides high school seniors in Manatee County an opportunity to obtain early provisional acceptance to LeCom Medical School if they meet certain criteria and follow the program requirements. If this option had been available years ago, perhaps those students we met in Boston would have stayed right here in Manatee County to attend medical school and then establish their practices. It's imperative that we have the courage as a community to continue evolving and improving educational choices for our families. With that comes the need for fiscal responsibility to ensure fair funding. I ask the board to honor HB one-two-five-nine, which states that charter schools should be paid their portion of the half penny sales tax based on their FTE enrollment. We are united with the goal that all Manatee County students have the chance to maximize their potential and craft their best lives. I thank you in advance for leading with integrity and including the twelve thousand Manatee Charter School students in that vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Esslinger? Followed by, uh, Dr. Jones? And Steve Sikafus?
Good morning, board members.
Morning.
And interim superintendent. My name is Dr. Laura Esslinger, and I stand before you again, not only as a concerned citizen and taxpayer, but as a proud, proud graduate of this very district, a parent of a district two, charter school student, and a doctor who has seen the lifelong cost of broken promises. On August eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, certain members of this very board made a decision. One not based on law, statute, or bill, but on rules written by the board itself. You chose to deny charter schools a share of tax funding should a millage ever be passed. You may claim it's not illegal, but it is a broken promise. And what's worse, it's a breach of our public trust. It isn't about legality, it's about integrity. At that two thousand twenty-three meeting, confusion and panic took hold when you realize that by two thousand thirty-one, charter schools will be entitled legally to their fair share of funding. Statutes and House bills were passed to protect, protect charters, not to punish them. With nearly twenty-one percent of our students now in charters, that was roughly six million dollars. So what did you do? You voted no. You asked your attorney, Mr. Die here, if charter schools could sue. Instead of planning how to fund them, you said, "How can we fight them?" Why? Is it because students learn differently at charters? Because their brains don't fit your certain mold? I'm going to share a personal story again. I graduated from Southeast High School in nineteen ninety-nine, but my husband attended Manatee High until he dropped out. He was placed in a dropout prevention program that absolutely failed him. If a charter school had been available, one that celebrated his unique learning style, he would have graduated with pride. He is today a very successful, productive man, but emotional scars will always remain. Now imagine, what if all these charter schools closed? Can our already strained public schools absorb twenty-one percent of our students? Would they even welcome them who learn differently? These schools serve all types of learners. They deserve to be funded equitably and now. Let me be clear, two thousand twenty-six is a voting year. We will watch and we will remember. By two thousand thirty-two, charter enrollment will exceed twenty-one percent. Will you be prepared to fund them or continue delaying hoarding all the money? Or be forced to act? Thank you for finally holding this workshop. Let's be transparent and fair. Lead with honesty, compassion, and keep your promises. Fund all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jones? Followed by Steve Sikafus, and then Jacob Durant?
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dr. Bill Jones, uh, proud alumnus of Manatee High School, class of nineteen sixty-six, and I've been president of Manatee, or Renaissance Arts and Education and Manatee School for the Arts since nineteen ninety-eight. If you listened to the October two thousand sixteen board meeting concerning the sales tax surcharge referendum and the sharing of those monies with the charter schools, you may have heard me as a voice in the wilderness, asking the school board to look at all the facts and reconsider that resolution that had been given to them to pass. Sadly, a louder, more powerful voice pushed the board to move forward with a resolution that betrayed the will of the voters and created an inequitable program, but not before the board passed an amendment that would have led to a more equitable distribution of that money. That voice was so loud and powerful that when the resolution was published, it was in its original form and did not include the amendment that the board had approved. That superintendent not only violated the will of the voters, but also totally disregarded the will of the board. And so, we lived with that program for several years, and charter school students were given scraps from a very rich table. Then in two thousand twenty-three, the scraps were taken away completely. Once again, there was my voice in the wilderness. Members of the board at that time received communications from me about this subject. But again, louder, more powerful voices told them not to worry about it. It was all laid out in that original resolution, cut and dried, take a vote, let's move on. And so they did. Now, here we are in two thousand twenty-five, and the subject has raised its head once again. At this point, I want to thank this board and the individual members at this time for their thoughtful engagement. You have spoken with us, met and discussed, asked questions, asked for information, listened to our comments, and have given us the recognition that a group representing over twenty percent of your population would hope for. Please be clear. It's not about some clause that a superintendent slipped into the resolution nearly ten years ago, or continuing to hide behind a law that allows the board to withhold voter-approved funding from roughly twenty percent of all public school students in Manatee County. In fact, that law does not stop the board from sharing those funds. No. Now it's about doing the right thing as it should have been done in two thousand sixteen. I couldn't help but notice that the outgoing superintendent listed among the accomplishments nearly six hundred million dollars of new school instruction, construction. It struck me that the annual share of the sales tax surcharge funds that the charter schools would receive as an equitable distribution would be less than two tenths of one percent of that construction money. I ask you to move judiciously to include the charter schools in the equitable distribution of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sikafus, Jacob Durant, Ryan Murphy?
Good morning, board.
Morning.
Good morning, district leadership. First of all, thank you. This has been a tough week, so thank you for continuing to support the kids and families in Manatee County. I speak to you not just as an educator, but as someone who has lived this work for over thirty years, on campuses and classrooms and alongside families. What many people don't realize is that Manatee County is a national leader in parent choice. We rank in the top five in Florida for the percentage of charter school students, and we're in the top five percent of all counties nationwide where parent's choice works. Because for parents, school choice is personal. It's the ability to choose a school that meets their child's needs. It gives families access to programs that challenge and inspire, to safe environments and to better outcomes. Parent choice also drives accountability. When families con- When families can choose, schools must listen. They must respond. That makes the entire system better. And for thousands of working families in Manatee County, parent choice is what makes equity real. Not a zip code, not a waitlist, a choice. That's something to celebrate, something to protect. Over the past few months, I've stood here and shared that charter students are public school students, that we raise the school grade and save taxpayers millions of dollars, and that we are one district and one community of learners. Yet there are three facts that cannot be ignored, the facts that show charter students were not supposed to be left behind. Number one, the 2016 resolution passed by the board clearly stated that the surtax was for the children of Manatee County, not some of them, all of them. Number two, 2016 board unanimously agreed to give charters the one-year block grant and directed the district to work with charters to establish an equitable distribution going forward. Number three, the ballot the voters approved weeks later described the surtax as county-wide and made no mention excluding public charter school students. Still, in today's district presentation on the surtax, there's no mention of the board's amended motion. There's no mention of the collaboration that was supposed to happen, just a citation of a faulty, flawed, and subversive executive action. That's not just a small oversight. It's an important gap that's had real financial consequences for the charter students. So we have to ask, I have to ask, has the district formally acknowledged that the 2016 executive action was never updated? Has there ever been any recognition that the district's leadership in 2016 didn't follow through on the board's directive? Did they re-watch the 2016 board meeting they cited? Did they review the minutes of the meeting? Because if they did, the rest of the presentation would not be based on a half of a story. And certainly would not erase the intent of the board or the will of the voters. Not sharing the sales tax with charter students is a direct blow to parent choice. It tells families who made a lawful, supported, and celebrated choice, your children don't count. And that message undermines everything Manatee County has stood for. So today, we're asking you to right it wrong. I urge you to vote to distribute the 2425 sales tax funds and ensure equitable distribution going forward. Thank you.
Jacob Durant? Followed by Ryan Murphy.
Well, good morning. I'm Jacob Durant, principal of Palmetto Charter School. Thank you for having us today. I don't have notes today. I wanted to come and kind of just freely speak with you and look at you and really just plea on behalf of our kids. We have 458 kids at Palmetto Charter, a K-8 public school. We're in year 15, and our charter is written, as we look back in March, to be a feeder for the district schools for high schools. And as the district has grown, so too has our students to parish community, Palmetto specifically, but I've had students at Southeast and Manatee. I'm not sure about Bay Shore in the last couple of years, but I'm sure they're on their way. What really strikes me, it's just, you know, it's a fairness thing here. And our students unequivocally deserve the same funding as their district friends and families in a district school. And, you know, as a parent, I have an incoming seventh grade student. Got to recognize her this morning for reading over 10 million words this school year. My fourth grade son, who's 10, turning 11 next month, his name's Jack, found his love of reading this year at Palmetto Charter School. And I have a kindergartner coming in next year, and he's just pumped to wear uniforms and look like big brother and sister next year. But all three of those students deserve the same educational experience and elevated one that we can offer. And so I'm here kind of as a dad too, but also as a principal, as a stakeholder, an advocate for these kids because they're our future. And I've reached out and, you know, the offer's still there. I'm happy to show you around our school, to meet with you, to share what we do, but to work together, to share notes, to support your efforts too. And I just think that, you know, hopefully through this workshop, something great happens and that we leave a tough week that you've all had empathy for, empathize for that, but that we leave, you know, kind of setting direction to where there's some resolution and some great will for all as we leave today. So thank you very much, and I hope you have a restful summer too. I want to throw that out there as well.
You too, Jacob.
Thank you.
Ryan Murphy? Followed by Gabrielle Cortez Albain.
Good morning. As I've spoken here in the past as well, and moving into the summer, soon we'll have our children be able to join us to address these issues as well. A couple of things that I wanted to do, I wanted to actually read the general operating fund, the one millage that voters voted for. Shall the school board of Manatee County continue the current one-mill Ad Valorem millage from July 1st, 25 through June 30th, 29? For school safety, security, recruiting and retaining teacher staff, students' achievement through more institutional time and support, early literacy programs, career and technical education STEM, visual and performing arts, athletics and performing in public schools, public charter schools with oversight by an independent citizen committee to ensure proper funds. The capital fund for the half-cent sales tax, existing, the existing school one-half cent sales tax for capital outlay of educational facilities. Shall the Manatee County School Board extend the existing countywide one-half cent sales tax for 15 additional years from January 1, 2018 to ending December 31, 2032? Charging its audit committee with the oversight of the surtax, thereby maintaining revenues statutorily available to be used for capital expenditures, reduce overcrowding, reduce portable classrooms, renovate existing schools, build new schools where needed, purchase technology, and improve student safety and achievement. Mr. Chairman, you actually asked legal in a past meeting, "Oh, are we within our legal authority not to fund that?" And you had a very nice comment. And I noticed that when other people were speaking, specific items about capital funding and what Manatee County voters for, your body posture continued to change, and you continued to hold your chin and shake your head, "No." You can play the tape, you can look back. Body posture matters, and this shows what this board feels as ambassadors of your board. That's what's being represented. I think it's really disrespectful. Being on your phone, not silencing it and looking at your text messages, is not really appropriate behavior, especially for someone who's in this position. I found that with my kids in Palmetto Charter School, I found a school that fit their needs. Both our children have special needs, both of them have learning that matters. The standard public school, Palmetto and Elementary, we have several teachers that are in that school that are friends of our family. And even when my son started, we had a couple others that were there. Nothing wrong with the school, it's just different. It's about school choice. You actually asked in a prior meeting, "Maybe we need to have a committee or review why students want to go to charter schools." That research is widely available. And I know that you've visited our school in the past. And as this board reached out to charter schools to solicit our information, we had signs at our school promoting them as well.
Appreciate it.
Please look at what you voted for.
Gabriella Cortez Albain and Lori, sorry if I mispronounce this, Diamont Abdullah? Get it?
Good morning. My name is Gabriella Cortez Albain. I am a student at the University of Central Florida, and I'll be graduating this year with two degrees, one in interdisciplinary studies and public administration at age 20. Why? I graduated from the State College of Florida Collegiate School with my associate's degree, a charter school in Manatee County. Alongside completing my degree, I work as a professional dancer for one of the largest entertainment companies in Florida, and I just opened for Pitbull three days ago. I attribute many of these accolades to my education at Rowlet Academy, also a charter school in Manatee County. Some people in Manatee County know me as the 2023 Manatee Community Foundation Spirit of Manatee Youth Philanthropy recipient, the Manatee Chamber of Commerce Youth Health Awards recipient, or the outstanding graduate of the SEFCS Class of 2023. I receive these awards based off of my passion for serving the community, something instilled in me through my K-12 charter school education. Apart from my excellence in the arts, Rowlet instilled my leadership skills and love for the community, and the State College of Florida developed my disciplined work ethic and initiative to give back. I stand here and say that I would 100% not be here if it were not for my charter school education. Everybody wants their students to be overachievers, receive these accolades, and give back to their community. But how do you expect students to give back to their community if their community has not given back to them first? Through unique programs for youth development, imperative for their success. An argument is that throwing money at a problem won't solve it. However, addressing the root will, and education is the key to reversing generational poverty. 100% of my graduating class received their AA, and approximately 92% of them are set to receive their bachelor's this year, 50% of them being first-generation college students. Some of my peers are even at top universities like Stanford, where otherwise they would have been at Title I schools, where the education is just incomparable and they would not have had the same opportunity. So what role do you want to be in this fight? To be part of the reason that students, no matter what tax bracket they're in, have the same opportunities and success stories such as mine and my peers? Or be an obstacle to the movement to bridge the gap and make Manatee County a great place to live for all? Thank you.
Thank you. We point over, we just got to keep comments when you're here. It's okay, just don't do that again, please. Thank you. I'd love you to stay the whole time. Lori Diamont Abdullah?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here, as you probably have guessed, to speak of the fair funding of Manatee County half-cent sales tax. In 2016, the residents of Manatee County came together to support an investment in our public schools. The half-cent sales tax was approved with the shared belief that it would benefit all students in our county. No one in 2016 voted to exclude charter schools. That language was not on the ballot, it was not in the campaign materials, it was not in conversations with voters. And it certainly wasn't what the voters believed that they were supporting. Families supported it with the understanding that it would benefit every child regardless of whether they attended a district-operated school or a public charter school. That's why we're here. People are angry, they feel betrayed, and you are losing their trust. If voters cannot count on their money being used as promised, it will be significantly harder to unite this community behind any future initiative like this. The message from the community is not one of division, it's one of fairness. Public charter schools are a part of the district's educational landscape. Their students are Manatee County students. The teachers are Manatee County educators. You asked the public for trust in 2016, and they gave it. You asked them to invest in children, and they did it. But now the rules have changed midstream, and charter schools were suddenly excluded from this funding despite continuing to serve thousands of Manatee County students. That violates both the spirit and the letter of the 2016 campaign in which the school board specifically asked for help of the charter schools to get this tax passed. And we did. We are not asking for special treatment, we are asking for fair, equal treatment. After this school year, my kids will be entering into district high school, and we will no longer be attending a charter school. So I don't really need to care about this. It won't really affect me anymore, right? But it does. As a Manatee County taxpayer that voted in favor of this, I stand by my vote to invest in the education of all students, not just mine. At this very point, it doesn't matter what happened in the past, but you all, sitting up there, have complete control to make this right. You all were elected or appointed to do the right thing for Manatee County students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, appreciate everybody's public comment. We'll get to that topic here second. Our first topic though, for the workshop, is the 2526 budget, capital budget specifically. We have that presentation, I'll give it to, Mr. Chapman, you want to give it to Ms. Rinaldi?
I think it's Ms. Sellers.
Ms. Sellers first?
Yeah, our deputy superintendent.
All right.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Chair Choat, board member, superintendent. Our agenda today, let's see, if we can get the slide put up. The agenda today is going to go over the preliminary five-year plan. The data that's going to be used today is through May 6. We had to put a stick in the sand to be able to make a presentation to you. We will, when we bring back the tentative and final budgets, we'll be bringing back where the five-year plan finishes as we end up getting the rest of the funding from the legislature. We have the certification of the property values on July 1st, those sort of things, so. But to move on, the agenda is going to first go over revenue. Then we're going to touch on the construction projects that we've got going on, the timeline and some of the Jacob report priorities, and then we're going to go over the expenditure detail. Okay, so in regards to revenues. So the district uses three state sources to fund some of the capital projects. The first one is the Ad Valorem property taxes. This is one of the state sources that is shared with the charter schools on the prescribed state glide scale. Then there's also the capital outlay and debt service funds. That's C-O-N-D-S, it's an acronym. And these are funding for the projects that are on the board-approved priority list and included in the educational plant survey. Then there are PICO funds, which stands for Public Education Capital Outlay. The largest portion is PICO that is for the charter schools that is passed through, and this is for their capital outlay expenditures. And that formula is based on all of the charters in the state of Florida and then whatever formula the state uses to put that together. This district has some PICO grants for the MTC Airport Project and for the Fire Range. And we also, the district receives PICO funding for the facility safety grants. Let's see, then we also have local sources. There's about five featured that I'll highlight on this page because the next slide has the larger local revenues. We've got the financing that the district has secured through the certificates of participation. In 2023, this district secured 170 million for some capital projects, construction projects. And then just this, a couple months ago, we had the Series 2025 for another 150 million for two new high schools, elementary schools, sorry about that. Then the district also receives local revenues related to interest and refunds related to the SBA investments and then refunds on the P-card rebates. Then there's also fuel taxes, and this is from the road tax. These funds are used for roads, sidewalks, bike paths. And then the other local revenues, the larger one, is the Ad Valorem property, the sales tax, and impact fees. So here we have a little summary to highlight the various.
Before you move to that next slide, we have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Sellers, I just have one quick one on the fourth line from the bottom, the inter-fund transfer revenue, which says, "From the general fund for Anna Maria Elementary Helene repairs."
Yes, okay.
Just have a question on that line.
So that was when the hurricane Helene came through, we did end up using actually, even though this is a construction-type project, we did use the general fund to fund the repairs at Anna Maria.
And that leads me to the nature of my question. Can we, is there an expectation that we'll get reimbursed for that expense from FEMA down the road, or that's why it had to come out of?
So, and so that's in the FEMA grant at that point for those repairs related to that. So there's a possibility. Now, there's a percentage that they use, so we're still waiting. And lots of times we see it about two to three years after we have filed.
Okay, but we can't book it until we officially know that we're definitely getting that money.
Right, right, exactly. So right now, the general fund has paid for that.
Okay. But we hope we're getting it back sometime down the road.
Some of it at least.
Okay, thank you. That's what my question, thank you.
Is that a fingers-crossed sort of a maneuver we've got going on there?
Anybody else have questions so far? Okay, you're good.
Okay. All right, so, um, so the Ad Valorem property tax, this is, um, uh, projected to be about 108 million, um, uh, for the 2526 fiscal year. Uh, this is advertised annually, so it's advertised, um, uh, in the advertisement we list allowable, um, projects such as construction and remodeling, uh, maintenance, renovations and repairs, motor vehicle purchases, buses, new equipment and replacement, uh, loan, um, payments and, um, uh, facilities that have been financed by the certificates of participation and also for the property and casualty, uh, premium insurance. What is not allowed to be used from these funds are general operating expenses, uh, such as custodial, um, uh, groundskeeping and software and, except you can use these funds for the enterprise software. Uh, another, uh, um, tax is the sales tax, this is the voted one that was, um, voted in on the ballot of, um, November, uh, 2016, that was effective on January 1st, 2018. Now, um, this is, these funds are also used, uh, to, um, fund those Jacob projects, the repairs, it impacts payments on the principal and debt service, um, um, let's see, on, and interest on the debt instead of the renovations and maintenance and other capital projects. So allowable sources for the sales tax is capital expenses to reduce overcrowding, build new schools, renovation, um, that, that are existing, uh, purchasing technology, capital expenditures to improve student safety and security, it is not allowed to be used for operation expenses again. And then, um, another, uh, local revenue is the impact fees, and these are limited to new growth, um, so it's gotta be for new schools and new additions. It is not allowed for any operational or routine maintenance or repair expenses. Anybody have a question on this slide?
Yeah, Ms. Hall.
I just wanna, um, point out that, and, and I know we'll talk about it in the next presentation, but the half-cent sales tax, I've, I, um, that this cannot be used for programs, I, I've gotten lots of emails saying this will be good for, you know, we, we need programs, we got this, and I, I just wanna make sure that people understand that this cannot be used for programs, um, any of them, that this is, this is not for that. And I just wanna make sure that, that, you know, people listening, that they understand that.
Yeah, capital expense. All right, we're good.
Okay.
Next slide.
I'm gonna turn it over to Joe.
Good morning, board members, uh, interim superintendent Chapman. Um, I'm gonna go through, um, and, and give you some of the detailed look on what the expenditures are, uh, for the, or estimated for the upcoming year. Um, the first slide is, uh, our active projects. Uh, the two elementary schools, uh, both are at, estimated at 75 million. Um, we had the groundbreaking for Ry Ranch, uh, we anticipate, uh, getting final permitting shortly for Artisan Lakes as well, so we're moving forward on those projects, and they have a July 2026 opening. Uh, Barbara Harvey K-8 is gonna be open on July, uh, 2025, uh, and then it'll be the, the full campus, uh, and the full enrollment, uh, the following year. Uh, Lake Manatee K-8, uh, the elementary side, uh, will be open in July of 2025, and, uh, the middle school portion will be open, uh, in July of 2026. So we're moving forward with those. And AAA high school, uh, we do not have funding in place, uh, at the present time, however, we have selected a prototype, we are advertising, uh, for a construction manager right now, so we are doing the early planning phases for that project as well, so those are the active major construction projects we have going on right now. Any questions on that?
I do, just one, Mr. Rinaldi. Um, on the, the last line, um, as of now called AAA high school, um, as you just mentioned, it's not funded, um, yet, and my question is, and I, and I know there's so many factors that can come to bear, so things could change tomorrow, um, the answer to, but to, to, uh, Mr. Chapman and to you, what do you believe is the last date, like, what's our, what's our deadline to take board action to, um, get some form of a new high school open by July of 2027?
Well, we, we have the funding presently to at least get construction started, but we would probably have to have our COPs by-
By October would be when we would-
October, November, that-
The issue to you for approval. They probably wouldn't be going to do the financing and the sale for that until January, February.
Okay, so this October, we gotta get the ball rolling on the COPs.
Yeah, we, I would need to be able to be presenting the financing and have that worked through, um, with the, um, financial advisors to bring to the board in October.
Okay, and just, COPs is certificate of participation, just for anybody, I, I know we always throw around acronyms and people don't know what we're talking about. Um, yeah, and I, and Mr. Rinaldi, I, I do recall, I think in our last board meeting or two board meetings ago, we did, the board did approve kind of the initiation of, or made funds available for, for that process.
We did the reimbursement resolutions so that if we do secure, um, financing, um, it will go back to that reimbursement resolution.
Exactly, okay, so-
We did, we did approve to start with the design and, and spending money on design.
Oh, yeah, thank you, that too, thank you, Chef, yep.
I got a question too on that. So, moving with that particular project, um, I'd like to, I'm just throwing this out there now, off the cuff, are you gonna do a study between, I know we did the project for the protot, prototype, but I want to make sure that we do a study that, because we're doing all this rezoning, I know that construction is slowing down out that way, I wanna make sure we absolutely need this school before we move forward. I know there's no vote now, but I want the board and the district staff to think about that, because I really believe we need to do a deep dive on what kind of, uh, building we actually need out there, if any. I mean, at least we'll have a prototype, so when we're ready, but is that gonna be something we need to shove through right away, or something in-
Well, the, the teams that are looking at the rezoning right now have looked at providing relief for Lakewood Ranch Parish and, and kind of looked at that entire quadrant, how it will work out. Uh, the, the one thing we elected to use, um, the prototype from Parish Community.
Right.
So, um, that is able to be done kind of as a kit of parts, I would say, uh, where ultimately it could be a 2,100 student station campus, but the first phase we're looking at right now is a smaller campus right at about 1,200 student stations, and then we would have the ability, as we did, um, at Parish, to add academic classrooms as the growth arises, but we'll already have the infrastructure in place, we'll have building pads, and we will have master-planted it for that future growth, so we can grow into that campus.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll just say, and I spoke to you all last, yeah, the other day about this, um, and, but I have not to the board, um, and some of this will come up in, in the discussion next topic, but my concern, um, all along with, with having this high school out here, of course, do we need it in the growth, that, that sort of thing is, is of course, but, um, as we look into five years down the road, seven years down the road, um, and revenues that are coming in, um, the payment for these COPs and the revenue coming in going down because of, of, of sharing and different things like that, with it, this, to me, the picture looks much different five years from now, paying down debt than it does currently today. So, all decisions moving forward to a lot of, a lot of things we're discussing today, in my opinion, affects everything else, right? So, um, of course, seven years from now, doesn't matter what we think up here, it's gonna be, we're, we're splitting, right? So, I know I'm getting in a little bit of, uh, the next topic here, but I just, I, I'm gonna go back in some of my comments, go back to this capital budget and ca, some of these projects, um, and discuss that, so I just, again, I just, I just, I'm just making it known now that, um, that there, there's, that, that the numbers for the, the COPs and the debt look much different when you fast-forward it out a little bit, but that's, that's all.
Right.
That's all.
Right.
All right, next slide.
So, the, the next slide is, um, in regards to our prioritization, uh, for the capital budget, and back in 2019, Jacobs Engineering did a, a full district-wide assessment, and we're still utilizing that assessment. Um, we updated annually, uh, last year and, or year before in '23, we actually, uh, updated the construction costs as well to bring it back into, uh, alignment of what we were seeing in the cus, construction industry. Um, but what you see on the, the third column, you can see, we're still doing work on the campuses, which kind of moves some of those that don't have active construction projects up-down a little bit, but the ones in yellow, uh, have probably been on the capital budget for about three years, and they're wrapping up, uh, most of them this summer, some this fall, uh, Terra, Palmasola is underway, Blackburn, Onico, uh, we have completed design on the school support center, but we have not started construction or, uh, got a guaranteed maximum price for that one yet, and Hale Middle School will be wrapping up this summer with the completion in the gymnasium. Uh, the, uh, projects that are in the pink or salmon color, those are projects that are on this 2526 budget, uh, multiple summer, one year out, summer two, summer three years out, but, but you can see, our goal is to take down those projects that were assessed as most needy back in 2019, and we update, uh, annually as well, so just wanted to give you an idea of how we prioritize.
Um, Mr. Rinaldi, since we do have a lot of people here and probably watching, could you e, e, explain a little bit more what the Jacobs study means, uh, for, for the audience?
Okay, so, from the, the Jacobs report, they came in and took a typical building, broke it up into about 15 components, everything from electrical, mechanical, plumbing, the structures, windows, doors, and then they rated it on a scale of one to five, those individual components, so as a result of that, obviously, an older building would have a lower score, and, uh, the first round of COPs, certificate of participations that we did in '23 were the yellow projects, to take those buildings that were rated the lowest at the time and, and get construction started. So now we're kind of in our second phase, which is the pink projects, and we're gonna be doing, uh, the, the same with those, they're primarily renovation and remodeling projects. Sometimes we do an addition, sometimes our friends in Tallahassee allow us to knock a building down that's, you know, 45 years old and, and we build new, but the majority is renovating and remodeling and upgrading all the systems within the campus.
And I'd also like to point out that, that Rowlett is part of this, we are, we are responsible for that building.
The elementary school, yes, is, yes.
As well, in case anybody didn't know that.
And they're on the, uh, five-year as well.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy has a question?
Mr. Rinaldi, just before we leave this page, um, just a real quick question, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanna confirm, of those, of those factors that the Jacobs report looks at, is energy efficiency of the building one of the ratings?
Yeah, it, it's, it's tied into the air conditioning, the HVAC systems, as well as plumbing, water, so, yeah, yes, if, uh, that could drive, um, a number down as a result of an older chiller, older boiler, that type of thing, or older plumbing that's failing.
Older, older windows?
Older, we have windows as well.
You see leaking out? Okay.
We're in windows.
That was, that was not the answer I thought, so thank you for correcting me.
Also on that topic about technology, upgrading technology, is that considered in all of these reports?
No, that, that is considered by the IT department, uh, Jacobs did not evaluate, uh, technology in 2019 when they did the full study. So, uh, Mr. Hanson kind of does that on an annual basis and has a fairly robust 10-year plan on replacement and upgrade of switches and those sort of things, so that's not on Jacobs, but it does show up later on in, uh, the overall budget.
Mr. Chute, concerning Rowlett Academy, maybe, I wasn't aware of that, it's interesting, it's a charter school, but because of the type of charter school it is, we're responsible for, what exactly are we responsible for there?
So, it's a conversion charter school, so, um, they're tied in to our work order system, um, they, uh, so they can call in work orders and we get maintenance done, um, and in addition to that, um, capital improvements, and they were part of the assessment done in 2019, um, they weren't in the first wave, but they were in the second wave.
So, all those work orders and everything, we pay for then, or?
Yeah, that's part of our responsibility, yes.
Because it's a conversion charter school as opposed to a different type charter school, what if they wanna build a new building or something, are we, do they, do we pay for that, or do they pay for that?
Yeah, that would be part of the, the money that we have allocated for, um, for them.
So, are we kind of responsible for almost all of their capital expenditures in any way, shape, or form, so?
Um, well, yes, I mean, they did do some improvements with some of the ESRA money that they had, they did some canopies and things like that, but that was at, at their discretion now, um, so, that, that type of thing they, they use to upgrade their campus.
Okay, but if they needed to be remodeled one day, or if they needed, or if their HVAC needs to be replaced or something, we are, we take care of that.
Yep, I'll, I'll show them, a, a, as we go through the budget, I'll, I'll highlight-
Thank you.
-where they are.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, so, we're gonna go through the details on the expenditures, uh, next four slides are, uh, details. Uh, the first year, the zero base year is this year, um, when we do the final budget, that year zero will be gone. Um, keep in mind, we've still got about two months' worth of construction, and we've got some fairly large projects going on right now, so there'll be some fairly big numbers in the zero, but, um, if it is a project that carries over to next year, that money will be transferred to the 2526 budget. If it's a project that's completed, then it'll be expended, uh, hopefully within a couple months of, uh, opening come, come August. Uh, the row, row numbers on the left side, uh, we've been deleting projects as they've been completed, so they are not sequential, when we do the final budget, they will be sequential, I just wanted to, uh, bring that up for, to you. And the projects, uh, we also have, um, some color coding here, projects in pink are the Jacobs study projects. Projects that are in blue are the original CARP COPs projects from 2023. Uh, the project in green is from the 2025 COPs, and those are the two elementary schools, and then we do have COPs 2026, that being the high school that is in, in the budget right now, uh, but it is being funded 100% by COPs. So, you know, a, a, as we go down, uh, some of the newer projects, you know, Ballard is roughly two years out from renovation and remodeling, uh, the Barbara Harvey addition, uh, that is the discussion that, uh, depending on the growth that we see, uh, at Barbara Harvey, that will be adding an addition, maybe an additional 400 student stations, we've got that identified as part of the COPs project that we would bring to you in October as well. Um, other ma, major projects and things I'd like to point out, um, Lakewood Ranch, they've been having significant issues with their piping, underground piping for their HVAC, so we've turned that into a capital project as well to commence that and try to get that work done, uh, as well, but, um, you can see that Hale should be closing up this year. Manatee Elementary, we've got $20 million out in year four, '28, '29, to do the renovation and remodeling there as well, um, and you can see at MTC, we've got the Hangar Project and then the Joint Use Facility that we're working with them programming-wise right now, so those are the major projects, um, and I'm looking forward for Blackburn and Hale to be complete, and hopefully at the end of the summer, we'll be able to pull that one off the five-year capital plan. So that's kind of that group, wanna go to the next page?
Yeah, I don't see any questions.
Rachel, wanna go to the next page?
Nope.
So, uh, the next group, all the way down the lot, line 96, those are major projects as well, and then we get into our, some of our district-wide, um, as you- as you can see, we've got Mayaka, uh, two years out, uh, doing a major renovation, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Mayaka's one year out, Moody, two years out, doing a major renovation, uh, the Mayaka project, we'll also be bringing to you as part of the upcoming COPS for twenty-six as well. Um, we've got Artisan Lakes, will be at seventy-five million, and then we've got the new high school, the hundred and forty million dollars, and that's for the campus of approximately twelve hundred student stations, um, and then Ry Ranch, um, obviously, that's going to be under construction, seventy-five million, and then we've got some, um, renovation and remodeling happening here as well. Um, so, from ninety-six down are kind of the, the district-wide projects, uh, the bus hubs, we're in conversation with the county right now, uh, property near Dam Road that we think will be able to lease, we'll ha- have to do a little bit of an upgrade so that we can store buses there, but we're in conversations, uh, early conversations right now, they did present three or four parcels for us to look at, so if that one doesn't work out, we have some options, but we did put some money in the budget to do some upgrades, uh, in order to get, um, some bus storage out on the east side of campus, or east side of the, the county there as well. Um, the, the rest of them are kind of, uh, we do have five point four million in anticipation of some site acquisition coming up, Mr. Pendley's always looking for sites for us, um, and then, uh, we do have, uh, another group of lobby enhancements, uh, security enhancements that we'll be doing this year as well.
I, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Either one.
Um, I had a question about that, 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 uh, vestibules for school safety, how many, how many do we have left to do?
We've, we've got a, a couple more that, that we need to do, I mean, um, we, we would like to get them all done, as the, as the newer schools and the renovations come online, we're, we're able to take care of them, but.
And, and a lot of this is related to statutes and regu- wording and?
Oh, we're, we're, we're meeting statutes and all that, this is, this is our, our level of enhancement that we think needs to be done, we're, we're meeting SREF and we're, we're in full compliance with that, we go another step beyond that.
Well, yeah, I hope so. Thank you.
And just, may I follow up on that real quick?
Go ahead.
Um, and when you, when you say following up is the district sees fits, this is the model of, um, kind of, front desk staff is now behind glass, is that?
Yes, yes it is.
I mean, I think that's, I can, it's okay to talk about that, because these are public-facing buildings, but i- is that our, is that your definition of complete, like locked door that you have to be buzzed in, and then staff behind glass in the lobby?
Exactly, and close proximity with the, um, the, the guardian or the SRO as well, making sure that their offices in close proximity.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't feel like I was exposing any security.
Attorney's didn't pipe up, so you're fine.
Well, I, I piped up, I shouldn't say anything.
Ninety-nine, security fencing, um, I just had a conversation with Mr., uh, gosh, dang it.
Miko?
Paul, yes, thank you. Um, driving over to Graduations and MTC, Ballard's on the way, and I'm looking at the fencing and the little orange arms, yellow arms that we do for the gates, I'd like to, that's a, that area is challenging for us as a district and for our students, so if you could have a conversation with him about what we talked about.
Okay.
I would like to see what we can do in that area, i- if you could.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We're good, I've, I've got some comments about some of these things, but it pertains to the next topic, so we'll, we'll wait.
Okay.
Just keep this out for next topic.
Alright.
Okay, so, the, the next, um, slide, um, which is, uh, lines one oh seven through one forty-one, so, um, the annual repairs and maintenance, which is line one-ten, that is all of the work orders that maintenance receives on a, on a daily basis, everything from plumbing, windows, doors, air conditioning, so that, that's where the majority of their funds associated with any materials or products that they need, uh, for their, uh, specific projects that are not planned, and then, um, one-eleven through one-twenty-five, those are projects which are planned from a maintenance standpoint, the majority of them come from the Jacobs report and their ranking of the specific system, so when you're talking about what systems are in the Jacobs report, it's everything from bleachers, CCTV, all the way down to roof repairs, you can see that that group are planned projects that they develop on an annual basis for, from the Jacobs report as well, and that's the bulk of their work, um, some is done by in-house staff, some is done by outside contractors, but that's kind of their preventive maintenance things that they do to make sure that we don't have significant deferred maintenance, and it comes from the Jacobs report again.
Question on all of that, so all of these dollar amounts from the first part of these, this presentation and the Jacobs report, when I see that Manatee L has a capital project on here, uh, two years from now, or whenever it was, and then I look at this slide from, I don't know, roofing and all of that, is any of this, these dollars allocated in these projects? I mean, I don't want to, I want to make sure we're not doubling up, that we have money allocated over here for a capital project, but then now we have over here a whole nother line.
Right, the, the, the majority of this funding comes from the one-point-five mil, that, that's one of the things, is, a- as we stand now, we, we have a fairly nice balance, mo- most of the maintenance can be supported by the one-point-five mil, and then a lot of the new construction is either impact fees, sales tax, or we look for to do certificate of participations. We are having to bleed over some of that one-point-five mil, million, one-point-five mil, just to get the budget to balance, but our goal is to use, uh, the majority of that one-point-five mil for maintenance, so that we don't get into a si- situation where we've got significant deferred maintenance, so.
So, this, these lines are general maintenance?
Yes, general maintenance.
Okay, general maintenance, they're not in a capital project, is that what you're saying?
My doorknob fell off, I'm put a work order in, you need to come, give me a new doorknob, the money comes out of that budget.
That's what I need clarity on.
Okay. Um, so, and then going down, um, one of the things is, uh, under, uh, line one-thirty, we've got, um, that's the charter school expenditure for the one-point-five mil, it ranges from nine-point-three, uh, for this year, to twenty-six-point-seven out in twenty-nine-thirty, within this budget, they've got a total of eighty-six-point-three million dollars going to the charter schools through that, um, through the one-point-five mil at this point right now. Um, in addition to that, um, you've got, um, countywide technology, um, that is computer refresh for both students as well as teachers, it's the SIS, the Student Information System, it's Focus, it's ERP, it's the PeopleSoft, I think Ms. Sellers stated that we can pay for some of the softwares, and it's the major software through capital, and, and we pay for those, uh, softwares, Agittec and the cost for that software through the capital budget, and that's the countywide technology on, uh, line one-thirty-six. And then, uh, one-thirty-eight, probably about another eight to ten buses, depending on what the costs are going to be, um, and then furniture, that, that's kind of district-wide, if, we, we try to give some schools some refresh money, and then, uh, vehicle others, those are, uh, vehicles that are not part of the enterprise leasing program that we do, they're major vehicles like dump trucks and front-end loaders that, that we need, we maybe do one every four or five years, so tho- those are things that are not in the enterprise, uh, leasing program right now. And some, uh, some, uh, sedans as well, because we, we, we can't buy, uh, those through the enterprise broker.
Question on the furniture, um, you said, do we do a refresh, but we also do furniture in capital projects?
Yes.
And I'm just pointing this out because somebody brought it to my attention, when we're doing a project or a refresh, where is the old furniture going? Because someone said to me, there's a hopper next to a school that's being renovated out west, and all of that furniture is being thrown in a, a dumpster to be hauled off, and my question was, why are we not, one, donating it, two, maybe even holding a public auction for those things that we do not want anymore? I know we have that surplus, we have to go through that whole list-it kind of thing, but our taxes pay for that stuff, why can't we offer that to our community? I don't understand.
Well, that might be, uh, uh, an isolated incident, because we do bring a lot of, lot of the good salvageable, uh, product back to the warehouse, and then we notify the charters, we notify the schools that it's available, come down, see if you need a conference table, if you need a desk, something like that, 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 that it's available for that. I, I don't know how much we actually put out on the auction, if it's not taken, and most of it is typically taken, uh, by that first notice that it's available, but, um, that, that would be isolated and it'd probably be in pretty bad disrepair to be thrown in the dumpster, because we don't allow that.
I'll say, one man's trash is another one's treasure, and that's basically what some community members had said to me, I don't understand, some of this stuff is old and are considered collectibles even, so, that's a nice way to say it.
Go ahead. Um, yeah, Ms. Bray, I just want to share a personal anecdote with you on, on this very topic.
Okay.
Principal Durance took me on a tour of, uh, Paul Mottor Charter a few weeks ago, and showed me a specific example of furniture that they were using in their, it was the expansion building, I believe.
Yes.
And, and the, um.
Ms. Lesline was able to allow us to get some of the science tables and some of the things that would have basically, might have been.
Been surplus, and it said it was donated to the school.
Good deal.
So, there are examples out there of, it's not being thrown out, it's being, it's being repurposed for the charters, or, or whomever may need it, yeah.
And, um, and if, if something's being thrown away, it, it's probably in pretty bad shape, um, having desks where the metal rail right here suddenly falls off, or a kid leans back and then the, the legs go, that, that has occurred in my classroom, um, so I, I'm going to have to presume that generally, if it's in the dumpster, it's beyond salvage, um, because we do, there is a, if you, have you done the, the Matskei warehouse?
Not, not inside the tour, no, but, yeah.
Okay, there's, there's a lot of stuff in there available, um, as well for people who need it.
Clear out? Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Um, Rinaldi, you have a moment?
That's what you're here for, huh?
What's that?
Answer questions, right?
Absolutely.
That's your job today, the question, answer, man, we're the question people. So, line number thirty, one-thirty-eight with the buses?
Right.
How many buses are on the lot right now, like serviceable operational buses, do you know off the top of your head?
We've got about a hundred and thirty that are in good shape, we're, we're taking, I mean, we, we've got, got rid of most of those that were two thousand and ten and earlier, um, so, I mean, we're, we're trying to buy down eight or nine, eight to ten buses a year because of ju- just, you know, the, the, the safety, um, you know, add-ons that are on the newer buses, as well as the different lighting, uh, as well as the cameras and, and all of that, retrofitting an old bus is, is, is difficult with those type of safety items we want, so, we, we've got about a hundred and thirty, which is, um, pretty close to being in line when, when you consider that probably about ten or fifteen, typically ten need to be out of service in order to get their monthly inspections as well, so, and, and you always have, you know, four or five percent that are, have other issues, um, non-related to the inspections.
What does it mean to buy down eight or nine buses a year, what, what do you mean by that?
Out of, out of that budget, we try to buy about eight or nine buses.
Every year, every pla- that's like an annual buy that we try and do?
Yeah, we try.
It's to, just kind of rotate in the new ones and rotate out the old ones?
Yep, and, and I mean, it's, um, our buses from last year are going to be delivered in December, so it's not like you can order one and get one in three months, it's, um, you know, we order about mid-year and it takes, and, and a year for them to come.
And so, we, we do that, beca- I mean, even though the, it sounds like they're still usable, but because we have, w- if they're usable, why do we still, like, I like to have a new car too, I don't know if I'm articulating my question real well, are those buses that we're buying down still usable, and we just are kind of upgrading them, or are they, at the end of their service life, or why are we rotating out eight or nine buses a year?
Our, our fleet is, um, has some ups and downs from previous years, uh, large purchases were done, and then there were years that there were no purchases done, so, we are, we're trying to eliminate those from the fleet that are, you know, in excess of fifteen or sixteen years old, um, and, and that's kind of, the, the way we, we've been doing it, is we've been doing it gradually with eight to ten buses a year, we did, I think, four last year, and we did four electric on top of that to try the electric buses out, um, so, I mean, usually eight to ten to, um, to keep our fleet fresh, I guess is the way to put it.
Okay. Yeah, we're just, I mean, obviously, I hope, I've worked with you, and I know you're a good steward of the taxpayers' money, I just, you know, it's refurbishing your car that you have versus buying a new one, you know, and you always got to do those calculations, and as we are looking at, you know, the topic on the agenda today, and maybe capital expenditure is getting a little tighter over the next years, that, you know, you, you just have to figure out whether it's, we want to buy eight or nine buses a year, whether we want to renovate them and bring them up to speed, I would just ask you to keep an eye on that as a steward of the taxpayers' money, thank you very much.
Mr. Rinaldi, I have a question as well, um, so, the, where in the budget does the bus funds come out of, that's the first part, second part, when we do phase those ones out, about how many miles are we looking at that are on those buses?
Uh, hundreds of thousands typically, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they don't get high dollar on the, but, but we do put them to auction and, you know.
Yeah, so, they're not like at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles or something, that, I, I would assume by the time we phase them out, it's pretty much at the point where it's going to cost less to replace them than to repair them.
Typically, yes.
And Ms. Felton, it's on row one-thirty-eight.
Okay.
I'm good.
We're good.
Okay.
Okay, so, the, the last page, um, is our leased equipment, um, we, in the past, have been, uh, leasing computers, we're no longer doing that anymore, so this is the last year for, for leases, um, we also lease our copiers, so that's here, uh, the Evolve Systems, um, that's the annual lease for the Evolve, um, the leased vehicles is the enterprise program, there is a, a fair amount of money in year zero there, um, enterprise was having the same difficulty everyone else was in getting inventory and getting vehicles and getting a slot in the manufacturer's production, so we're reevaluating how that whole program is going to work right now, but, um, we are, through enterprise, typically buying off the lot, we do get the government discounts and all that, but our ideal was to be able to put our order into for- forward, and we would, you know, get it, and, and that just not, they've kind of eliminated, uh, that government side at this point right now, so we're, we're reevaluating that, uh, so you may see different numbers when we do the final budget. Um, then we have the transfers, um, transfer, uh, one-fifty-four, so that is the salaries for the bus drivers, a couple of years back, they allowed us to pay salaries, uh, for the bus drivers with capital, um, one-fifty, let's see, that was, one-fifty-four was the bus drivers, and then one-fifty-three, those are the salaries of the general maintenance, so, everything prior on the maintenance side is the parts and pieces, materials, and then, uh, we pay, uh, the salaries for, uh, those. And then we pay the salaries for those that are eligible that are, that are working on capital projects through the capital budget. Now, we can't pay for lawn care and, and those, those sort of, there are certain individuals that we cannot pay the capital budget. But typically a plumber or electrician is working on a capital project. So we're able to identify them as being eligible. 155 is the PICO charter. It's at 7.1 this year. It goes up to 9.9 in 2930. And then, so that's a total of, for this budget of right at $41 million for that PICO transfer for the charter schools. So with that 41.8 PICO and the nine, and the 1.5 mil, with, within this budget, the charter schools are getting $128.1 million for capital projects. And then 157 through 168, Rachel makes, Ms. Sellers makes me pay the bills. So that's all of our debt service. We don't really have a... And, and then 170, 171, that, those are the project rollovers. You won't see that in the final budget. But we're beginning to look at projects that have closed out money that can roll back into the budget. So that's our final reconciliation that we'll do before we present the final budget to you. So that's the capital budget for this year, preliminary.
Preliminary. A work document, always moving. Always.
Do they call it a living document?
Yes.
Just like the US Constitution, right?
Yeah.
Which is going through some living right now in this world. Okay, I, I want to ask my board colleagues for some support on a couple of pet projects that could be included in the capital budget. I'll be as, as quick as I can. And I do want to acknowledge right up front that I'm asking us to, I'm going to ask us to share with the charters when we get to the next item. For all the reasons we heard of public comment, I don't need to repeat anything. We've already heard the reasons. I fully support everything we heard. But there's one, the first project that I'm going to ask for board support on. I took a shot at this in my last term and I just couldn't get any momentum for it. But it would basically be a solar parking lot project. These solar parking lots are already in existence. I'll give you two examples locally. The, the new parking garage at Tampa Bay, at Tampa Airport, the top floor of that parking structure has a solar, pardon me. It has a solar overhang, I guess is the best word for, which the car then pulls underneath of. So the customer of the airport has the benefit of parking in the shade and the airport has the benefit of generating electricity. There's also one at the end of St. Pete Pier next to, I forget the name of the restaurant down there. But if you walk down the pier toward the, toward the bay, is it Ford's?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Renaldi. There's a Ford's Restaurant, which is delightful and I love that place. But right next to it, there is a solar structure parking lot. And same thing, part of your, part of the benefit of paying to park there is you get to park in the shade and the pier generates electricity for free. Well, not for free because you have to build the thing. So, but, so I, I approached this idea previously. I was not able to persuade my board colleagues, but I'm going to take, this is a new board, so I'm going to take a run with you all.
But we did, we brought FPL out.
Oh, you did do some diligence.
Oh, yeah. We, we, we did and we tried to lay out a portion of this parking lot. And FPL wasn't really supportive of it.
Well, they, they never are.
Maybe now the technology has changed. That probably was about three years ago, three or four years ago.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, we, we can, we can investigate that. But.
Okay.
We, we, we need to have a partner who is going to work, work with us on it as well because it's, it's going, it's a little cost.
Fair enough. There's definitely a cost.
I will say, back then, when you brought up 21, I believe this.
Oh, yeah, Chad, you were on the board then.
I was on the board. And I'm supportive of looking into it. I get the concept and I'm sure for staff that's here all day, it'd be great to be in the shade. And, yeah, if you can make some money back to pay for it and then obviously after that, but we just never seen, I've never seen numbers for it and that sort of thing. And what's, you know, what's the longevity, when are we guys going to pay it off, etcetera? But I'd be interested in looking into it.
Okay. And I, and Mr. Renaldi, interim superintendent Chapman, I'm just going to, I'm just going to call you Kevin. Mr. Chapman, because that's a mouthful of words. I don't, I don't want anybody to do any work until you have affirmation from the board. I don't want anybody to do any work just on my behalf or my word. I want, I want it to come from the full board. So I just want to make sure that's clear. I'm not trying to boss anybody around or order that work get done on my, on my command.
I, I would be open to looking at that as well. I'd like to see some numbers on it. But again, we're going to need somebody to work with us who's going to be willing to work with us. So if we can secure that, then I would be interested in looking into it because I, I do so very much appreciate parking in the shade. And, yeah, anytime, yeah, we'll park way out in the middle of nowhere if there's a tree.
If there's a tree.
You know? And I'm sure everybody knows what that's like, right? Yeah. So, yeah, I, I do, I do appreciate that very much. And then, you know, and then we could kind of weigh the, the costs.
Okay. Couple of things on that. In the past, I've asked.
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I may, I just want to, I have one more thing to get out.
Because it's on the energy topic.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I thought you were changing gears.
No, no, no.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, it's on your energy topic, it's all right. I've asked for our district to do an energy study across our, the entire district. You can walk up to Manatee High and the doors will blow your skirt up. The air is, I'm not kidding. The air is being wasted so much at the front doors. I think it's one of the faults.
I don't know if that's the air blowing in any of the schools, I think it's suction, but anyway, go ahead.
Either way, there's, there's loss of energy throughout. We pay, our district is one of the highest costs for utilities. So if we're going to do that, I'm saying bring in a company that offered to come and do a free survey of all of our sites, new and old, and, and find a, a way to save on our energy cost. And if we can include this as part of that study, then I would support it. That's kind of like where I'm at with it. I just think that we spend way too much on our energy cost. And I think that this is a good time to bring that company in that I've talked to you about privately, so.
Yeah, no, I know, I know I have. I'm sure, I think Mr. Tatum had to. We've, in the last, within last year, I think we've discussed having them come in and look at it. But remember, those utility costs are not part of the capital budget.
I understand.
That's the next, you know, the general, we do general. But still agree with you that we do need to bring somebody in. From my understanding, I, I think we, we don't have someone in that position. We normally have that position that's someone that controls that over the district. We have not had anyone in that district for several years, right?
About two years.
And so we're trying to find that person who, when that company comes in, that is who they go to to do all of that. And that person is the one who then runs all the schools to make sure that they're doing it right. So I think we've got to find that person. And I don't know, to me personally, if that's because of the salary that it's at. So no one wants to go into that, you know, because you go get it, that, that's somewhere else. But I think that's all part of the conversation that you're wanting.
Right.
So I think we should definitely talk about that conversation. I think that should be talked about in the next one, when we, when we do the general fund.
Yes.
So please, let's bring that back up.
All right.
For sure.
Good deal. All right, I'll let you go on with your next one and I'll do my bucket list.
I'll just make a comment real quick is that, I mean, it's just a business decision, right? If, if it costs a million dollars to cover the parking lot out there, I don't know, whatever it is. And then in five years, we make, we save 1.5 million dollars. Electricity costs great, but if it costs a million dollars and then it takes us five years to recuperate a million dollars, that, you know, it's just a business decision. There'll be some breakpoint there. You know, a lot of these projects, like I know at my house, they come by and they're like, hey, you want solar on your house? And, yeah, and how much is it? It's $50,000 upfront, you know? When, when do I get my, how long does it take me to get my $50,000 back? Well, in 25 years, you'll save $60,000.
The cost benefit has to be that.
That, to me, is it's just a, it's a business decision. It's not pro, pro against, it's just a business decision, so.
I agree.
Okay, great.
Totally agree. One more, Chad. This is the end of my bucket list for now. And this is a personal one for our, our elementary PE teachers out there. But, and it's, it's a much, I don't want to say cheaper, it's a much less expensive improvement for our kids and our, and our teachers. But at our elementary, at our elementary schools, I believe, I don't believe any elementary school has a gymnasium. And so PE, for the most part, is held outside. And almost every elementary school just has a single, kind of that metal structure that's on campus is the only shade provided for PE or other things going outside. But I'll, I'll keep this PE specific. And so I'll just use my own experiences as, to, to share this. So at Daughtry, we have that metal structure. Then we've got a basketball court. And then we have the bus loop, which when it's closed and there's no buses coming through, I would use to run laps with the kids. But, you know, at the start of school and at the last two months of the school year, there is just no escape from the sun for these kids. And fortunately, through the wisdom of my principal at the time, and she's still there now, Principal McCullough, she worked with the superintendent to get two portables brought onto campus expressly for the use of PE. Because I went to her with this issue and she, to her credit, responded. So that, so that's how Daughtry decided to alleviate the problem. But for other schools that don't have that, I think just a simple sunshade, either on a field or on the basketball court, would really provide a benefit. Because my first year there, we had three PE teachers and, and, and we had to keep them separate. Like my, my kids were with me on one field. Ms. Samantha's class would be on the basketball court, for example. And then Coach K would be on the, he'd be under the shade. And so we, we would always rotate to give each other breaks. But, but man, it was rough. And I really feel like if we had a little more shade on our elementary campuses, it would go a long way for our, for our kids and, and for our PE teachers. That's the end of my bucket list. And again, we can, we don't have to flesh this out now. I just want to make the board aware of it, that this will, this would be an ask of mine when we, when we approve the final capital budget for '25, '26. I'm done.
And on that, that was probably one of the biggest things when I came down here. Elementary schools didn't have gyms up north. All schools had gyms because of winter. So why would heat not be any different than, than cold? So, yeah, I would support that. Mine is tennis court related, you should know that. Tennis court related. At King, we have this beautiful facility that holds equipment and bathrooms for the students. And they host other schools that come there to play. At Braden River, way away from everything, there's a lot of portables, but on the north, no, south side, the, the baseball field is there. Many times I've been to that, those courts during practice and/or matches. Parents have to go all the way around the courts, all the way around to the ballpark to go, to use facilities. Not only that, the water drains back, and I've talked to you about this, the water drains back onto the one court closest to, in my directions, northwest. So it will flood. That's going to cost us more maintenance in the long run. It just needs graded down. But I would like to see a bathroom facility built that would support the tennis community and/or the baseball community. I mean, that field facility, like I said, is all the way around. So that's one. And I think some of the other ones would fall under your general maintenance that I brought to your attention. I don't know where that's at, but I haven't gotten any feedback on where we are. I did go to Bay Shore and I saw the fence that I asked to be put back up is back up. And speaking of Bay Shore, I talked to you about a backboard. All we need is a simple drain pipe in and some concrete pour. I don't think it... In my world and, and manufacturing, if there was several little things that was in the same wheelhouse as I'm talking about, we wrote a capital project to address if it's at five sites. All five sites got capital money to fix those things. That's what I'd like to see. Even at Palmetto Tennis Courts, there's no, there's one bathroom and it's a locker room for the baseball side, not for the tennis. And you've got to find somebody to let you in, you got, it's, it's a nightmare. So that's what I would like to see is some kind of a capital project written to address facilities for the tennis courts because they're out in the middle of nowhere 90% of the time. So if we could do that, I would certainly appreciate it. And I know it's a big ask board, but, you know, I, I go to the football matches. I've been to the soccer matches and everything else. I'd just like to get some support for my tennis players.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Did talk to somebody about that issue with just bathrooms in general. And the comment was made that porta potties are a lot less expensive, right? And I know you, I know you cringe at that, but if it's going to cost a million dollars, you know, to put in a permanent bathroom complex and you can rent a porta potty for $500 a month. I mean, it'd be nice if we could do a lot of these things, but if we're looking at giving some money to the charter schools and, I'm, I'm just making that point that it'd be nice. But it's an option. You can, but you can, you can rent porta potties for probably 20 years for a million dollars, I'm thinking, right? So it's just a thought, Ms. Bray. I know you cringe at it, but.
Yes, I'm cringing.
There's some nice porta potty, there's some nicer porta potty.
And you can get it done quickly. Like it may take.
Are we really having a porta potty discussion right now?
Well, we put it on, well, we put it on the capital budget and then we'll look at it next year. And then you get the plans done. And then for two years from now, you've got, you've got your bathrooms. Or you can call up the porta potty company this afternoon and go, would you please go over there and put two really nice porta potties over there? We want them clean. If you don't do that, we'll cancel your contract. And then people have bathrooms and it's, you know, it's a choice, right?
That's a temporary solution for a permanent problem.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, I think, I mean, that, that's very easy how you can solve it temporarily. Johnny on the spot or whatever. I don't know about the company. Were you done?
Yes.
Ms. Felton, did you have something or no?
No.
Okay. No porta potty talk?
You don't weigh in.
No, I don't. I'm good, thank you.
I'm just, I'm, I'm debating to bring, bring some stuff up. I think as a board, you look at some of the capital expenses here, and I'm going to, I'm just going to go over some like major ones, right? Barbara Harvey addition, like, hey, kids are coming, like, New Elementary School. And I'm looking for this year, like at this year specifically, right? I brought this up a couple of years ago. It wasn't taken very well. The board went against my thoughts at that time. But I'm going to bring it up again for something else. Just because I think we have to think about it. Mac Elementary renovation is scheduled for $25 million. We have a K through eight that we're building. I don't know what the, what was the total money for the Lake Manatee?
For the Lake Manatee?
Like total, 100?
Total, it was like right at 100.
Close to 100 million, right?
95 million.
I, I mean, I brought this up a couple of years ago with another elementary school that was old and needed to be redone. And the need for it and, and we went a different direction, that's fine. And I know these schools are extremely important to the communities and things like that. But at the end of the day, we're going to be spending $25 million on a, a school that's got, and I, and I'm not saying children are just numbers. But the reality is the cost of what we run the facility, the teachers, etcetera. It's just things we've got to think about. Money only goes, like, we only have so much money to go so far. And I'll, I'll, I do think in the next... I do think in the next, the next section for the charter schools, I do think we should be sharing. So, but when I look at all this, all, everything combined, some, some things have to give. That's just, that's just the reality, like some things have to give. And, and I'm, and I'm not saying that this school is more important than that school or whatever, but something's either, something's got to give to where, if we're going to, to, to have equity in, in what we're, what we're giving to charter schools and ourselves, we've got to be able to go back and say, is this, like, is this project real? Like, do we really need to spend 25 million? I, I mean, it's just the reality. I, I talked about it in a couple of schools a couple of years ago, and I know we had a lot of some, you know, typically like we, like we have today, they came all in the same shirts and, and were ready to, to, to go at us. And we chose to go a different direction, we've got to live with our consequences on that. And I'm just bringing this up again today, I just, spending 25, 30 million dollars on new schools where there is no growth, there, you know, I just, it's a, that's, that's, it's a hard pill to swallow. So, but you look at like, I mean, for Maakka, for instance, you look at the Jacobs report, and they are 11th, right? So, you know, it's needed, but, you know, it's, it's a tough decision to say, hey, you don't get a new school, you don't get, you know, renovations. But I'll talk a little more in the next section of some thoughts. But, so those are just things, Board, that I'm not, I'm not saying right this minute, we cancel a renovation or do something like that. I, I do think though that in the next, because you're just hearing this from me today, and we're not proving this till later on, that's just something to maybe think about. And I'm not saying completely get rid of it, but is that something we push back? Is it something that we do, hey, just a little bit at this time? Is it something that we look into saying, what is it, what is going to cost us to get those, those students into town? You know, I mean, there's a whole lot of things involved in that. But I just, I think it has to be something that we, that as a board, like we consider, right? And any of these things that we start to pick and choose and say yes to, no to, I think we can rely on staff, and I'll talk about this again in a second in the next topic. I think we can rely on staff to give us their options and things like that. But it's going to be up to us to own what we do or not do. And, and I don't want it to be on the staff, I want it to be on us as a board, because we're the ones that people like to, to do that. So, I don't know, it's just something, just again, as, as I'm looking at the budget, those, those big things like that. One question I did have is 101, like 101 site acquisition? Is that site acquisition what we've, the things we've already paid for that's going to be in this next year's budget, like?
That, that's Mr. Pendley's estimate on contracts he's got coming up that we may be, we may have already approved it.
Right.
In our due diligence.
They just, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Mr. Ch-
Yeah, go ahead.
Since we're, we really are already going there. That, when we started getting the emails in January, February regarding the sales tax, I didn't know anything about it, I wasn't on the board in 2016, I was in a classroom. In 2023, I was in a classroom. So this was all very, very, very new to me. So I've been trying to do due diligence, do my research, met with different people, trying to learn what's going on. I am still in the learning process on this as we go forward, so I'm looking forward to the presentation today. This was also very helpful this morning. I, I cannot say that I have made a decision either way, because there are so many factors involved, and so I'm, I'm keeping an open mind. I have concerns about if we, of course, if we, the board chooses to, to, you know, start sharing this, these monies, where, where do we compensate from? Because we do have projects that need to be taken care of, if you look at the Jacobs report, right? Also, with regards to the new school construction, three of, three of the, the four new schools that are currently underway are in my district. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to stop doing them, they're in the, particularly the two that are opening in the fall. They're, they're in the middle of, they're almost done. And having visited all of those schools up there and seeing the new ones, and the ridiculous number of portables, for example, at Harvey Elementary, you know, we, we need those schools, th- those are needed up there. We don't have the room for the kids that we have. And even when the charter schools up north are at capacity, we still don't have room for the kids that we have up there. So, you know, th- this is where my struggle is, is, you know, if we suddenly decide to not do Artisan Lakes, although we've paid for, oh, half of it already? I mean, because there's no way we could do that, it's already underway. But, you know, even if, you know, it's by some weird way, we could suddenly decide we're not going to do it, where are we going to put those kids? So I have a lot of concerns about that, and then also I have a lot of concerns about these projects. Now of the, on the Jacobs study, only two of those are, are in my district. Blackburn, which if anybody had ever seen it prior to the new building, it, it needed this done 20 years ago, I feel like. And then Maakka is also, is also in my district. But also knowing a lot of these schools are Title I schools that are on here, they don't, where else, how else are they going to get the, the needed repairs that they need and the needed upgrades they need? So, so these are all my concerns, these are the things I'm going to be looking to staff to help me understand as we go forward today. You know, having, having not been on the board in 2016 or 2023 when these decisions were made, this, this is all new to me, so I am, I'm still trying to figure it out. You know, so just, just to let you all know where I am on this, and everybody sitting here? This is, this is new, so, you know, please excuse me, I'm going to have a lot of questions as we go forward. So I'm just putting that out there.
Okay, a couple of things. When you're talking about Maakka, again, I'm going to go back to, we're in the middle of rezoning. So we don't know what population's going to populate the new K through eight, and that's out that way, we know that. And then, I'm, Board, I brought this up with a former Board too. On here, we have this building with millions of dollars for renovations, AC, bathrooms, all that. I'm freezing to death, by the way, so I don't know what that's all about. It's freezing down here and hot upstairs, maybe that's the project. I asked back then, why are we spending so much money on prime property downtown when we have a beautiful, I don't know how many acres at Wakeland? I recommended then, let's do a study about what this property's worth and maybe move our operation and build a facility at the Wakeland site. And I know there's trees and I'm getting those looks from Mr. Kennedy, and I know. Pardon me?
It's a big idea.
And it is a huge idea, but I see, again, a long-term vision. That's what you have to get sometimes with these projects, is that long-term vision. That property's just sitting there, it's just sitting there. I don't know, when we're, when we look at land acquisition, how much is that? 5.4 million? And we're talking about a, a bathroom that I would like to have built, it might cost one or two million? Two meetings ago, we were presented a $2 million budget increase for technology because of the fear of tariffs. And we just, okay, here you go, just in case. Two weeks later, those tariffs were lifted for equipment. So you got to think of it like that too, make good sense of the decisions you're making. To me, that was, I didn't have the votes, I wasn't going to challenge it, I'm like, okay. But I did in my briefing, say it's a knee-jerk reaction. So to me, yeah, 8.5 million for HVAC, and I think that was one of the first projects that was on my, on the agenda when I first got on this board was this building. And I had Board members up here saying, the people in this building have been waiting long enough to get their renovations done. I, I understand all that, but I also see that it was a $16 million project back then, if I remember, I might correct in that. Then we had a flood, okay, up on the fifth floor, bled all the way down to the bottom. So we updated that half of the building, to be honest with you. This half, we didn't have to do anything because of water damage. But to me, I think it's worth this board looking at to see what that, I know it'd be a lot of money. We're putting out all of these COP projects for our schools. You can do a COP project for administration as well. Look at the PSC down there, the property that's attached there. I just think it's, it just costs, not cost-effective to have us, you know, the brain of the operation to be all scattered out, one central site for the key components to run the district. And then you have the little satellite office for student services. But I just think that we're spending an awful lot of money for the PSC, awful lot of money on this site. Well, we have a beautiful piece of property, sure, we have the, a big expense to get rid of all the trees that cracked all the concrete in that school. Huge expense, I know, I've had tree after tree removed from my, my property.
Same with the trees.
Right, right, I love the trees, but that was the reason that, one of the reasons that Wakeland was shut down. Concrete was being cracked inside, is what I was told, maybe I'm wrong, and mold, from what I understand. Can you?
There was one other reason too at the time, is that one of the buildings in the back was actually having subsidence, or that's what the board was, I never saw it for myself, so this is third person, but it was reported to the board that there were subsidence on the, on one of the buildings on the back of the property. And there was other factors involved too, but in addition to what you said, also that subsidence.
And the site work that we do, the site work that we do, when we buy raw property, raw property, we just go out, we tear down every tree, nobody's up here saying, save the tree. Then when we're doing that. But I just think that we need to look at that, maybe not this five-year plan, but in the future. I'm sorry, I'm rambling, but yeah, so anyway, I just think that we need to look at our Wakeland property. That's a, that's a beautiful centralized area, and it's just right by the Pirates, and I think it would revitalize that neighborhood.
Well, I think one of the reasons why it was changed to what it is now and it supports the center of a school is that, obviously, population-wise, it wasn't needed for a school, right? I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't a part of it, right? But, you know, that's, that's same with Harley, it's same with some of the, you know, some of these, these schools that we've, we've transitioned from a normal school into something different, obviously, the, the need for student stations wasn't there, so they consolidated to somewhere else. But, I mean, all great points, I think we should always be looking at, at our properties and seeing what we have. I just, I don't know that, you know, to be, for me right here, I don't know the numbers of the, the amount of people here, amount of people in PSC, can it fit at Wakeland, or you're, and let's start by completely gutting it, and then redoing it. What does that look like, from a data center standpoint? I mean, yeah, that would be a lot of, a lot to look at.
That would be a COPS project.
Yeah, that would be something, yeah, I mean, I, I don't even.
That would be a COPS project.
I don't think that's something we need to look at in the next year or two.
No, no, no.
Because of all these schools.
I'm just putting it out there now.
But I also agree with you, I don't know, I don't necessarily know if it's the right thing to do with our money to spend money on this building either, right? I get it, I get what you're saying. Any other thoughts? Lot of noises? That's usually a safety.
Break time.
Make one more comment, maybe we could take a break. As we're talking about big picture stuff, it is interesting to know, I had Mr. Zikafus in the back there, do a little analysis of cost per square foot for schools, right? You all heard me talk about this thing called the SREF, the State Requirements for Educational Facilities. And, you know, I don't know, I guess I could have sent you this document, you know, with the whole sunshine law thing, you know? That's, and I think the, that's one thing I would like to make the public really aware of is that, I think a lot of times you, you come to these meetings and I bet they have this thought, it just came to my mind, is this the first time these people have ever talked about this?
Yes.
And it is, right? Like you would think that we would have had this hall, this discussion about the charter school stuff, and we, we would all come and we'd go, hey, we got a plan, and we're going to implement it, and it's been done, and we've talked about it, nope, this is the first time we're going to talk about it. Anyway, so this SREF thing, the State Requirement for Educational Facilities, it was educational for me, you all probably know, the public, it might be educational for them, is that charter schools do not have to follow the State Requirement for Educational Facilities code. Okay? So, in this, in this page that I have in front of me, again, I, I just was thinking of it as we were going through this conversation, I could have given it to Laura or something, but anyway. So Ola Elementary, which was built, what, a year or so ago, Mr. Zikafus, is that right? For 650 student stations, that's an elementary school, right? Is that right, Mr. Zikafus? Cost per square foot for that building was $20,769. Artisan Lakes Elementary School, which we're going to finish up here in the next year or so, 969 students, cost per student station, $69,402, over three times as expensive. Rye Ranch Elementary, 969 students, I don't know why there's a difference, but, and, you know, I'm assuming that you did your research correctly, but I'm sure it's close, 700, $77,398 per student station. Back when Barbara Harvey was built, was built a couple of years ago, this is not the addition, this is just when it was built, 1,268 students, $54,000 per student station. And the new high school, even with 1,200 students, I think we were looking at, how much, Mr. Rinaldi, 140 million for that thing? Yeah, so that's, that's like $100,000 per student station. So can we do anything about that? No, but it's just educate, what we can do about it is get with the state legislatures, and that's going to be my little project after this legislative session, try and fix that, and I'd like to ask for your support. But when you look at this, again, Ola, 650 students, cost per student station, $20,769, and Artisan Lakes, 969 students, cost per student station, almost $70,000, that's three and a half times as expensive per student station. And I'm sure there's always, you know, rules and laws and technical things in there, but it's not 10% more, it's not 20% more, it's 300 times, a 300% more cost per student station to build a traditional elementary school apparently than it is to build an elementary charter school. And we could save a whole lot of money if we were, if the SREF was at least optional, and we could look in there and go to it and say, you know, we like that part of the SREF, but we don't like this part of the SREF. And just for a little more education, when we were walking around, I think it was Artisan Lakes, it was one of the elementary schools the other day, apparently, we have to have operational windows in our schools in the classrooms, which means they open and close for quote-unquote ventilation. And I can understand that, although it's always hot around here, so if the air conditioning went out and you opened up the window, I don't know that it's going to be any cooler than, but maybe it will be.
Actually, I was just going to say. It does start the breeze, but, but whenever I open my windows, I would get yelled at.
Yeah, well, okay, so, but the point is, is that charter schools don't have that. So, Mr. Rinaldi, I think, how much more of those operational windows?
According to some of the vendors we talked to, we're paying double for our windows.
Right.
This is just a normal storefront.
Whereas a charter school, they don't have to have, they don't have to have these operational windows, so then.
Vendors.
Vendors is the law.
So, so then we go to the, the media center, and I, I walk into the media center and there's all these little, what you might call classrooms on the side of the media center. there's all these little, what you might call classrooms on the side of the media center. And, and I look at the windows, and they're not, not operational, and I, I asked Mr. Rinaldi, I said, well, why aren't these windows operational? And the answer I think you gave me was, well, these are not classrooms, technically speaking, they're side rooms on a media center, so you don't, they don't have to be operational. But it's just that kind of stuff, that's just, and, and you imagine, there must be in that SREF, 1,000 things like that, that just drive up the, you have to have, apparently, you have to take the square footage of the floor plan, right? And then there's a certain amount of window space you have to have, so there's like a percentage, and there's a formula, yeah, it's just crazy stuff like that, that is just driving up our costs that, that charter schools just don't have to do. So, since we're talking big picture, if you would, maybe, when we get to our legislative priorities this summer coming up, this would be huge, because we could save a whole, even if we, even if it was double the price, we would still save a lot of money, we could still do a lot of nice things that maybe charter schools aren't able to do, but that's the point, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that this is, if you wanna save some money in the capital budget, this is what has to change, right? These little tweaks around the edges are, are gonna save a little bit, but not a lot. Anyway, thank you.
Correct, well, I, I 100% agree with you, and I think it's gonna be something that we can't wait till we're in Tallahassee for five minutes in front of somebody. It's gonna have to be now, like you said, something you're working on now, that, that, yeah, I think we all, we've all got, I think we all see those, that frustration, because at the end of the day, it's either taxpayer money paying for it now, or it's later when we do COPS. So, either way, it's somebody paying for it.
And, and that's something that I think everyone should get behind, not just school board members, taxpayers needs to, you know, reach out to their legislators and let them know. And, I know my last Tallahassee trip, I asked about that, and there are provisions that you can get around, and, and a lot of them will say, oh, you have to build every school to hurricane standards, but that's not exactly true. You have to prove that you have enough space...
Sure.
...for sheltering during hurricane season. As we know, last year, we proved ourselves.
Yeah, we don't, all our schools aren't hurricane-proof.
So, I would say, yeah, if that's gonna be one of our things, we need to get, I'm telling you, the district people need to get behind board members on helping us with this SREF thing, because it's not a, you know, construction is construction.
I mean, we, as a district, we've been lucky, because the last two state reports that came out, it, it said that our region, includes Manatees, Arizona, has enough capacity for shelter, so we have not been forced to actually design to hurricane shelter standards, which would include, you know, tanks and some, you know, water tanks and things like that. But we're always, I mean, that, who knows what the next report is gonna say, and then all of a sudden, we're stuck identifying our gymnasium as a, as a hurricane shelter, rather than just doing to the regular wind code.
All right, we'll make the comment, that these numbers that I just read you are, are not hurricane shelter, they're not caused by, well, we gotta make a hurricane shelter, because Artisan Lakes is not a hurricane shelter, right?
Right, right, right.
Yeah. And I even, I asked a, an architect and a builder one time that built a charter school out in Palmetto, or in Parrish, I said, they, they made a new building out there, I said, what would, how, how much more would it have cost to make this a shelter? And he said, nah, three, four, five million dollars. So, that, that difference of, you know, 300% more expensive is not due to just, well, we gotta make a shelter, right? It's a couple million, but it's not like $20 million to make a school. At least that's what I was told by the builders and the architects, so.
So, this is a common topic that everybody in the state should get behind.
I agree, I agree.
Sure.
All right, thank you for allowing me to...
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, we can't solve it right here, right this minute, but I agree, it's something we need to get behind as a whole. Anybody else on this particular item?
Break time, is all I know.
Okay.
Resets.
I definitely wanna take a recess, Lisa Bathroom break.
Yes, please.
And then I, I definitely wanna get to the next topic...
Yep.
...before taking a lunch break.
Yep.
So, let's just break for, for 10 minutes, 12:20, we'll be back in, and we're in recess now.
All right, welcome back. So I do want to get through this, the next topic board, then we can break for lunch if we need to. Item two, well, yeah, well, obviously. Item two, sales, cert tax and charter schools. I know this was on the, on the, the, just for, for everyone to know, this was on the agenda for workshop, excuse me, back in beginning of May. Our, our attorney was, was off and so I didn't want to put Patty, the new who fills in with really out any backstory with all this. So that was really the only reason why we pushed that back. I'm glad we're able to, to get this discussion going and finalize this. And so Ms. Sellers, I'll give it to you, I think, believe, and then Jensen, Mr. Jensen and Mr. Nolte as well.
All right. So this is the charter school workshop also to discuss the sales tax. Going to start off today by talking about student enrollment. When the school year starts, the charter schools project their or forecast their enrollment. And at that time, because the DOE does not split out the charter school amount, when you get a conference report, you get a whole number that includes district-run schools and which is the elementary, middle and high. We've also got it for the number of students in the voucher program, that's the family empowerment, and charter schools. Only the voucher FTE is split out and pointed out in that conference report. The rest is weighed on a difference which shakes out to be charter school and district traditional together. So that's one way to explain how the data comes to the district. So when the charter schools forecast their numbers, the district uses that forecast until it's validated by DOE in the third CAC, which we don't receive until typically in January. This year was March. But, but at any rate, so this past year, when we started the budget, their forecast was 12,374. But when they did the survey in October, which we did not get the revolt, the results until March, that number proved to be only 10,914. But when the distributions, that is the funding for operations with the FEFP funding that comes from the state is received, we start to give them FEFP distribution based on those projected funds. Well, that difference this year, that, for that difference was 1,461 students that they, that were not there, that eventually the school district did ended up getting the results in March, and then we ended up having to readjust for the distributions. Because how the district does it is, starting in August, the district does send the charter schools based on their projected FT, FEFP, sorry, not FEFP, FTE counts through the majority of all of the fall and until we get that third CAC received to us. And then we end up having to redistribute that count based on that actual count for the rest of the school year. So that's how the funding, funding goes. We end up using the district source fundings that we do have at that point in time. Now, we do, to handle some of this cash flow for all of the funding, when we don't get certain funds, kind of like timely, right when school gets started, like the, a large part of the revenue the district gets is based on that ad valorem, that's when collections, property collections are, are taken in by the tax collector for November through March, really February, when you get the big bolt of the fun, uh, funds getting collected, coming back to the district to actually source that. So we do end up getting that tax anticipation note to float that to be able to meet these oper- operational obligations at the time. So that's just to set some clarity as far as the funding goes and what the district does do to shore that up. So just felt that it needed to be pointed out how the enrollment went in.
Sorry, I thought you were done. I didn't mean to.
No, I'm done, I'm done.
Question on, so is that a state mandated? Is that a statute thing that we have to go by forecasted or, or is that something we do as a district? For the FD, for the, obviously, not talking about the capital, all that kind of stuff.
It is, it is mandated that we need to give them their, the distributions monthly. We have to, we have to meet it by a certain time. I mean, even if the hurricanes shut us down, we have to make sure staff comes in to get.
But which numbers, but does the state say you have to do by what they forecasted? Or do we do that because, hey, we're just going by, this is what we're doing?
Derek's going to answer that one.
So Darlene would have a little more information than I do. Basically, at the beginning, or well before the school year begins, as we're in this season, the state gives us a number of forecasting models. So the state gives us, like, here's model one, and how many students are in, in the different, you know, family empowerment, district-operated schools, et cetera. Model two, this is what it looks like. Model three. And what we end up doing is actually selecting one of the state models that most closely aligns with our belief of what it's going to be. And that's, and then we, we reply to the state essentially with what model we're selecting, and then they use that for their funding calculations statewide in their budgeting.
Right. But then what I'm, what I'm saying is, let's say we choose model A, right, option, whatever, whatever the, which one we choose, things gonna happen. We know that that funding is going to eventually come through us, you know, after, you know, we get the, the taxes in and things like that in November. But does the state say, school districts, you have to give charter schools, whatever they self-report they're going to think they're going to be at at the beginning of the year, in this case, 12,375, it actually was 10,900. Are they, and obviously, I would, I would figure from both sides, from, from both entities, it'd be much easier to, instead of, instead of up front, like having this money and all of a sudden boom, we're, we're dry at the end, because we were, we were, the numbers didn't match up, to gradually do that. So instead of getting 7.78 back, you know, it'd be easier to, from a, from a, a budget standpoint, to not have that come March, April, May, June, all of a sudden they're not getting as much as they were in the beginning because numbers weren't correct. So do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely. So you're, you're right. We do have to, I believe state statute says that if you're a high-performing charter school, we have to accept your numbers.
Your numbers, okay.
However, it's, like you said, it's, it's a conversation, right, which is, you know, if, if, if a school reports that they're going to have, and it's almost like what we do with our public schools to some degree, right? If a principal thinks they're going to have a really large kindergarten class for some reason, it's like, why do you think you're going to have a really large kindergarten class for some reason? So I think when we see areas in which maybe what we're, we're seeing in the numbers don't line up with the charters, that's when our, our charter school team and specialists reach out and we have that dialogue about, you know, reasons for the forecast. But ultimately, especially for our high-performing charters, we accept their numbers.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Okay, to that, why, maybe this is the uneducated part of this in me. Why are charters allowed to self-report where we are doing forecasts through the FDOE?
I mean, I think it's kind of all part of a, kind of a, a very complex and comprehensive system that the state has established for school funding, right? Where, where the state has its models and they're projecting family empowerment, they're projecting our, our charters and our, our charters are having to report, you know, we, we, just like we kind of do for our public schools of, you know, what the prior year, prior year FTE was by grade level. I believe there's some state-like modifiers in the system for like growth in the areas and whatnot, and there's some trend lines that they, you know, kind of average over time to arrive at the models. But, you know, I think it's just part of that, the way the state collects data in order to try to create a, a model to effectively fund schools.
Because that's a, a lot of students, 1461, from self-reported to actual. That's a lot of money when you're like, well, you're looking at a 7.78. That was probably my biggest thing is how, how is it that charters are allowed to self-report? And then our financials that we get in our briefings, some of those self-reports were over-projected and they're underwater. So to me, it's like, that's not a good system. I can't fix it from here. We can't fix it from here. But it seems to me there should be some kind of an average over, say, one charter school, a three-year average, and see what their actual was at the third CAC and say, okay, this is what we're going to project for you, that we think you're going to have this many. Because you can always, in my opinion, instead of pay back what you owe, you can get paid what's due. Does that make sense to you? Or not to me, but, but, yeah. So, yeah. So we were overpaid 7.78. Is that correct in what I'm seeing on this slide?
Well, actually, I just took the, the difference and just multiplied it by the BSA. That was 5,330. By, by March, they had gotten a lot of it, but not all of that. But that was just the easiest ballpark to be able to put that. What I, what I can say to what we do, because that is what we end up having to use, whatever's been discussed with those charter schools. Like this year, even with that count of the 12,375, our group, when we decided to budget, that's what that middle column is. Because if, if you looked at the forecast, the reason why the, the forecast says 39,344 for the district, and that's because when you took off what they had in the conference report, minus the self-report of the charter schools, minus the vouchers, that was the net, what it would have been. The district tried to compensate, knowing that those numbers weren't going to be right. We budgeted 40,970 from our projections of what we thought. There was still a difference. It, it ended up being 41,024. So we still, but our budget would have been even more loo- looking worse, where we would have been looking for teachers and stuff at a time when probably you couldn't get it by at least budgeting for 40,950 students coming in.
And I think it's important for our public stakeholders, you know, when they look at our fund balance sometimes and they're wondering why we're not necess- like necessarily spending all of the money that comes in in a given year, or why the fund balance may have gone up at this point in the year all of a sudden. It's, it's things like this that, that affect that, right? So we, we budgeted at this, our charter schools reported this. But then when that third CAC comes in from the state and we kind of true up and get that sudden adjustment that was different from the art and science of projections, it causes, you know, additional revenue into our, into our general fund.
Right.
And, and again, like you said, when we get from the tax collectors, when people pay their bill either quarterly or it's, a lot of times people pay annually. So.
It takes an analysis to try to project how some of the way this is going to go, when that funding is going to come in, and to be able to try to make it balanced, so you're not too far off, but, you know, within that range. So that does impact what that fund balance does need to look like to be able to accommodate for that.
Right, okay.
So when we recapture the funds, how, how does that work? Is it that we, we just stop, if we just stop distributing funds? Do we have to sometimes take funds back? How, how does that work?
Well, since you still had March through, through June still to make those payments, so there was still something that was still left to be paid out. What would happen is you would see, take whatever the, the CAC three had indicated as far as the funding, you would determine how much should have been going to the charter schools. And then you, obviously, it's split out by the, by, in the proportionate basis for their FTE, based on whichever way it was. And then you adjust to how much had already been given to them. And then you, you just split that out for the remainder time as they're due their distribution.
Have we ever had to take funds back from a school?
I don't believe in my, my lifetime here, but it can, it could happen, but I'm, I'm not aware of what that is.
So that, I just wanted to, to see how that exchange went on. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Screen.
Uh, yeah, pardon me. Ms. Sellers, sorry, I could look this up by myself, but you probably have it in your head. Just a quick question for context from Mr. Jensen's comments. As of Tuesday's budget amendments that we approved at the meeting this week, roughly, not exactly, but roughly, where is the fund balance right now?
Actuals, it is actually seven, with the March amendments, it was at 17%.
17%, which is roughly how much money? And I should already know this.
That one I can't pull out.
That's okay.
Right away. So anyhow, but.
It's 17%.
Yeah.
Fair enough, thank you.
General fund, right?
Yeah, general fund, yeah.
General fund.
Up to general fund.
Thank you, general, general.
Oh, yeah, sorry, general fund.
No, you're right. And that's what I was talking about. Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
The next two slides are mine, and they'll be fairly brief, I believe. This just provides you a general overview of kinds of the, the students who are enrolled across our district-operated and our charter schools. You'll see we have many similarities between, between district-operated and charter schools, as well as some, some differences in the students we serve. One novelty is that, you know, charter schools are a little more female than male. District operated, district operate a little more male than female. We serve similar percentages of economically disadvantaged students, district 60, charter schools 50. We have a, we both serve a number of homeless students, students experiencing homelessness. Our district rate is 3%. And you can see that we have very similar percentages of English language learners that we serve across both of our district-operated and charter schools. On the next slide, we wanted to highlight some of the students with disabilities that we serve in the district. So you can see that our district percentage of, in our district-operated schools, our students with disabilities percentage is 17. Our charters, it's about 10. I think one of the key differences is kind of in the remaining data that we have in the table. You know, your students with disabilities and that kind of metric there really speaks to students who spend a significant amount of time not in a general education environment. So these would be students in a, in a self-contained DSE class, or students, again, not, not accessing their education with their general education peers because of the nature of their disability. Those students are primarily enrolled in our district-operated schools. And so that's where you see most of the data on the left there. And just as a, as a point, FAA at the bottom there, that stands for Florida Alternate Assessment. That's basically an alternate assessment to FAST. That is for students who, even with accommodations, can't, can't appropriately take the FASTA examination.
This slide is actually to offer up some clarity, because I think a lot of people talk about the voted approved taxes, and I think a lot of them get confused as far as the uses, that type of thing. So what I wanted to be able to put out as a reminder, the general operating fund is where the one mil voted that just passed again in November 2024 is used for. Now, obviously, this one that just passed will be for four years. And it is, this renewal is, and it specifically has indicated in its ballot language, it's for school safety and security, recurring and retaining teachers and staff, student achievement, also through more instructional time and support, early literacy programs, career and technical education. It's also STEM, the visual and performing arts. Got athletics this time, and this ballot includes public charter schools. And the referendum, the one mil, has been this whole time that they've had the referendum for the one mil for charter schools. So, so they are receiving their proportionate share for that too. And this is the one that has oversight by an independent citizen committee. Now, the other tax that we're talking about for today is the sales tax. Now, this tax is one that's for a much longer period of time. The one that went to the ballot in 2016 is actually for January 1st, 2018, and it's through December 31st, 2032. Now, when, there's been a lot of changes, and some of the other slides will bring this up to the law, that does require to have charter schools included. But this ballot that passed did not have that in the ballot language. So, and it's mentioned here too, and it's to be used for capital expenditures to reduce overcrowding, reduce portable classrooms, renovate existing schools, build new schools where needed, public, sorry, to also purchase technology and improve student safety and achievement. So, so this is the, the sales tax that is currently in effect, and that is the ballot language.
Chair, I mean, on the voted one mil, the charters have been getting that.
Yes.
And it says that there's an oversight committee. However, as a liaison to that committee and a former member of that committee, they've not gotten a lot of data from the charters on the use of their proportionate share of that one mil.
Correct. We, the district is obligated to give them their, their distribution, their distributive share. But we do not get data how they use that, you know, how we end up at the district, we have an internal audit firm come in and even, sorry. No, that wasn't this one. That's the, the other referendum, sorry. But, but for this one, the group does look at that and, and gives a report on that. We do not have, I guess, that authority to be able to find out how they use it, because there's no constraints to have that authorization.
Do they not have to report their expenditures through?
In their financial statements that get audited.
I'm, I'm at, I mean, they have to report their expenses somewhere through Charterlink? Am I correct in assuming that that's where they report all of their?
They put their reports in there, and then when they have their audit reports, they also submit them in there too.
Okay. And I had asked for access, I don't see Mr. Hanson in here now, to be able, or Mr. Chapman, Superintendent Chapman, interim Superintendent Chapman. I think that the board should have access to be able to look at that. Because I've had a lot of questions about charters and expenses and how they use and what their teacher salaries are. We don't get any of that. We get a summary, beginning balance, expenditures, revenues, ending balance. That's all I've ever seen as far as charter schools are. So I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think that.
Mrs. Bray, I'll, I'll look into that. I think there's some legality to that, some statute around that, but I'll look into that and follow up with you.
I don't need names. I just need data.
Mr. Jensen.
Mr. Jensen may have the answer.
Oh, looks like he did.
In response to your request, Ms. Bray, we've been, I've been working with Dr. Breslin and her team.
Okay.
You know, we kind of looked at the viability of maybe doing it just a direct login, but we actually think it would be easier for you to navigate and parse if we just kind of copied the files from that into a drive for you to access.
That would be even better.
So we're currently working on that for you in response to that request.
Okay, okay. That, that would be fine, because I think, you know, the Oversight Committee should have that data. And I don't think they've gotten a whole lot from, from this portion of these taxes. So, anyway, okay.
No, I mean, I don't disagree if they're gonna, if the CFOC's gonna oversee what we spend it on.
We need to see what they're spending it on.
Um, so a, a question with, that I had dating back a while with regards to charter school budgets and, and per Ms. Bray's point there, um, when you are able to access, what you are able to access and, and oversee for, for charter school budgeting, um, do they have a, is there no breakdown on what funds they're, you know, they're using for their expenditures? Am I, am I, am I not clear? Cause you're both kinda looking confused about that.
Well, I, I'm not an expert on, uh, on school finance or charter school finance, but, um, I think, um, we can get that information and get back to you as part of that repository. But I think, I mean, they do have detailed financial information in it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm.
Check it out.
Yeah, just cause with, because it is, it is part of the voted tax. And I'm sure that, you know, if, if they're gonna be staring at, at ours and how we spend things, I'm sure, I'm sure our voters would want to know because eighty-four percent of Manatee County voted in favor of this, uh, of the sales, or not the sales tax, pardon me, the mil, um, in November. And they, they would probably like to know how that's being spent across the board.
Because the Finance Department, we only receive monthly statements unaudited from the districts, which we bring to you at each, um, monthly board meeting, and then the audit reports.
Mrs. Felden, our, our executive director's on her way down who oversees the Charter Office. And, and you know, there's that, like Ms. Sellers just said, there's a, there's a financial piece a little bit in the Financial Office, but then there's the Charter Office, right? That's doing a lot of the legwork. Um, so I think, um, Dr. Breslin has a little bit to add to maybe answer your questionnaire a little bit about how far are we allowed or, or what, you know, how far do we go when we look at, or what we're able to ask into the charter finances? So, so if you give us one.
But I'll wait till, I'll wait till Dr. Breslin comes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mr. Kenny has a question.
No, it's okay, that's.
You're good?
We can move on.
Okay. All right, we're good. We can wait for her to come, I mean, we're not waiting for her, we can move on when she comes, we can, we can then touch base.
Move on to the next.
Oh, sorry, yep. All right, actually, this particular slide took the bit of the ballot and just put it out in bullets. Um, what I did wanna point out here was, if I didn't catch it before, the actual capital expenditure uses of the sales tax. Again, this is not to be used for operation expenses. And we cite the statute that actually requires, um, what the, what the resolution back when this particular, um, sales tax went to the board for approval was in effect. And, um, this was also the, uh, some of the board work that did go to the board in the executive summary back on that meeting in October of two thousand sixteen. Um, and this is where it had indicated how they would come up with that, with that allocation funding. And it was to be a five-year average of the charter schools PICO that got passed through the district. So it wasn't like, um, year for year, like, um, if you found out you were getting seven million that year, you got, it was done that way. Instead, what they did was they took it from the, um, an average of the five years to come up with that particular dollar amount. Just to add some clarity.
Can, um, again, new, so can you explain a little bit more about the block grants and how, how those work? Because I'm still trying to figure this out.
Okay, so, um, one, it's given to charter schools who are eligible. And at the time when they put the block grant together, both Lincoln and Rowlett Elementary were conversion schools and, uh, charter schools. So they were not eligible for this particular grant. The district ended up putting together something different for those particular, um, those two schools. There was a, a technology grant that more or less was put together. So they were given some funding to go towards, um, some of the technology needs instead, um, since they didn't fall underneath these parameters that were, you know, mentioned there in the statute that made them eligible to use it for, um, the construction or their capital outlay projects. And when they passed this in the executive summary, part of that executive summary was, which is a piece that, that they've been, everyone has been talking about, is that at some point, if they were to be receiving millage revenues, that's when the block grant was going to be ending. So that's what happened in twenty twenty-three, um, when the state sent, started that one point five mil with a gliding scale of, you know, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred percent, which this year's the forty percent. That's how, um, that's the year, and that's why the grant, the blocks grants did stop.
Okay, and then to clarify, we were not required to do the block grants?
No, but, correct. We weren't, uh, the, this, this district wasn't required. It was, um, a consensus from the, um, the board at the time to, to give them that.
Okay.
To give them funding, and this was, this block grant was that avenue, and they used sales tax revenue to fund it.
To fund that, okay.
Did you want your answer?
Yes, now, now that Dr. Breslin's here, hi.
Hi.
Welcome to the room.
Well, thank you.
Um, I had, um, a, a couple of questions. Now, with regards to, to working with the charters, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna assume, because this is, this is a lot of, uh, information for, for the district to process, that it's not just a here, I'm gonna give you a piece of paper, and here, we're gonna take it and tell you what you get. Um, that there's, there's dialogue going on there between the, the charter schools and the district when it comes to, to breaking out funding and, and things like that. So in looking at, sorry. So in looking at how, um, the one mil money is distributed to the, to the charter schools, part of my concern is that we have, now, most of our charter schools are doing really well financially and stable and, and great, wonderful. Um, and then we have those that are, are not. Um, you know, it's a small number of them, but they're, they're not doing well financially. And when we give them that mil, is, is there any breakdown for you to see how they're spending that in particular? You know, so that we know that it's going to the things that are listed as part of why we're funding it?
Right, so the law is that we get the monthly financial statements. And of course, we receive those, and working with Finance and Kathy Triani and, and, and Mrs. Sellers here, and they do a wonderful job getting those, receiving those from the charters, noting if there's a negative fund balance, so we can go follow up with the charter. Um, beyond that, really, our authority ends there. Um, they do get audited annually, um, by the CPA firm on, to which that charter board chooses. Um, and I verified this with Dr. Hyer too, of course, has been over charters for many years. And we do receive an annual audit report. But it's the scope of that auditor that that, that their, their board chooses, whatever CPA organization that they're going with.
Okay, so they may not break it out, or they, they could, but they may not.
They could.
Break it out to show this is, this, these things are funded through the mil.
Right, right. And I'm not saying they wouldn't voluntarily share that information. Um, I myself have, have never asked, nor, um, to my knowledge, has Valerie Hyer asked that. We've, we've not gone to that. Um, but they are able to operate with autonomy.
Okay, um, the, we got to this point, I don't know if you were watching upstairs, but we got to this point based on a question of Ms. Bray's.
Okay.
Right, and, and it goes back to, again, as a former CFOC member to an liaison, we were given handwritten sheets of paper of what the charters were using that one mil for.
Okay.
And some of that, we had to backtrack because it, they were paying their building rents.
Okay.
That's not allowable under that particular. It was for salaries, safety, uh, teacher retention, those kind of things that was laid out in the referendum language.
Right.
But Mr. Jensen said that you are working on trying to get us details on all of their expenditures. I understand they have their own governing boards.
Right.
But they're receiving taxpayer funds, not just, I mean, just not gifts and, and grants from donors and stuff like that.
Right.
They're getting taxpayer dollars. So that's what I'm more concerned about is what we're giving them and how they're utilizing those funds per the ballot language.
Right, so, right. And that's an excellent point, and, um, you know, the new language from the, the recent vote, really making sure all of our charters have that. Um, and we can work with them and see if they, um, if they're giving handwritten notes, you know, we could talk about a different process. Um, but I would need to work with the charters as well on that. And, um, I know we have a couple in the room, but of course, we'll have seventeen charters in the fall that we need to work with on, on that regard. But that's something that we're sorting through.
But they're all required to submit financial reports through the Charter Link?
They do, through the Charter Link, um, submit financial reports, yes ma'am. So we can pull those out and provide those.
Detailed financial reports or just, uh, generic?
There, I don't know if they're level of detail that you are looking for. I could show you what they look like, and you can tell me then if that is, is, is meeting the expectation of what you're looking for. Okay.
Dr. Breslin and Ms. Sellers, I, I just, on this point that we're on, and let me just provide a little bit of context. Back when the Financial Oversight Committee began, Dr. Breslin, you remember you were on the committee?
I do, I was working in another district at the time.
You were one of the twenty-one.
I served as a parent on that, that first committee.
That's right, so, um, remind, or, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory was that that first couple of years of the committee, the, um, each charter, I think annually, had to submit so the Financial Oversight Committee could provide, could produce their annual report.
Mm-hmm.
Each charter produced that kind of detail. Here's, here's how much we got from the one mil, and here's exactly how we spent it. And Mrs. Bray, you're right, you, you, you recall correctly, there were a few instances where the district had to go back to the charter and say, you need to put this in a different, uh, account for this in a different way because it doesn't, it doesn't fit the ballot language. So that did happen, for the most part, all the expenses were, were fine. But every now and then, there was a, there was an expense that should not have been in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and those, so, as we are now though, the, the charters only have to submit kind of general or detailed or whatever, but they don't have to submit specifically what they're using the.
I, I have not seen that in.
One mil or that.
Not have I. In, in recent years.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not saying they would be opposed.
Oh, I don't think so either.
If we just need to put that.
I'm sure they'd be happy, I'm sure the charters would be happy to produce it.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I, that was just that detail, I didn't realize that had changed, so, thank you, Chuck.
And, and again, my, my, I'm, I'm more concerned about the ones that are, are not financially stable.
Sure.
Um, rather than the ones that, you know, managed to, you know, they, they do well, they've got a straight budget, they don't go vvv all the time, so, you know, that, that's where my concern lies.
Right, understood.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, the, the way the resolution was written, the referendum, the CFOC is to oversee all the funds, whether it's charter or district.
Right.
All of the funds is key, all of the funds is key with that statement.
Right, you made a great point on that.
Right.
I think we're good?
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, this is just to highlight how we got here at this point in time. So, uh, in eighteen nineteen, that was when, um, the charter schools, um, uh, were receiving or appropriated PICO funds, that was the Public Education Capital Outlay Funds. Um, and in that same fiscal year was when that black grant, uh, block grant, um, was established and then distributed to the eligible charter schools. In, uh, on July first, twenty twenty-two, was when the statute was amended to require for all, um, sales tax, um, charter, um, schools, um, be able to receive any of the local voter referendum approved a sales tax. But it did not go and be, was applied back retroactively. So, so for any ballot language that started during the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, that was then when the state filed, started requiring that, um, charter school proportionate share. And then here we are in, well, actually, last year, last fiscal year was when, in twenty-three, twenty-four, the state started giving, um, uh, charter schools, um, a glide, on a gliding scale, the one point five, um, millage, that's the local capital improvement tax levy, revenue.
All right, that's good.
Yeah.
This is for my legal eagles over here, please, can you hear me? Uh, oh, there we go. So, you know, if you just use the plain reading of the statute, it says that we have to, that we're supposed to share this money with the charter schools, but your legal opinions are that it's quote-unquote "not retroactive." But why isn't it, like, why isn't it, well, even not retroactive, but why do we not? Well, it says it's not retroactive, but why do we not have to start doing it from the day that the law was passed? Because it says, you know, as I read the law, you should do this, didn't say, but you don't have to do it for previously passed, at least as I remember reading it, maybe I'm wrong, previously passed ballot measures. It just says you need to start doing this, or am I reading that wrong?
It, it's because it was a referendum.
Okay.
So it goes back to how it was, uh, represented to the public through a referendum process.
Okay.
That's why it's not retroactive.
But why isn't it for, what's the word I'm looking for? Why does it not have to be applied at the moment that the statute is passed? It says, now you have to start sharing, it does say you don't have to go back and share it, but at the, at the moment that the statute was passed, why doesn't it then apply to henceforward you have to share it?
Because, because how, because it's a, a special voter-approved referendum that controls through the entire life of the tax.
Okay.
And the voters didn't approve it, even though the legislature changed it later.
Okay, so if you go back and look at the ballot language, I think I've mentioned this before, you know, when you fly in the Air Force, the thought process is, if the rules don't say you can't do it, you can't do it. When you fly in the Navy, the rules over there apparently are.
I know.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't say you can't do it, you can do it. So there is an analogy to be made, and that is that it, it doesn't say in the half cent, that's on page five of the presentation here. It doesn't say it's for, you know, charter schools and traditional public schools, and it doesn't say, it doesn't mention what type of schools. It just says, at least as I read it, we're just gonna have this half-cent sales tax for the school board. So why are we, you know, restricting its interpretation too? Well, it didn't say that charter schools were included, so they're not. Because it doesn't say that they're not included. So why are we interpreting it with that restriction around it?
Well, if it did include it because it didn't exclude it, why would the legislature have added it?
So, so your point is that, well, they might have added it just, just, just to clarify. Like, there are a lot of times when something's ambiguous, like if I read that, I read it, I'm like, well, it doesn't say that charter schools are included, but it doesn't say they're not included. It also doesn't say that traditional schools are the only ones that are going to be, or get this money, but it doesn't say they're not. And, and so to me, sometimes law is written to clarify something, whereas a lot of, maybe a lot of school boards around the state were going, well, it doesn't say you get this money, so we're gonna clarify it, and you're gonna get it now. I don't know, I'm just trying to see why we're, we're restricting the interpretation in that way.
Well, it didn't make it mandatory, so if you do, if you do allocate surtax funds to charters, which you don't have to, you're not mandated. They did clarify that you had to do it proportionally based on the student population.
So actually, what the law said is you have to put it on the ballot with the charter schools included now, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, but you don't have to.
Future.
Just like, just like on the mil.
Right, but you don't have, but you, you don't have to necessarily pay then. It just has to be put in as part of the ballot language, is that what the legal?
For the next, the next time.
Yeah, when this comes up for renewal, it's mandatory.
Mr. Kelly's jumping in.
No, 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 I'm, I'm fine, I just wanted to add, Mr. Chair, if I may, to the board, the, uh, the sales surtax, when it was passed, included an Exhibit A that listed a number of projects that were capital projects that had to be funded. that were capital projects that had to be funded through that sales tax. So that's one of the reasons, if it's not a listed item in that Exhibit A for appropriate use of a sales surtax, there have been instances in Florida where statewide grand juries have looked at boards and said, you didn't use your sales surtax in accordance with your capital outlay, and you're in trouble because of that. So, we get a little bit antsy when we start talking about what are capital versus operational funds. We keep those in separate buckets and make sure that you're using those accordingly. And that's part of the reason why when a sales tax was passed in two thousand sixteen with specific projects attached to it, you can't take that money and use it for other projects that were not authorized.
So Exhibit A was, what was Exhibit A, it was in our, it was in board work?
Board resolution.
It's attached to your resolution.
That's the board resolution.
Different from the referendum. Named schools and things like that.
Right, I remember looking at that.
Yeah, so the, so the referendum, which is what the citizens see when they vote, is very short.
Right.
That's what's on your end up. But the board resolution, more lengthy document, and it had attached to it the capital program tenure. And, which gets changed regularly, but it did not include any charter school projects.
Right, and then?
To be paid from the surtax.
And then we send the resolution over to the county commissioners, right? Is that how that works? We send our resolution over to them and then they have to, and they get Exhibit A, I assume, or, or not, do they, or do they not, or?
Yeah, that's the, actually, the.
Because the county has to actually be the one that approves it being put on the ballot.
Yes, but they must approve it. It's not an option, but, but the supervisor of elections is charged with the responsibility for taking the board's authorization, the school board's authorization, and placing it on the ballot as it's, the language comes over.
Okay, from the, from the resolution that the school board voted on, which would have included Exhibit A, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The county's in charge of calling elections, so that's why it goes to them, but it's just a ministerial act by them.
Yeah, because wasn't there a case up in Hillsborough County, this last go-around, where the county commissioners decided they were gonna delay putting the school board millage operating referendum on the ballot, and the court said, no, you have to do it.
And they weren't allowed to block it.
They weren't allowed to block it, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
All right, next slide.
Gotta catch up now, Helen.
Number nine.
Yep. Okay, so this slide is highlighting the capital outlay revenue that the charter schools have been receiving. The top layer or group are historic or the, this, in regards to this particular fiscal year, the budget totals. So, again, charter schools do receive the Public Education Capital Outlay PICO funding, and you can see since fiscal year eighteen nineteen, they have received approximately thirty million. You can see the one point five local capital millage that they, to date, through this past fiscal year, approximately seven point three million. When they were receiving the block grant, since that started in eighteen nineteen through twenty-two, twenty-three, that was thirteen point one million. And for those conversion schools, five hundred, sorry, yeah, five hundred and forty-two thousand in revenue for their, funded by the sales tax for their technology grants. The forecasted capital revenue so far that we have projected in our budget would be for the PICO for the next five years, they would be receiving forty-one point eight million. And in the one point five mil, they will have received since, for the next five years, eighty-six point three million, so coming up for the next five years in the capital plan, we are showing that the charter schools will be receiving a hundred and twenty-eight million in capital outlay revenue.
Question?
Yeah.
And just to note that we do have, at least one of the charter schools did not submit receipts for their block grant, which we are still holding at this point. That would be the man, the School of the Arts and Science, Manatee School of the Arts and Science, and so that you're aware that that's like two hundred and one thousand that they have not submitted or responded to give to the district, but we are still carrying it forward in the event that they do. And then the technology grant, the one that's still left there because Lincoln's not there anymore, is RALAT, and that technology grant split out close to ninety thousand.
Okay, so if I go back to the capital slide deck, page three has PICO money for basically public schools and PICO money for charters.
Yes.
And the numbers are real broad-ranging to what a charter gets in PICO money versus what the district gets, am I right in assuming that?
What you're seeing there is year zero.
Right.
Which, which number was that, a hundred and?
It's on page three.
Thank you.
Page three, sorry, thank you.
Right.
Okay, yes, so for that, that, so that the line that says PICO cap, Charter School Capital Outlay, the six point seven, that's this year, that's actual revenue that we are expecting to receive, the other ones are projected based on data.
Right, that's project, I'm saying, you're saying charter school capital outlay, PICO. That's for next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, you're saying that's seven point one million.
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying.
You're getting five point four million.
And we're getting, the public schools are getting five point four.
But, but keep in mind, those are all legislative appropriations, so when a public, when a school district gets PICO money now, it's not a general fund the way the charter schools are, we have to put an appropriation in. So that's for the SRQ.
A specific, right.
So it's a specific request?
It's a, it's a request, yeah.
Right, it's a legislative ask.
We're not eligible for a regular amount of PICO money year over year the way the charter schools are, we've gotta put a request in.
Okay, and the one point five that we get for capital through local, twenty-three, twenty-four is when we started sharing with the charters, correct?
Correct.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, that went up a whole three million.
Because remember, they started getting forty percent.
Right, right, is it?
Of that calculation.
Right, I get that. I guess it, to me, it's a this or that question, which do, is going to be more beneficial? I don't understand why we have a PICO fund and a capital fund and only charters get it through, just naturally through PICO, but districts have to apply for projects through legislative process. So that's where I struggle, to be honest with you, is the difference in charters just automatically get PICO dollars where we have to go up and beat the halls of Congress.
It wasn't always like that.
Right, wasn't always like that.
We would get PICO as well, but that changed, and that's state statute.
State statutes, right.
Not us here.
Right. So that's, and then the block grant, so they were getting, charters were getting a block grant from eighteen through last year. And then we stopped because someone said, well, you're reading a statute wrong, you can read it this way and it can affect your budget this way.
No, 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 it came up in twenty-three because the superintendent said, you've got this in your resolution that says you don't have to give this block grant if charters get any of the one point five mil. They were getting the one point five mil, that's why it was brought up.
Okay.
To vote on.
Right.
Never anything legally, it was based on that page that was shown earlier.
Right, okay, all right. Okay, you can go on, I just wanted to clarify that in my mind, how I don't understand why we have Public Education Capital Outlay PICO for one portion of schools, but not the other. But we need to be unified and we're all in the same county, we're all educating kids. You know, so I don't know why they do it that way up there, to be honest with you. Is, 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 do you want?
It might have been that because they weren't getting any of the one point five mil, I mean, I've had discussions with some finance people, because they weren't eligible for the one point five mil capital tax, this was a way of the legislature trying to backfill some of that money.
Okay, all right.
Because they haven't, until twenty twenty-two, they weren't really eligible, they weren't eligible for it.
Okay, all right.
My thought, but maybe it's.
No, I just have a quick thought to answer Ms. Spray's question about why do we have this uneven playing field, which is, I think, what you're getting at, and I was advocating and have been, you know, like, I don't, you know, the, the whole charter school, public versus charter debate is, is very complicated, and the general public seems like it's a, you have to be pro or anti charter schools. And I'll be very quick, but like, I always say, like, it's, it's very nuanced because there are really good charters, and there are lower-quality charters, and I, I think competition is a great thing for schools and for us, because it makes our public schools, the ones that we operate, compete with these charters. The unfairness, I believe, and Mr. Tatum brought up a really good example earlier, with construction requirements between, that's probably the most glaring one. But I think the same thing kind of applies here, that there's a little bit of uneven distribution of capital money, because generally speaking, the Florida legislature likes to throw money toward charter schools, they're, and that's just the way it is, and that's okay. If people want to change that, change your elected officials. Now, there is, to the, in fairness to the charters, though, there is some, and I think you see that on the slide about students with disabilities, there, I think we are more equipped to deal with those students than the funding that the charters receive to, to deal with students with disabilities. So, they're kind of put at a little bit of a disadvantage in that realm, but I think we're put at a little bit of a disadvantage in these unequal requirements for construction and this unequal distribution of, of construction, or capital funds, excuse me. So, but that, this is not news to anybody, this is not new, this has been going on for years. And this debate and this conversation is brought about by this, as I see it, unequal, unequal playing field.
Right, right.
Thanks for, thanks for.
Yeah, thank you.
Off the soapbox, okay.
It's all right, it's all good.
So the next slide that I, I brought in, I just wanted to show, these are figures from the audited financial statements of all of the charter schools at June thirty, that's, that's the information that we, we do receive and get from the charter schools, and it just points out the significant variance within the charter schools' operating funds. Now, the district, you know, we have a board policy that requires us to have a general fund. Well, actually, the state has a state requirement for at least three percent general fund reserve. This board has one where they made a strategic reserve in the general fund at five percent, and they recently updated the board policy to have a contingency of eight point five percent range to be able to stay in for that general fund reserve percentage. But here you can see all of the schools from across the board, and their different operating general fund reserves and where their general fund balances were at June thirty. So it just, just maybe explains a few, now, this is just operating.
Right, it's in capital.
This is not capital. We are required to report and monitor for the state where the charter schools are with their general fund. So this is indicative of that review that we do.
Ms. Helly, just to be clear, so this, the, this data is from last summer?
Yes, this was as of June thirty, and just to point out, OLA is not in the red anymore, they did get, so they, so as of this date for the financials that went to the board, it is actually only Oasis that is sitting in a deficit general fund.
Yeah, and thank you, because that's what I was getting at, this is from last summer.
This is from last summer.
They have to report this information monthly, correct?
They, what we bring to you monthly is un-audited, I didn't, I didn't feel it was appropriate to give you guys un-audited figures, so I just went back to the audit reports for June thirty. So, but this was to demonstrate that we have a variety of operating statuses amongst the charter schools.
Thank you.
And, and that, to my point, is what I mean when I talk about where my concerns lie.
Yeah.
When, when you have, now, if I had been sitting here a year ago, I would have had serious concerns about a charter school with zero reserve.
Right.
Or, you know, two percent, one percent, a half, a half a percent. Because I don't see that as sustainable.
And the state doesn't have that same requirement, they give that requirement to the district schools, they do not apply it to charter schools.
So that's another one of those imbalances that we're, we're talking about, too. Okay.
Well, Mr. Rinaldi, this one's for you.
We're gonna talk about Mr. Tatum's favorite subject. First, just to kind of put it in perspective, being good stewards, Manatee, with the opening of the two new schools in July, will be over eight million square feet worth of instructional space. Average age, twenty-seven years. When it comes to the maintenance industry, usually that first twenty years is your honeymoon period. Nothing really happens, a little paint, and here, there. When you get over that twenty-year period, that's when you begin to have to replace major systems, HVAC, roofing systems, completely redoing floor and all that. So, we're kind of creeping towards that. Now, I, I say that, but Sarasota's at thirty, Pinellas is at thirty-nine, and Hillsborough is at forty. So they're already way past that already, so we're, we're in good shape in that sense. We've been keeping our assets up, up to snuff, let's put it that way. But at the eight million square feet, the three largest charter schools are at two hundred fifty-eight thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, and a hundred and thirteen thousand. So those are approaching five hundred thousand, but your average high school here in Manatee County is three hundred and twenty thousand. We got two point two million square feet just of high schools alone. So that, that's the other inequity, when you begin to look at FTE versus square footage versus age of facilities, and, you know, the ideal formula would mix all of those in to come up with allocation of funds. Now, unfortunately, the state has never figured it out. Even their cost per student station, which they now have basically shut down, that we no longer have to report, was based on student stations rather than industry square footage. And they've realized that they've got significant problems associated with that. When it comes to SREF and it comes to costs, there, we've talked about some of the general things, there are some unique requirements in there about ventilation, that every single space within a school in SREF needs to be considered educational, so therefore, that, that's, that's the highest of restrictions. We, we've got issues with, whenever we design, we need to do a facility lifecycle cost over a fifty-year period. And in theory, we should be selecting those materials that will survive for fifty years. I mean, those are some of the requirements that are in SREF that the charter schools don't have to work through. But from a program standpoint, that, that's the significant difference. And Derek shared a slide, right now, within Manatee County, we are serving eighty-nine percent of the ESE population. That, that's critical, because an ESE classroom, though it may be the same size, in many cases, it's bigger, it's only serving ten students, where a typical classroom is serving eighteen to twenty-two at the intermediate elementary level. So that's another big factor, is that we're serving a population that they're not serving based on the chart that we just presented here, so that is a significant cost. The other issue we get into is the size of the classrooms. The drawings that I've reviewed for the charter schools, classroom size range between 600 and 630 square feet. Our new design for Ry Ranch is 815 square feet. And that's based on SREF again, but more importantly, it's based on feedback from the educators. I could not imagine having 22 children in a 600-square-foot classroom. And we get that feedback when we put our education specifications together and when we review SREF as well. So from that standpoint, and, and one of the interesting things, too, one of the overlays that we have, we've all heard of the Florida inventory of schoolhouses, FISH. So, I mean, we, we're dealing with that as well. Where the charter schools, I, these numbers, I have to go to the property appraiser's office even to figure out what the square footage of their campuses were. So there is, once again, there's no centralized database. There's no centralized oversight the way that we have to go through whenever we're dealing with either new construction or renovation and remodeling. Now, renovation and remodeling, everyone knows about the lovely Castaldi. Everyone know the Castaldi? So, so that's the, that's the measurement we go through when we want to demolish a building. We have to prove that that building is cheaper to demolish and rebuild than to actually renovate and remodel. Typically, and we went through this with all the COPS projects, Blackburn, Palmasola, all of the projects. We proved it was financially responsible to demolish a number of those buildings and build new. They came back and said, those buildings are only 31 years old. They have to be 35 in our new metric we just created. Therefore, you have to renovate and remodel that building. Even though financially, it was going to cost us significantly more money. So that process, too, is one that is broken. If we want to go to the legislature, that, that, that would be ideal to, to do that as well. But, I mean, those are, so it's really administrative as well as some program and other given program. So the overall impact is buildings constructed at SREF are definitely higher quality. They're definitely sustainable. We're looking at 50 years plus. In addition to that, unfortunately, they're higher in cost. And that's, that's basically what SREF does to us as well as having an architect and other architects in, in our, in the positions and within the districts here, working with staff, understanding what those educational environments need to look like, need to feel like, and need to function, so.
Couple comments.
That's my SREF.
Imagine that. Well, first of all, your original comment about being stewards of the taxpayers' money, I don't want anyone to ever think that I don't think that's what you're doing. You're just following the rules, right? I, I don't think you're out, you're just following the rules. So I plan never intended to imply that or something, but. Another interesting point, well, some interesting points about all this. Number one is concerning the Castaldi report. I think Terra Elementary, for instance, was that one of those that we wanted to, would have been cheaper to tear down and rebuild it than to renovate it, right?
Some of the buildings, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, you're right. Along with the SREF, that's something else hopefully we can get the legislature to look at. Another interesting point is that we finance almost 100% of our school construction within the county. We don't get any funds, hardly any funds at all, is that right, Ms. Sellers, from the state? For, for, other than some little bit of capital outlay that we get, right?
Right, except for being, right, exactly, exactly. And the 1.5 mil that, that we can possibly use, impact fees can be used for new construction. You've got our portion of the 1.5 mil, but that's also used to pay for, for other things, too. So, so correct, if we need to do a heavier lift to fund some of these construction projects, we end up having to go out to find those financial instruments, yes?
So our financing options are, for capital, they are COPS, 1.5 mil capital tax, sales surtax, and impact fees.
Correct.
And that's all local, almost nine, all that comes in local. So like 99.5% of the money that we use for capital expenditures in the county comes from the county.
Correct.
Or, or we go to the COPS, which essentially the taxpayer's taking out a loan and then paying it back later.
Right.
I make that point because it's just frustrating that the state gets to come down and tell us what we can and can't do with our schools. And yet, we're the ones in the, locally here in the county that are funding it all. So just an interesting point, right? And, and that, that needs to be changed along, along with the SREF. And I, and I agree with you, the impacts down here. But, you know, there comes a time where, I used to buy Cadillacs, maybe, I mean, I'm just using analogy, like, I love Cadillacs and I was buying Cadillacs and I was buying Cadillacs all my life. And then one day, the price of, of the Cadillac went up 25 or 30%. And I'm like, I can't afford a Cadillac anymore. I gotta buy a Chevy. Chevy works, it's safe, right? Gets me to where I'm going. It's got some nice buttons in it and bells and whistles, but I need a Cadillac. I'd like a Cadillac, but I can't afford a Cadillac, you know? And maybe the Cadillac will last 20 years and the Chevy will last 15 years. But based on the increases, how much are?
But better, in, in this scenario, it better at least last 35 years.
Right, that's right.
Not going to let, knock it down or trade it in.
But I remember, that's right.
Just have to rebuild.
That's it, you can't trade in your Cadillac, right? But, but I do remember you telling us that at least a couple, for a couple of years there back in '22, '23, and '24, that the cost per square foot of building a school was going up, what, 15, 20% a year?
It was going up about 10% a month at, at one point. But yeah, I mean, it was, it was, we, we went from an average of $275 a square foot to now $500 plus a square foot. So it, it almost doubled in that timeframe.
Yeah, doubled in that timeframe. So that's, I'm just making that point that we can't, we can't buy the Cadillacs necessarily anymore with the amount of money that we have. It's eventually going to become too expensive and we're going to have to look at, you know, good, quality, solid Chevrolets that get the job done. And, you know, I understand your point about 600 square feet versus 800 square feet. But you go to Palmetto Charter and they got 600 square feet and it's an A school, right? You know, and I'm not saying we need to do 600 square feet. Maybe there's something in the middle. But that was my point before about making the SREF optional. And we can go, oh, we don't like 600, about 800 is too expensive. Let's do 750 or something. That's, that's my only point, is that we used to be able to buy the Cadillacs and we just can't afford the Cadillacs anymore. Another interesting point is, it's coming to my mind, is, because I talk to architects and builders about this and they will say this about, this sounds a little bit disparaging about architects. So if you're listening, I'm not talking to any one of you specifically, okay? But he did make this comment.
Mr. Rinaldi is a licensed architect.
Are you a licensed architect?
Yeah, yeah.
He said, you know, architects want to maintain a good reputation. So when they design some of these schools, they want them to look really nice with a nice architecture. I don't know, whatever the architects do. And, and he said, that drives up your cost sometimes because you want it to look nice. Well, we'll make it look nice and that drives up your cost, too. Whereas, you know, if you go up to Palmetto or you go up to Ola, it's kind of a box. And, you know, I'm an architect, what'd you design? I designed that box over there. You know, that's, I, I get it. But these are the things that, you know, maybe we can start looking at here locally. We'd like, okay, we like your architectural design, but how much is that nice flair with the building going up? I don't know, some of the things that I saw at our new schools, they're beautiful, but, and I'm not an architect, but again, you might just think about that. Like, do we need all this beautiful architecture here? How much extra is it costing us to make it look so lovely and wonderful like a Cadillac instead of a Chevrolet? You wanted the dialogue, Ms. Felton?
Yes. Hold on, I'll switch the glasses again so I can make eye contact with people and they're not blurry. So I, I get, I completely get what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with you, okay? I just, but also when you look at it from the, the people who are going to be in that school all day, every day. And, you know, yeah, yeah, our, our workday, when I was at the high school, was set, you know, we, we got, had to be there by 7:15 and we were allowed to leave at 3 o'clock. While I was there at 6:45 and I left at, it varied, but sometimes all the way up to 5 o'clock. And when you've got those 25-plus kids, I had a class with 28 kids in it because it was an IB class and therefore it's not regulated by class size. And you have, and this was always a complaint, and Mr. Rinaldi's for me, complained about this, the lack of storage in your classroom when you've got, you know, a class set of books and, you know, then individual books for all 151, 50 of your students. And, you know, it, it's hard to function, and I've done it in a, when I was at Harley as an elementary school. It's hard to function in those tiny rooms with that many kids. And then also, we also, as a district, don't want to go and tell our taxpayers, yep, we built you a box. Isn't it nice? Because then we start getting this, well, why are we paying tax money if you're going to be building something that looks like, you know, a box? And so it, it is a give and take and it's going to take a lot of, you know, balancing there to make sure that the people who are in that building most of their year, you know, because you're there more than you are at home, most of their time in those rooms are comfortable. The kids are comfortable. The parents who come in and check it out aren't going, oh, my gosh, why is my kid squished into this room? And then also, so when they visit our schools, they're like, oh, this is a nice school. I, I would like to send, send my kid here. I don't know if you remember the Rogers Gardens apartments, if you were here for that. Those of you who have been here a while, when you go down First Street, going south on the right side, there were cinder block duplexes. Yeah, they, they were, they were habitable. But the people there didn't take good care of them because they were cinder block boxes that they were living in. Eventually, they dozed that, there's now the, the nice-looking apartments there and people take so much better care of them because it looks nice. It's pride of ownership. And we want our kids to take pride in their schools as well. So again, I understand where you're coming from, but we have to make sure that there's a balance so that we have pride in our schools and our taxpayers have pride in their schools. And our families look and go, oh, what a beautiful place, you know? So it, it's, it's going to be a balance.
Yeah, I mean, if we could do 700, 725, how much, would that reduce the cost of building a school by, I don't know, 15%, which would be, whatever, how much, $70 million elementary school, that would be a, what, $11 million savings, right? And you have, you're just going to have to deal with 750. They're getting it done at the charter schools and they're A schools with, with 750 square feet or less, 600 square feet or 650 square feet. They're getting it done. And the other answer I would have to the taxpayers is, well, everyone wants their property taxes to go down. So if you want your property taxes, if you want these, if you want us to build the Taj Mahals, then you're going to have to keep ponying up your property taxes. If you would like to buy, but if you let us buy the Chevrolet instead of the Cadillac, then we might be able to lower your property taxes.
And again, and again, that does come back to some of those requirements, those room sizes and things like that as well. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a good, it is a good discussion. And it, it is hard to figure out where to, to make those cuts and how do we do that and keep everybody happy? Which is a struggle because you can't. So yeah, but it is, it is a good discussion and it is something for, for Mr. Rinaldi and company to, to keep in mind as we go forward.
Thank you for the dialogue.
Okay. Well, first of all, when we're talking about the age of schools, Southeast has been here how long? Manatee's been here how long? Palmetto been here how long? I mean, the principal at Palmetto went to school at Southeast.
But now, when they, when they calculate that, like, the additions we add and all that, that gets mixed.
I know, it all gets blended.
Keeping our assets.
My point is, Mr. Rinaldi, they walk some of the same halls that we still have. Okay, and that's where I'm going with this. And I said it before, when I first heard about the Castaldi and the Jacobs. You know, first of all, architects and, and builders create that report. So they're going to see a crack, they're going to say, oh, you're going to have to replace that in five years, okay? Concrete doesn't rot. It might crack, but it doesn't rot. Charter schools, some of these charter schools are in buildings that's been here as long as Southeast and Palmetto. And the new ones that they're building, a concrete box? We just, we just did a grand opening out at, we went to so many schools lately.
Right.
Is it, no, not right, the, the new addition. We just did it out at.
Oh, Parish.
Parish, okay. It's a concrete box with a hallway and you have all these classrooms. I don't, the main part of the campus cafeteria, the front entry and all of that, I've said before here, I don't like that, all those angles and dead space. To me, and those big, great, huge lobbies, that we're paying so much money to AC. It's ridiculous that we have that high of a ceiling loft. I just, it's ridiculous to me because it's costing us more in the long run, to be honest with you. And I understand architects wants to display their grandeur, but at what cost? It's not, I mean, a school's a school. The school my husband went to hasn't changed in decades. Matter of fact, they filmed Hoosiers in that gymnasium because it's round. It's a round gymnasium. So I think legislators, come and go and all of that, we make rules so hard for ourselves to operate in any avenue. I mean, you can't, you got to keep it 50 years, you got to keep it, you know, if it's this. I know they're not our rules, I'm saying the legislative, they, I mean, anybody looking to go up there, look at some of them that you can get rid of that's costing the taxpayers so much more money. Because if we can build, if a charter can build a school for this cost and it costs us this much, that's a huge imbalance that I'm just, you know, I'm really, it, it's sad to look at the difference. When you tour, and I toured the Parish new building. And it's just as nice in there as it is at the one at Parish. It just cost us a whole lot more to do.
And I, I didn't mean that it wasn't good-looking.
No, I understand.
I like, I drive by, I don't.
Right, right, but I just.
Can I bring us back into?
So now we got to get back to this, right.
Back into the actual sales tax, what we want to do with it with charter schools.
Right, and, and.
Legislative platforms we can deal with.
Right, but I do want to show you my picture. These are students at a school.
Do you help?
Maybe on camera, I'm sure. This is a picture at a school that I toured, happened to be a charter. Their smiles aren't any worth less than a smile at our public school. When I walked in there, they all just ran up to hug me. And it was such a precious, precious moment to me. And I was given that by the school. A student is a student, in my opinion. How we, how they get funding, we can't all dictate by what the state does. But we can how we do it here locally. And a cheek in a seat was one of the things that someone said at a conference. And you're at war with the charters. I don't think we're at war with anybody. I think we all have the same common goal, we want to educate our kids. And if I lived next door to a charter and I lived five miles from a public school, I'm going to try to get my student into that charter because it's closer, it's convenient. Why would I want to drive, you know, a student all the way over there? So to me, a student is a student, how we fund them. Now, I'm not big on the PICO thing, we got to figure out that. I don't want to double-dip the charters. But I would support, you know, doing some kind of a, and I watched that Octo, or that October 16 in detail. And Mr. Kennedy, you were here during that meeting. Yeah, this is a concept. That is one of the lines Dr. Green said. This is just a concept for the board to consider. It fell on deaf ears after that. There was nothing ever done after that at all. So I don't know what happened with all of that, but I've learned a lot about government finance since I got up here. And this is one of them that, to me, a student's a student.
Mr. Rinaldi, this is, or I think it's Rinaldi or whoever, last slide here?
Yeah, I mean, the last slide. We went through and based on the private capital plan that we presented earlier, these are the projects that are associated with the sales tax. And we did.
And we did identify some projects are a combination of millage and sales tax. So in the descriptions in the first column, we identified those as well. But those would be the projects that, based on the decision, we'd be taking a close look at.
And do you mean by that, that, Mr. Rinaldi, I'm sorry, I didn't ask.
Go ahead.
Do you mean that by taking a look at them, that if we allocate a certain amount of money to charter schools, that we might have to then draw a line, and some things will be below the line, they won't get funded, and other things will be above the line and they will get funded?
Or they may be pushed out, yeah.
Okay, maybe pushed out.
We would have to balance.
So I do have a question about, this is from Miss Sellers Zee, what you might call the, because we talk about the operating fund balance all the time, but there's also a capital fund balance, right? And so I looked at the, so what I'm looking at is the 2024-2025 final millage budget hearing. And so it talks about the general fund. It says that we expect the balance to be at fifty million, and then we expect the capital fund balance to be at one hundred and twenty-one point four or five million. So you know, just looking at that at a top level, you go, well, there's a hundred and twenty-one million dollars in that capital fund ending balance. Why can't we? Why would we have to go cut some projects if we've got a hundred and twenty-one million dollars as a capital funding, or capital fund ending fund balance? But then I think, well, some of that's COPS money that we can't use because we borrowed it and it's sitting in there and we're waiting to spend it, but I'll let you
Right, so that balance and joke can be good.
So a lot of those, a lot of the projects we do, because they're capital projects, they go year over year.
Multi-year.
So, for instance, you, in this year, and what we just presented, we've got thirty-five million dollars in the carry forward just for the new elementary school.
Right.
Thirty-five times two. So that's why it's, we kind of look at it as committed versus uncommitted.
Right.
You've, if you're already under construction and you're half-built, that's kind of a committed, but it still is a carry forward and it's still, comes across in the budget as extra funding.
Right, so you're, like, we borrow COPS funds.
Right, once we get those, that just added in. Right, so when you saw that balance, we had already started picking up the expenditures for that particular next group of new ones that we picked up in the 2023 COPS there, oops. And so those particular projects that are new, those are still going out a good three years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you have an estimate then of, like, what is the, maybe it's even hard to determine, what is the annual capital fund ending balance if you took out?
On page ten of the first report, because I just, as you were talking about this, on the capital one, page ten, for twenty-five, twenty-six, shows an ending fund balance of seventy-one. Now, that's not including page ten of the budget, the twenty-five.
Of this thing?
Nope, the first one that we did, yeah, that one. So Mr. Rinaldi or Miss Sellers will have to verify this? Like, at page ten, down at the bottom in peach or
Right.
orange, whatever you want to call that.
Yeah, but, but, but look at the next year.
Correct.
It goes down, so we've used thirty of that.
That's what I was going to say.
It kind of goes up.
Right now, it's seventy-one, but that's not including that thirty-five million that's, that it's sitting there.
But the next year, we use some of that in order to balance the budget too.
Correct.
And it goes up.
Yeah, so that, so yeah, so I think that seventy-one's there.
Okay.
But that's
I need to correct one item that was showing up on that screen, and when you're looking at slide ten, that bottom right number is actually supposed to say the ninety-five million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine oh one, not three hundred and twenty-six million, one sixty-four, three twenty-seven.
Yeah, the final one to the right.
Right, right, that one's definitely an incorrect number, so I wanted to point that out to you guys.
But ultimately, it's more like forty-three million.
Right, exactly.
I mean, I'm talking about like right now, current. The number you're talking about was five-year total. You guys are adding up the bottom lines, putting it
Yeah, I mean, from a cap, from a five-year budget point, I usually look across that and see the lowest number.
Right, which is forty-three.
Which is the, which is the forty-three, right.
Okay, but we still, that's still forty-three million dollars. I mean, we don't want to run it to zero, obviously, but no, we don't want to run that. Because is some of that for hurricane repairs and things like that that might come along, or? Yes, no, or is it?
Yeah, and as well as when we, when you get out to year three, four, and five, we've got numbers there, but we haven't done project scopes. We don't know what other type of issues we're going to hit. I mean, you know, Palmasol was a prime example. We started at twenty-one. By the time we, they had told us we couldn't Castaldi and all that, we were up to twenty-eight or twenty-nine. So I mean, you know, it was a twenty-five percent increase, so.
Do we need to buy you a better crystal ball, a higher quality? I'm willing to pay for it. You guys will, no, I'll
I'll chip in for a crystal ball.
Thank you.
Was it, okay. Thank you very, that was it for your presentation, right? Thank you very much for all that information. Good stuff. All right, so board, obviously, this is not a voting, this is, today's not for voting, so, but I do want to get a consensus of where we're at, so we can put something potentially on the June ten meeting, how we want to move forward. I provided with the help of Miss Sellers, just kind of a starting point, and Mr. Chapman and Mr. Rinaldi, kind of a starting point of like, look, we've got several options, right? Like, do nothing, keep it the way it is.
I'm sorry, this, is this a, okay, thank you.
Yeah, do nothing, keep it the way it is, right? Give them, start back over on the block grant that we used to do. Give them everything like we're going to have to do in 2032. So there's multiple options here to look at and say, what do we want to do, right? So that first column, though, like that twenty-five, twenty-six, that's, that's, and unless the board wants to do anything different, to be able to correct our budget like right now, in the next thirty days, giving, because I don't know what you guys want to do, I think is pretty tough. I would, I would say, whatever we consider, it's starting twenty-six, twenty-seven. I'll give you my two cents about everything. I think that when this was brought in, I can only speak for myself, when this was brought in in twenty-three, I didn't really, when it was presented to us, I really didn't think it was like, like as much of an emotional or a community participation as I do feel like that now. Feel a little bit different about it now than I did then, because we were pretty much presented like, hey, here's what it said in the board previously. Obviously, I wasn't on the board in sixteen or eighteen, but the board previously put this, this verbiage in here that, hey, if they ever, if the charters ever got any of the capital mill, the capital one point five mill, you can, you can choose to stop the grant, the block grant, right? So we were presented that, saw the numbers that, hey, look, this is what they're now going to get. They're going to get some of the capital, the one point five mill, which is going to offset if we stop the block grants, and so we did. But I don't know if that was necessarily the right decision. I think that, that the, when you, especially nowadays with the mill, the one mill that we've, we've added, and that ad valorem, that tax that we've, we've passed successfully, thankful to the community, that has always been tied to charters. And so I think the initial intent was that this would too, like the SRTAX, the sales SRTAX would include them too, because the other ones did as well, right? We've talked about some of the discrepancies, and I do not think we play on the even playing field, but I do think we need each other. I think we, we need charters more than, than, than we can, you probably sit and think about, because if we didn't have it, where would those, that twenty percentage of kids, where would they be? Where would they be going? We would have had to build so many more schools than even what we're doing now. We need charter schools to, to get by. That's, that's just the reality. I think I'm a proponent of school choice. I think that charter schools have their advantage. I think public schools have their advantage. I think it depends on you as a parent. Where do you want your child to go? What type of environment? There, there, some are more, are, have the programs and others don't, et cetera. And I think we should be okay with allowing the parents to choose, hey, I want my kid to go here because of X, Y, Z reason. And I don't care what the reason is. It could be, it could be academics, it could be sports, it could be arts and et cetera. It doesn't matter to me. I think the parents should be able to choose. But I do think we have had this mentality of like an us versus them. And I would like to see, to be honest, and I told you, I'd like to share something with them here, but I would like to take a step back. And as a board, and this, I don't know, this happens today, tomorrow, months from now, whatever, but I think instead of the mentality of us versus them, I'm not saying we're doing that at all, I'm not saying anyone in the district, I'm saying that's an overall feeling. I don't think the public realizes, like, we get complaints, we get stuff all the time about a charter school did X, Y, Z. We don't have control, like, they have their own board, they, we don't have, we're not over their principal or whatever. So I think the, the public commingles. I think that we've got to come to sit to a table with everybody and say, how can we start to commingle? How can we begin to? Because the bottom line is, the legislature is saying, your sales tax is going to go to charters. Your mill is going to go to charters. We've already been doing that. Now, your capital outlay, one point five mill is going to charters as well. So the legislature doesn't see a difference between the district and charters. That's who runs our laws, and that's what we've got to bye-bye. So we either get on board, or we're going to be run over. So I, and I'm not, and listen, I'm a public school guy, whatever my kids did and all that. I'm not saying one's better than the other. They're just different options for different kids. So I would like to see us, as we move forward, collaborate more with charter schools. Example A. I think we, we could potentially have come together, and again, I don't know the legal issues with this, with the legislature or not, but we could have potentially come together and said, let's do a school together, or you take some of this, and us will do this, and collaborate, and I'm not saying every charter school or companies that jump up and say, we'll take on this new burden of a new school and things like that. We have to, though. Like, we have no choice, right? Cheeks in the seats. If there's kids out in North River Ranch, we got to have them. We can't choose to say our enrollment's full, right? We got to do it. Doesn't matter who the kid is. Doesn't matter level one or level five, we got to take them in inside the classroom. So I would like to see just more of a collaboration, and how do we work together on things? I mentioned the school, I, I, I'm not going to get into that. Let me open up a can of worms. So, but I would like to see more, more of us working together for the greater good, which is obviously educating our children and to make our community the best that it possibly can be in the future. So I laid out these options. If you guys have other options, you know, as talking with the team, I said, look, let's just throw some options out there. I think it's pretty simple, cut and dry. I mean, we could finagle numbers, we could not, whatever, doesn't really matter. It's up to you all, but these are the options. It's option one A is, hey, we're going to give them what we, what we used to be giving them, because we'd be, if we didn't vote on that no and turn it around in twenty twenty-three, we'd still be doing that. We'd give a percentage of that. The bottom one in that light blue is, here's the sales tax per kid. It would be nine point three. This is what we give them, or do we work ourselves into it over the years, like we're doing with the capital outlay? So I want to give us kind of a starting point of a reference. See what your guys' thoughts are and go from there. Maybe you guys have other thoughts, which are great.
No, Chairman, I just have a request. If, this is a pretty complicated, I mean, it's simple yet complicated. So if we could, just for community's sake, if we could put this up on the screen?
Sure.
Because we're going to be talking up here about this document, and anybody who's not in the room and doesn't have this in their hand is going to be really confused.
I think Miss
I think Miss Sellers is
Yep, we can do that. We can do that, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Yep.
How do I get it?
And, and board, we don't have to, we don't have to start at this either. I mean, it could be a discussion of, hey, I don't want to do it, I want to do it, I want to figure out something, or I don't want to figure out. I mean, I don't know how, we obviously don't know each other feels, right? Obviously
This is the only time we can talk about.
Yeah, someone has expressed, I do want to share, I do want to do something, figure something out here. I think it's, I think it's prudent. I know Mr. Kennedy has too, so.
I guess I just have a overall thought, and that's our board attorney's advice to us that if it's not included in the 2016 resolution, we legally can't. Attorney Di, is that, is that a fair synopsis of what you're telling us?
No, it's more probably better stated that you don't have to.
It's a statute.
But you can, but if you do share, you've got to follow that, you know, the language of the referendum.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. So I was misunderstanding.
So the, it's got to be for those topics. It's got to be oversight by the citizen review committee. And it's got to be distributed proportionately.
Okay, so
But the amount is not, it's not what's mandated in the new statute. So the new statute mandates an amount based on the proportionate share.
Based on student count.
If you decide to share voluntarily, you can, you can share any amount you agree on. But then you divide it amongst the charters proportionally, based on their
Enrollment.
Enrollment. Does that make sense?
It does, and thank you for that. I, where I misunderstood is I thought you were saying that the resolution that the board approved, that's kind of sat behind the ballot language, I thought what you were saying was, if it's not included in that resolution, because you said there was a list of projects included on that resolution, I thought what you were saying was, if it's not included in that resolution, we weren't allowed to share it.
Yeah, that's, it's kind of a nuance, but it's, it's really the difference between getting the full share, which would require being included in those capital projects that are, that are shown in the resolution to the public. Now you're talking about maybe just a sum of money coming out of the SRTAX, not, not the full amount. And that, in my opinion, would need to be distributed in accordance with the statute and with the referendum that was done.
Right, right. Okay. I just, I just wanted to clear, that was, the question was sitting in my head. We can have this debate about this document. I just wanted to make sure Attorney Di believed we could go by this, which clearly he does, because this document wouldn't be here otherwise.
Yeah, he was with us. My other question is, though, like, even, like, so to your question of the resolution behind it, like, if I remember correctly, almost all those projects are done, if not
That was my point right there.
I mean, I think, I don't know, I don't have the list in front of me.
Do you mean the Exhibit A?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you know, like, if it's like, because we included, like, oh, we need to do, I think Mashaw was one of them, and we do this, 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 this. If those schools are done, we're still taking in the tax. So I guess I don't know, like, we didn't say we're going to stop after these. We still took in the tax, we're still taking care, it's still going towards construction and all that kind of stuff and technology. But it doesn't necessarily have to go still to that specific school project if it's done. Am I right in that?
Right.
It, it didn't show any charter school projects.
Right.
It did show some charter school capital categories, but that was pre-existing. It was also a ten-year, it was a ten-year plan, I believe.
On a fifteen-year tax.
Yeah, so it was, it was always going to be a document that changed over time.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr.
You're good?
Yeah, now? Thank you.
Any votes?
So I'm actually, I'm looking at the document, Mr. Di, that you, you sent us the resolution. I pulled it up on email. But the draft, the Attachment A, Exhibit A, Attachment A is a draft. Would it be possible for somebody to quickly get us? Because in the draft, it doesn't have particular projects. It just says things like district-wide cooling and heating, district-wide roof repair and replace. Would it be possible to, for someone to pull that up? Mr. Chapman, I'm kind of looking, you to get someone to, I don't know how quickly we can get that. It would be interesting for me to see, just
Well
Unless it's not relevant.
If I can dialogue with you
Yeah, sure.
Again, this goes back to 2016. Exhibit A. I'm going to venture to say a hundred percent of those projects are probably done.
Right.
And I'm looking at page five of our thing that has the referendum language. And if I highlight every word, I'll bet you ninety percent of both sides would And if I highlight every word, I'll bet you 90% of both sides would turn yellow. Because it says County Board on both sides, the County Board. It didn't differ, it didn't say, do we share with charters or not on the millage? It didn't say, do we share with the charters on the surtax? Even back in 2016. And when it was up for renewal, it didn't say. And we didn't, I don't know if we even had Exhibit A the last time it came around.
With the one bill, we've never.
No, on the surtax, the one we just did, continue. We just did the continuation of that, not, right. It didn't have an Exhibit A attached, if I remember right.
Doesn't it say in the resolution there? Are you looking at page five?
I'm looking at page five.
Says charter schools are specifically included on the left side, is that what you're talking about? Says STEM, visual and performing arts, athletics, and public charter schools with.
And public charter schools.
In the one bill, yes, they were.
For the one mill, they added that.
Right.
But for this 2016, that November, that was initially on the ballot language. I'm saying, it says, shall it continue? For additional 15 years. Extend, I guess extend.
Yeah.
Charters were never identified in that language back in 2016. However, the Board at the time advocated for the charters to get behind it and support it, which they did. So sometimes it's, I don't want to accuse the Board, or whoever was here. Sometimes it's how the language written, how it's, the Board members and/or district staff goes out and communicates that to people, as did with the referendum, the one mill, makes a huge difference if it's going to pass or not. I don't think that, you know, trying to, you know, splice hairs here on if we need to share, I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, I'm in favor of doing some type of sharing, and I, like you, I went back and watched that video. And it was, it was not clear exactly what. There were some motions made and amendments made, and then it wasn't quite clear, and it didn't come across. Could have just been done better, that's a good lesson for all of us, right? Like, if we're going to make some type of motion, it needs to be voted on and clarified, and it needs to be up on the screen. And it just seemed to me like it was a lot, it was a lot of discussion there about what we wanted them to do, or what the Board wanted to do. But then it never made it into the paperwork, so to speak, right? And then afterwards, apparently, am I correct, Mr. Di, that that's when the, after that meeting is when the plan was developed for this grant program? Is that correct? Is that how that went down?
Yeah, I agree, it was, I watched it, it was confusing discussion. But it was, what appeared to happen is the Board authorized the superintendent to, you know, develop a plan to share.
Right.
And then she came back with the block grant program. I'm not sure the Board ever blessed it.
I never saw anything.
Or approved it later, I don't know, could have. But that's what I think.
Well, she was gone.
And then that block grant program was that provision that said, if charter schools ever start to get a portion of the 1.5 mil capital tax, then the block grant program will end. Is that?
Yes.
Can it, could end.
Yeah, I read that.
It could stop it, right? Yeah, we could stop it, okay. I'm just, that's education for the public, that's why it stopped, right? There was some deal, so to speak, back in the day where they were, that's why we ended up stopping. And you're right, Mr. Cho, it was kind of presented to us was, hey, this was the deal, and this happened, so now that happened. And I'm not blaming anybody over here, I'm just saying that's how it was presented to us, and we went, oh, that was the deal, okay. But maybe we weren't understanding at that point the whole complexity of this issue at the time. But I'm in favor of doing something, definitely. And one idea I had was, because Ms. Bray mentioned, made a point, she doesn't want the charter schools to quote-unquote double dip, right, with their PICO money, is that to make up the difference between, here's how much they would get if they just got their proportion, and here's how much they're getting in PICO money, and that we could make up that difference, so they would be whole, so to speak, until it came time for the next referendum, the renewal of the half-cent sales tax, and just make up that difference for them. Starting preferably this year, and then to go out in the future. And I know that may not make the charter school administrators happy, and that's exactly what they want. But my concern is also punching a big hole in our capital budget by just saying, well, they get their proportion, and then we punch a big hole in the capital budget, and then we have to delay a bunch of maintenance. That's an idea, so.
One thing real quick, Mr. Tatum, you were looking for the resolution?
Yep.
It was sent to us by Attorney Di on April 3rd. It's in those attachments, if.
Maybe I pulled up the wrong one, because I have the resolution.
It says draft.
And if you open it and you go all the way to the bottom, it just says draft, draft, draft. It doesn't show the actual projects. I was just curious to see what they were, but. Anyway, that's an idea too, and if we could get started this year on that, that would be.
Can you say that if you're talking about 25, 20, 25, 26?
No, I'm talking about like, you know, how much we would have given them this year. If we were to make that up, I think I calculated, it was like four or five million dollars or something like that, to make up the difference between what they would.
About 24 and 25 right now.
Yeah.
Before we finish out this.
This school year, yeah. And it was, I think they were going to get like 11 million if we would have done it proportionally, and then they got, whatever it was, their PICO money.
Yeah, we'd have to run that.
And it was something like, we would owe them four or five million dollars this year, and it would go up a little bit every year. But that's about what it would look like, maybe five million dollars next year, six million dollars the year after that, to make them whole up until the referendum were to be renewed. And at that point, we would put the language in, because we're required by law that the charter schools get it. And we could, that way they would be whole up until the renewal of the next referendum. That was a thought.
Okay, so, again, working on, understanding all of this. I understand where Mr. Tatum is coming from, right there with that. So, correct me please, if I am incorrect here. Now, if we did the 24, 25 year, that would be a month, right? Wouldn't this start in July?
If he's wanting to do this year right now, we've got the month of June.
Just, yeah, just the month of June.
Correct, because June 30th is done.
Yeah, okay. That was the first thing, I just want to make sure I'm on the right calendar.
He says this year, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So then my question goes back to the one I asked earlier. And this is for Mr. Rinaldi. Where would we be in projects that are priorities? That we're planning for the 25, 26 year? Are we still able to cover those? If we start per, and this is for both of the options in 1A from Mr. Cho, that the full, the full amount? Or if we, pardon me, 1A and, or 1 and 2, 1 and 2, there we go. If we start with the full amount of the percent for them, or if we start at 60%? How would we be able to, are we going to be able to fund this year's projects if we start, this coming year's projects if we start in 25, 26?
Well, dollar-wise, so we're looking at 9.3 million, less the 7.1. Is that what you're calculating there, Rachel?
So that was the item in 26, 27, the 9.3 million?
So that would be 2.2 million for. The numbers are probably pretty close for 25, 26. So.
Yeah, that would be.
Probably looking at right around 2 million. Adjusting some things to free up the 2 million for that. If I, is that, I'm making the assumption, because all we have is 26, 27 years. 25, 26 is probably pretty close, and it's probably going to match. So that would be the difference between 9.3 and 7.1 million. So 2.2 would be what we would do for 25, 26. That, we can, we're early enough in the budget, we can work that in.
For 25, 26.
For 25, 26, yeah. We're early, you know, we can, yeah.
So, so then that takes me to the second half of, will we still be able to take care of the projects that need to get done in 24, 26?
If it's only at the 2.2 million, yeah.
So, Ms. Sellers, what is, I'm looking for, off the top of your head, do you know this? The 0.5 cent sales surtax brings in approximately how much money on an annual basis?
54 million.
It's on, I probably.
It's on page 12 of the surtax.
Yeah.
Okay, 50.
For 24, 25, it was 53, 756, 65.
Right.
300,000 interest, really just 53.
And the charter school students are 22%, did we decide?
20%.
Okay, so, 0.2.
Close to 21.
Okay, so 0.2 times 55 million.
20% of that is like, close to 9 million.
So it's, I come up with 11 million, right? If they're 20%, if they're 20% of our students and it's 55 million, that means if they got their proportional amount of money, it would be about, but maybe, I don't know where this number came from. But then if they're getting, if you go to the top of this chart here on the left, where it says PICO money, I think they got like 6.5 million this year.
6.2, that was the budget?
Yeah, about 6.5 million in PICO money. And so my point then is, we would owe them 4.5 million this year. And then we would just keep making up that difference every year, or whatever it is, between what they would get if they were getting all their money. It's basically what they should get as part of, as their proportional part of the sales tax, minus their PICO allocation. That's what I'm proposing, that way it makes them whole. That way, it is as if they were getting all of their.
Well, it theoretically doesn't make them whole.
Doesn't make them whole, okay.
Because they're so, so let, so I agree, so I see what you're saying. So there was 6.5 million is what they got in PICO, that's on page, so I'll tell you where I made the numbers. On our capital project. No, slide three, under revenues. PICO charter school capital outlay, 6.7 million, right? So the 6.7 million is what they got from PICO. So if you're saying, they should be owed roughly 9.3 million, 9.5 million, whatever, whatever that number is of kids, somewhere around that range, you're subtracting that minus the PICO to make, theoretically though, to make them whole, we've got to give them 9 million. We, so, if we're going to share the surtax with them completely based on their kids, we've got to give them in 26, 27, 9.3 million, which is probably roughly the same now, it'd be 8, 8, 8 maybe, I don't know, whatever. Whatever the student allocation is. So that's what they're owed, if they're owed that, I'm just going to use 9 million, so 9 million. The only way to make them whole is giving them that 9 million. If we only give them 3 to match their PICO to 9, they're still minus 6 million. So the only way we make them whole, theoretically whole, is giving them the full proportion. We're going to have to do this in 2032, like, my chart, the one that's up here, like, it shows, 2032, we're going to have to give them 13, well, you know, we hypothetically put it out there. Somewhere between 13 to 15 million in 2032 is going to have to go to them. Plus the PICO, plus the millage, right? So really, the only way to make them whole is to give them all of it. Now, if you want to say, hey, let's give, in that chart, on this chart on the screen, the light blue down at the bottom, like, the 9, the 9.3 million, be giving them whole. Option 2B is giving them like 60%. So what you're, in your, for you, if you're like, hey, let's give them like 3 million, that's really like 40%, which I'm, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but to make them whole would be give them everything that, from the surtax, that is per child, would be making them whole, which is 9.3 roughly, you know. We don't have the exact numbers, because we don't know the exact kids. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Well, it depends on how you're defining, what the word whole means. To me, whole means, they should be getting about 11 million dollars if they got their proportional share. But they're already getting 6.5 or so million in PICO. So to me, making them whole means making up the difference between PICO and the 11 million they should be getting, if they were just getting their proportional share of the sales tax. And that helps with the problem that Ms. Bray was talking about, about not double dipping. Because if they, if we give them all their money, that they should be getting proportionally, and they get PICO money, then they're getting their, the same amount of money proportion that we're getting. Plus they get PICO money that we, in theory, are not getting, even though I know we have some allocations from the state. But I'm just trying to make up the difference between, here's their PICO money, and here's what they should be getting from the sales tax, if they were getting their proportional value, and so we'll just have to make that up. It comes up to four or five million dollars a year over the next four or five years until they get to 2032.
Yeah, well, just one real quick, so, I don't think. My thought process is, this surtax is a completely different bucket. These buckets are not intermingling, because the bottom line is, the only thing we choose currently is the surtax, right? Because we have, we don't get any of the PICO. The state says, this 6.7 for 24, 25, that went straight to the charters anyways. I know we're not getting any PICO, but I think our decision has to be made, like, what are we doing with this ballot special money? We know with the one mill, we've got to give to the charters. The PICO goes. We know we've got with the 1.5 mil from the state, we've got to give 40%, 60, 80, until they're 100 for the rest of eternity, or whatever. Or, so, I think we've got to decide, which I'm, if that's your opinion, to say, hey, let's give them percentage, and then make them go from there. But I don't think it's a, what they should have gotten based on PICO, et cetera. I think that, I think those are two different buckets. But if you're saying, hey, 9.3 million may be too much of the elephant to bite off, right? So let's give them 30%, 40, 50, 60, until we work our way up. That's kind of what like that bottom part of that chart says, is let's give them percentages, just like the state allowed us to do with 1.5 mil, right? They didn't say, from the jump, you know, school districts, you've got to give 100% of the 1.5 mil. They allowed us to go 40, 60, 80, and glide it up to where it's 127, 28. Because that would have been a hard pill to swallow, right? Because you were never prepared for it. So whether it's right or wrong, we were not, our staff is not prepared, in my opinion, to take a 9 million. We want to do that, and we, as a board, have to sit here and pick out what schools don't get what, and not allow them to do that, we got to take that brunt of it, which I'm okay with, we've got broad shoulders, whatever. But we've got to sit here and say, so-and-so school, you're not getting your refurbishment, or whatever, right? But I think making them whole, the reality is, the only way we truly make them whole is giving them their proportion of the surtax. And I'm not saying we have to do that, I'm just, I don't really know.
Because I was trying to address the problem that Ms. Bray was going to have an issue of the double dipping, and how to avoid the double dipping, but in your opinion, the double dipping.
There is no, there is no, there is no double dipping.
I'm not speaking for you, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, there is no double dipping, because.
It's different buckets.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm at now, because I see.
They're going to get this in 2032 regardless, they're going to get this, 30th test, plus the PICO, plus the 1.5 million. Now, hey, maybe we can all, like I told you, collaborate, maybe we can all collaborate, and tell the legislature that there's not a money, especially in a growing area like this, not enough money to go around. Take that 1.5 mil and bring it up to like it was 10 years ago, 15 years ago. But, yeah, I think the only way to really truly make them whole is to get, or, if we're going to sit here and say they don't get it, then that's another way to make it whole, or we say we're going to gradually get it. I mean, there's options here, but I don't think you can, I use it as a completely different bucket. Just like our millage bucket, for us, that one point, you know, the one mill, is completely different from everything else too, you know what I mean? So I, but I do get your point of like, maybe gradually gliding it up through the years. You know, that's a good, that's a good suggestion, for sure.
I would put 4 million in the first year box. I would go with option 2B and glide it up, and give them, if it's going to be 5.6 million, whatever, that's going to be 4.5 million this year. So call it 50% for 25, well, maybe this year, next year, 50%, and then just glide it up. So call it fifty percent for twenty-five, well, maybe this year, next year, fifty percent, and then just glide it up.
The two B.
From there, yeah, like fif, maybe fifty percent, when I say this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, fifty percent, and twenty-five, twenty-six, and then just glide it up for there.
Sixty, eighty, and then a hundred.
And that's, that's, that's a compromise, so that we don't blow a, a big hole in our, in our capital budget. But at the same time, we, we are showing a good faith effort to ensure that we're gliding up to it, just like we're doing with the one point five mil capital tax.
Yeah.
I've babbled a lot, so Mr. Kennedy, we were just dialoguing.
No, it's like, no, it's fine, it's fine. It's really interesting, and, and, um, uh, Mr. Tatum, I appreciate what you're trying to do, you're trying to find a middle ground. And that's always, always important. And then Chad took the words out of my mouth. To me, this is not, and Mrs. Spray, I think now agrees, like, this is two totally separate streams of revenue, two totally different places. So I like what you're trying to do, but I, I don't like the intermingling to get to a final point. I think, I'm, maybe I'm going farthest out on the limb, I think because of some of the things we heard, pardon me, at public comment, like, um, building trust back, because we are gonna need the charter community's help to renew this in November of twenty thirty-two, I guess. And then we're also gonna need the charter community's help to renew the one mil in three more years, three and a half more years. So I think that's an important factor that it's worked, it's not, it's not even about the money, it's about, to Chad's point, like, we want to all come together, these are all our kids, this is all our community together. And I think it's important to, to, for us to take action to express that, we want to, um, be equitable, just like we are with the one mil, I think we want to treat this pot of money the same way. Chad, I appreciate you earlier, Chad actually did the hard work of saying, here's an idea for where we could find some savings. I threw out a couple of projects, and I didn't talk about where, what should, what should be taken out to pay for my ideas. So Chad took it a step further, and I appreciate that. But for, yeah, oh yeah, of course, no, we, but like you said, we gotta, we gotta make decisions and take the slings and arrows, and we should. But for me, I, I believe we should, um, for the twenty, for the year that fiscal year we are in, which is about to end, at the end of June, um, I think we should make, I think we should, I don't say stick to our word, because it's not like this money was ever promised, but I think we should stick to the spirit of being equitable and sharing this equally, so I, I believe when this comes to a, a motion, hopefully at the next meeting or a meeting in June, so we can get it on the books for this year, is we should calculate, uh, right, well, I did calculate, for twenty-four, twenty-five, on our, on page twelve, fifty-three point seven million, assuming twenty percent, uh, of our students are in charters, that's ten point seven million, we should be sharing with them. Not that we're required to, but I, I personally think just, um, I don't want to say morally, because that's maybe too strong, but just in the interests of fairness to those kids, um, and the spirit of what we do with the one mil, I think we should share that ten point seven million. And yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna punch a little hole, but maybe we can draw some from the, from the capital reserve. Maybe we can do something like, okay, let's just look at all these projects and let's cut each project by one percent. Everything on this list, cut it by one percent, and then you get some savings there. I, I didn't have this part of my decision fleshed out, but I'm, I'm, I'm taking a little more, um, I like your compromise idea, but I'm still on the other side of, to the benefit of, um, sharing equally.
Well, I think that doesn't have to be, you pointed like to page twelve.
Yeah.
Like, the projects don't have to be just on page twelve, right, like?
Oh, absolutely, anywhere in the capital budget, yeah, and, and I, that, I, Chad, that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I keep calling you by your first name. On page twelve, this is the, um, this is our five-year capital plan specific to the half-cent sales tax. But Ms. Sellers, when this revenue comes in, the, the half-cent comes in just to our capital budget, it's not, um, it all comes into the same capital budget, it's not like this.
Right, and then we distribute it out to the, we, we get the revenue, and then we distribute it out to how it's gonna get applied to the projects.
And provide those projects adhered to the ballot language as.
Oh, yes.
Which, um, any capital project, pretty much in the district, would, would apply to that.
Yes.
So anyway, I'm sorry to cut you off, Chad.
No, you're good. Are you, were you finished?
I'm done.
Okay, so, then Ms. Ray.
All right, so, um, at, I, blah, I have a lot going on in my head.
That's a lot.
There's a lot, there's a lot going on in my head. Um, I know that there is a public perception that Mrs. Felton doesn't like charter schools, that's not true. That, that's not true. I, I keep getting people telling me that I don't like charter schools, that's, that's why I'm saying that. That's not true. Um, I, I have been to MSA and seen productions there, I've, you know, they're fabulous, by the way. I love the productions at MSA. And, and it's, and I agree, we, we need to be more collaborative. I think that would be awesome. Uh, I mean, when you go to some of the competitions that we have in the district, charter schools come to those as well, so, and, and I think that, and I don't like to view it as competition either. I don't, I don't see it charter schools versus public schools. Um, when you look at what's happening particularly in terms of vouchers, I think we're on the same side.
True.
We are on the same side, I, I, um, we're, we are all losing funding because of the voucher programs. Um, I actually, and you'll see it next week, gave an interview today with local media about the ACE, IB, AP, et cetera, CTE funding, in which some of the charter schools receive. Um, and that's gonna be cut in half for them, too. And, and I did also speak a little bit about the, the, the Department of Ed funds and Title One and, and those things, which they also receive. And so we are all losing funds through, through the, the different budgets that are floating around in the government. So I, I think we do need to stick together on this, this is, this is not, uh, an us and them, all right? And I am not opposed, well, some people probably thought I am, I am not opposed to sharing funds, I'm not. I fear for our projects that need to get done. All right? You know, we can look at and say that, oh, well, you know, if we, if we do the whole nine point three now, what school, and I, again, I'm thinking of our Title Ones, are we gonna have to tell them, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to be in a moldy building another year or two? Or this isn't gonna be able to get fixed, you're gonna have, still have AC problems, um, you're still gonna have leaks, and, and that concerns me. Because everybody deserves to go to a school where they're comfortable, where it's healthy, um, and all of that. So, to Mr. Rinaldi, if we do the suggested starting in this coming year, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, that, that was key, because I heard twenty-four, twenty-five, and we're trying to close the books on twenty-four.
Yeah, it's, it's one month.
Did you, you, you mean twenty-five?
I, I meant to say that, I meant to say, I think we should make them whole.
Twenty-five, twenty-six?
Make them whole in the sense that Mr. Cho was talking about, in this current school year.
He's saying right now, twenty-four.
I'm saying in this financial year, I'm, that's what I mean, I'm taking.
The next thirty days.
I, I know I'm the radical up here.
Okay, that, that.
Okay, you're freaking out the staff. But if I can, if I can finish.
I'm probably not gonna carry the day, but that was what I was talking about to answer your question.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't advocate for that in the last month, as, as we are trying to close out the books, that's, I think that's gonna kill the staff, and, 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 and former Sellers' head is gonna start spinning around. And I, I don't want to do that to our staff, they work really hard and they've got a lot going on, and we're also under audit right now, and, and there's a lot going on for four weeks. So looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six year, if we take the fifty percent option rather than starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven, versus taking the full nine, what is that going to do to the projects that need to get done? That, again, I, I am not opposed to sharing, I, but I want to make sure.
They're giving them like five million, basically, four point eight million.
Yeah. What is that gonna do to the projects that need to get done? I, I don't want to neglect the schools that we are financially responsible for, and the kids that we are responsibly, financially responsible for. Because, because we're not financially responsible for them, they have their own, they get their money, um, they, they have their own boards, and, and our board is not responsible for those, officially responsible for those children, I think you know what I mean, when I say that, officially responsible for those children, um, and those schools. So I want to make sure that the ones that we have to require by law take care of fully, that those projects are gonna still be able to go, because, you know, again, I don't want to have any, have to tell a, a third grader that I'm sorry, you're gonna keep having roof leaks. So, yeah, so that's my question, Mr. Rinaldi.
It's a tough question.
I know.
I mean, I mean.
I know.
Well, because when I'm going through the, the, the list, they're, they're all, as I say, committed projects, um, you can't take it from Barbara K, because that's, that's, that's already committed.
Are you looking just on page twelve, though, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going down page, and the only thing would be, um, tell Rachel she can't pay her debt service.
No, we got, we gotta pay our credit card bill.
Can I ask a math, can I ask a math question here real quick? So, we're gonna try some math here, so if you go to page on this, this preliminary five-year capital plan, and you go to page ten, and you see the reserves at the bottom, fund balance ending, that was the capital reserves that we had talked about earlier. And then if you take the chart that we're proposing, you know, options for the charter schools, so if you took the last line, which is the ending fund balance, and you just, let's say you took option two A, sales tax, the first line, and you just subtracted that amount of money, nine point three million, from the, from the year twenty-six, twenty-seven, would it be fair to say if you just took that line and subtracted it each year off of the ending fund balance, that would be what the new fund balance would be if you just subtracted that money out? Understand, anybody understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
Oddly, I think I do, too.
So why doesn't that work if we have?
We may need to move some funding around in order to make that work, to make sure it's sales tax money that goes out, rather than one point five mil, but it.
So the, the reason I'm bringing this up is we're, and I, I mentioned it, I said, well, we're gonna blow a, a hole in the capital budget, but if we have tens of millions of dollars, whether it's, this year it's three hundred ninety-eight million, and I understand, Ms. Sellers, that's committed, we have to pay for schools and stuff, but the point is, is that we have seventy-one million in the twenty-five, twenty-six year as an ending balance, we have forty-three in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, we have seventy in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year, we have, you can read it across, just like me, we have extra money, right, we could, we could probably pull nine million dollars out of there, and then it would be those numbers minus nine million. And so then I bring that up, because I say, well, why would we even have to cut any projects if we have a reserve in the capital budget, why would we have to cut anything if we've got tens of millions of dollars in reserve? Why would we have to cut anything, why can't we?
Just, just doing it here, like, the forty-one million dollars, half of that could be impact fees, we, so, you're down to twenty million dollars.
So you really can't.
Then the other half would be something that, that is, is restricted and.
Because of buckets of money.
We've got to break down.
The three hundred ninety-eight is a whole bunch of different funds that's not just the sales tax.
Yeah, it's everything that's in that.
So if that's true, then that, that's my concern about, I mean, Mr. Kennedy, you, you've been on the board a long, long time, right? I mean, you have a lot of experience, but when you say, you made a comment, it's not about the money, it has to be about the money, right? We just, we can't just say.
It's not just about the money.
Yeah, but we, yeah, okay, I'm just making the point, we can't just say it's the morally, and we could say that, it's the morally right thing to do, give them all that they deserve, so to speak, but if it's, if we literally can't, as Ms. Felton says, keep up our schools in, in the way that we're supposed to, and then the charter schools may say, well, we can't keep ours up in this, you know, I don't know, I mean, you see what I'm saying, it has to be about them, it's not just a philosophical discussion, it has to be a business decision, too. Yeah, go ahead, we're dialoguing, that's fine.
May I, um, you know, you're absolutely right, and if I, if I misstated that, I didn't mean to say that, we all know money, money is no object, that does not exist, a public agency, of course. Um, and I thought you were coming with me there, because you were talking about, can't we squeeze a little bit out of the, out of the capital fund balance?
I was hoping if they were, if they, I didn't mean to cut you off, but if, if the ending fund balances are so big, I was like, sure, fine.
But some of those are the ones that can't go to different contracts, yeah.
You can't use it because impact fees can have use when you're constructing.
And that's, that's the next thing I want to get to with that, with that statement, could we, with Mr. Rinaldi bringing up impact fees, could we take a sliver out of reserves to, um, to make them whole in the definition of like, PICO or no PICO, if we're gonna share equitably, that's what I mean by making whole, okay? Could we use impact fees, for example, for a charter school that is in, in an area?
No, impact fees can only be used for new schools, so I'm gonna introduce you guys.
Even if the, even if the charter school is brand new?
Well, if we're not building the charter school.
I'm not quite sure you can share impact fees, you know how you guys were talking about not mixing funds? I think that would be a different place, I would do want to introduce you guys to the district's capital accountant, this is Janet Klausie.
Hello, Janet.
Hi. And so, um, I think a, a big piece is when you're looking at the ending fund balance, out of that ending fund balance, since we had the revenue of fifty-three, what out of that is related to sales tax? If you're trying to keep within that particular, all of their different funds, because that's what we're talking about.
So we really need to look at what's in each bucket before you start, you know, cutting, you have to move something from the sales tax to.
Excuse me, real quick, um, can you turn the mic toward me?
Mic, yeah. That, that's what I was gonna say, too.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so.
Oh, better.
You would, you would need to move, you know, move your projects around, move, you know, if you're gonna cut something from sales tax, you'll need to budget it with LCI funds, or, um, and impact fees, that's our most restrictive fund. Can only use for new buildings, student stations.
So really, we'd have to go into anything that is not allocated.
Not restricted.
And not restricted.
Correct.
Yeah, like, if we took out X amount of million from this sales surtax, let's just hypothetically say it's Lake Manatee construction, I, I'm not saying I want to do that, because everyone's like, oh my gosh, that's committed. But that nine million to finish that Lake Manatee would have to come from somewhere else.
I know, yeah.
You know, whether we pull it from one point five mil, or impact fees, or whatever. And, and I don't, I'm gonna give Ms. Ray a second here, because she's the only one that's not, kind of given any kind of opinion whatsoever. I just, I don't know if we're gonna finish, like, where this money comes from in the buckets and things like that today. But I want to leave here today with some kind of, like, we want the board, or we want, we want to do something, and, and, you know, whether it's the fifty, whether it's all of it, whatever, in the years, like, we gotta figure that portion out. I don't think we're gonna be able to dive into where we're pulling, you know, money, money from the buckets yet, because they've got to have time to be able, I mean, that's awful to ask that, so, but Ms. Ray, I want to see, tell your overall thoughts and where you're at.
Well, on page twelve of the surtax.
Okay.
That top line is total revenue. So you can see the fifty-three, the fifty-four million, the fifty-six million, so that's where you're, this is the bucket we're talking about.
Sure.
So if you look at page ten of the other one, you can't compare the two, because this is everything collected in capital, this is just the surtax. Okay, so, first of all, any portion that charters are getting, my number one thing is accountability. And if you get it from your taxpayers, you need to be accountable to your taxpayers. And that means hundred percent transparency, that's my number one thing. Number two is, I've never been a big fan of charter versus public, never have. Because we're in the world of school choice all over the place, not just in Manatee County, it's in every state. People want options, and that's what charters give our population. Give them the option, they don't have to go to our, to Ms. Felton's point, we have a program, the IB, we have the ACEs, we have all of these other programs, charters can't provide those, but we can. So if your student wants that, go to our school. If you're into something else that a charter, uh, offers, go to that charter. Uh, but students are students to me. So as far as, uh, proportionate share. go to that charter. But students are students to me. So as far as proportionate share, I would like to see us do the option 2A down here that we're at here. The 2526, you didn't have any dollar amount in there. That's the next year.
That's this coming, like July, starting in July?
Right, starting in July. I would like to see that being the 50%, and then going up to the 60s, 80, the 100, 100, 100. So that wasn't an option on here. I don't know why, but it wasn't plugged in.
Well, it's because we were presenting the.
Right, today, right.
So that's.
So to me.
So the total was 8.8 for that year.
It's 8.8? Okay.
For 2526?
Yeah.
So it'd be half of that, 50% of 8.8?
Um.
Which would be four.
Right. I don't think that we can.
I was gonna glide from there.
Right. I, I don't think we can chunk out 10.7 million for 2425. That's just not fine. We've already committed our dollars, just like Mr. Kennedy was saying. But I do believe, starting next year, we need to slice that in there, not the 10 point, whatever, what, 8.8 mil is what it would be?
50% of that.
Right, right, okay.
So what's the slide you guys are recommending?
I'm looking at this one.
We're looking at the one that we created.
Right.
And then we're saying in 2526.
Okay.
We're told it was 8.8 total.
Right.
Would be matching them total, but option 2B would be 50%, which is 4.4.
4.4.
Ms. Bray is talking about doing 2B, but instead of starting it in 2627, start it with 50%.
At 24, right, 2526. That's what I'm saying.
And then would you be 60% still on 2627 and then 80?
And, and path it up as same as we are doing with the.
The rest.
Capital mil.
The capital, right, 1.5.
Gotcha.
Because to me, that makes more, and the reason I'm saying that is because we've already committed to so many projects with growth. If we didn't have all of this growth, I'd be all in for you getting your 2425 allocation. But we have so much growth that we have to accommodate for. So that's why I'm recommending that 2526 dollar amount be thrown in there. You, you're working on the budget now, you can stick it in now, it's easy to do, and you're not pulling from a project. That's the way I look at it.
I mean, we are, we are.
And I can't see our, I can't see our building department or construction putting off a project that had leaky roofs or any, I don't think a charter would want us to do that. Fix, fix our schools, but not yours, I don't think. And I also want to say, building that, pardon ship, because that's what we need to get to with charters. I've been to Palmetto Parish, Ola, I've been to several charters, the one, and in my district, there's probably, there's more, Mr. Steve back there is shaking his head, there's more charters in my district than any other. And, and that's what I, you know, I gotta advocate for my district, you know, but I also have seen how cost effective that Parish can build a building. So I would be supportive of throwing that dollar amount into the 2526 school year.
Okay, so we've got that option, right?
80, 90?
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
What was your name again, ma'am?
Janet Klausie.
So let's say we, we wanted to do 4. something in the low, 4.2 million or something, half of whatever they should have gotten this year. How, how would that affect the capital fund ending val, I can't wait for it, that's the question, could we afford something like that?
We would probably need to shift something around if we didn't have availability in that surtax from something else in a different, with allowances, we'd have to look at each of the construction to be able to.
But, but overall, when I go back to the original discussion where we're looking at the fund balance and we saw 43 million dollars, over five years, that is 45 million. So it's, it, it, it's balanceable. And, and I think we, we can work that, so it's in that 45 million range for the five-year plan we're working on now.
To do.
To do the 50%, 60.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we afford it for this year though? Could we afford to give them their 50% this year?
Yeah, yes.
When you say this year.
No, no, you could say this year.
No, no, no.
Yeah, the year we're in.
Because they're not thinking about this year.
No, no.
We were thinking 2526.
We've only got.
Well, I'm just asking. I mean, can we afford it? I mean, if the, if the idea is they should get, you know, we want to get, we want to give them some of their money, I don't know. I'm just asking if we can afford it. If we can afford 4.5 million this year and if we, can we afford it or not? What is, what does our capital fund ending balance look like? Is it, does it take it from 50 million to 46 million if we give them 4. million? Or does it take it from like 10 to 4? Now we're, you know, we're, you know, if we've got 40 or 50 million dollars sitting at the end in our.
Gotta go back to the sales tax bucket.
Yeah. Well, but she said we can move some of that around.
Well, yeah, we would.
We could move some of that.
So the way we have it, we have it by fund, fund balance. 70 million is the total for 2526 ending fund balance as we made it. So of that, I, we've got it broken out by fund, 34 million in LCI, but then in year four, there's only 1.6 million in LCI.
I don't know what LCI means, ma'am, I'm sorry.
The local capital. The 1.5.
The 1.5.
And the 1.5.
Local capital movement. So if you take the four from that year, you're short in year four. So you need to spend a little time and see where you can cut it.
But we're not taking it from that fund, we'd be taking it from this.
Right.
Sales tax fund, right?
The same thing with sales tax. There's, you know, there's 18 in sales tax, but next year, there's only 812,000 balance, the way we have the projects budgeted.
Because it's not been spoken for in projects.
So if you take it from that year, then you're short. The next year, you need to move.
You can move money around though.
Yeah.
The question is, can we afford it? That, I mean, you, you're, you're the ladies who know how to move money around. My question is, can we afford it? But maybe that's putting you on the spot to answer that question at this moment. If we wanted to give them 4 million dollars or so this year, can we afford it?
I'd say we can.
I mean, I, I, I don't want to put you on the spot like that, but I will say this, I think we can afford whatever, it's just what's not gonna get done.
Yeah.
I mean, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I think we can do it.
Without doing a bunch of.
It's just, we've gotta stop something that's on a project.
Yeah.
That's why I think, I think this, I think it's, for this year right now, it may, I, I, you know, I said this, I said this three weeks ago, I think it's too, too much for this year, 2425. I think 2526 is doable. I mean, we're in the middle, we're, we're finishing out what we're planning for, you know, we haven't passed the capital budget yet. So I think for 2526, we, we just saw it, the first kind of, you know, here's where we're beginning, 2526. So I think that's absolutely obviously doable. You add the, the half of it in there, we figure out what's not gonna get done, what's gonna get pushed back, whatever, and go from there. I think it'd be extremely difficult to do now though. That's just, that's me.
I, I agree with that.
Um.
Putting something in the 2526, 50% in 2526.
That's who we were talking about, yeah.
That's what I was recommending.
I'll go with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with, with looking at that. I, I would say this, so it seems like there's a consensus of next year, 2526, 50% of what the sales tax would have been. So if we can let, we'll give that to you all, you'll have to give us answers now. We'll give that to you all. Laura, if you can pass that over once you get your totals together, obviously then you're gonna have to, to go back and look at the 2526 budget, right? The five-year capital plan changes, right, of course?
Yep.
You know, if we'd have been doing this, it'd have been different anyways as well, right? But that way, that way they can work on it, they can do the math, and we're not sitting here asking them for millions and millions of dollars changes on the fly. I think though, you, we've got a idea of where we want to be, 50% next year of that, and then 60, 80, 100.
That's great.
By 28, 28, 29.
60, 80.
Um, that, that option 2B down there. So if we can just get the numbers out to us before our board briefings, so that we can put that on the June 10th.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully, because if you look at the 2526 projected capital fund ending balance, it's 71.6 million dollars. Hopefully, we can move money around and we don't have to cut anything.
Sure.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, move a couple of years back or whatever.
Right. That we can move some between different types of funding, money, capital, impact fees, and we can move it around. We won't have to cut anything because we do have, we do have 71.687 million dollars doesn't end the fund balance. Hopefully we'll, but if we do, we do, but that's a lot of money. Hopefully, we can move it around in the buckets that we need, so we don't have to cut anything. And we still take care of your concerns about not having schools with leaky roofs and air conditioning systems that don't work, but go ahead.
Just, you know, and, but I, I hesitate to, to look at our ending fund balance because so much of that is already earmarked for other things. You know, that, that, that chunk of money, it's, it's like when you do your own, your own budget, you can't say, well, I'm gonna take, you know, a big chunk of this and go do this thing over here because you still have to pay for your groceries, that's already earmarked, you have to pay your car payment, you gotta pay your, you know, those things are already set. You cannot wiggle those. Because it's, it's the robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to do.
So they're gonna have to, you know, figure that out, but, but I, but I hesitate to just look at that chunk of money. So that, that's what I'm cautioning you is, look at that chunk of money and say, we've got so much money here. But remember, we still have to pay our mortgage, our car payment, and all these other things, those things are already set.
Well, that's why I said hopefully.
Yeah.
We can move some money around within the different buckets of money so that we don't have to cut anything, cut anything. But hopefully is hopeful. I don't want to have to sit here and go, that one, that one below the line, hopefully. We'll see. Once they run the numbers, we'll see. Yeah, thank you.
Any other board members? Comments?
I just have one thing.
Yeah.
I know there are people in this room who are not happy with 50%. But again, we have to be fiscally responsible for the projects that we already have. We have to take care of things that we are required by law to do. And when you look at, again, the SREF and all the things that were required to follow, the statutes that we have to follow, that all has to be taken into account. I wish we didn't have to follow all of those. Please contact your legislators and fight with them because they're not listening to us. But, you know, we're, we are making an effort. Please understand that we are making an effort. We're not saying no. And so we have to, we have to do a balance. And that was it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. It was a lot for, from you guys to present and get all the, the plans ready. So thank you very much. Look forward to the next capital budget workshop meeting where we discuss changes and things like that. So appreciate it. Board, it is 3 o'clock. We obviously have one more item.
Can we eat lunch?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can, can we have a working lunch?
Yeah, I'm definitely, I definitely want a break, but I'm asking, does it need to be 30 minutes?
No.
Guys, can we go get our food and then come back?
Go get the food.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with a working lunch.
So let's go, let's say like 15, 20 minutes?
Yeah.
So 3 o'clock, let's say 3:15, we're back here, we start by 3:20 somewhere.
Right.
All, all good.
All right. We're in recess. We're in recess.[175.36]
All right, welcome back. If you hear any crunching or swallowing that's just up here, oh, any one of us. So excuse us, public. All right, so Board, we've got one more item today. And that's the board discussion regarding superintendent search. So, you know, obviously, several years ago, we did one of these. I just kind of want to get everybody's thoughts on what their ideas are. Obviously, we've had a couple of days here to digest, so I wanted to see what other board members' ideas are. I will, I will tell you mine. Just kind of real briefly. I don't, I don't think we need to do a, some long national search, to be honest with you. I think that, that putting some advertising, you know, out with FSBA and some of the ones we did last year, or last time, to put the, the job description out there. I think especially people who are seeking this are going to see that it's there. It wasn't a secret. So, I really think that, from a, from a standpoint of how we go about it, I don't, I don't think we need to hire a consultant agency like we did last time. I think we can put our own job description onto some of those websites, and obviously, Mr. Chapman was, was heavily a part of that last time, and so can help with arranging some of the scheduling and things like that that we did, you know, from, you know, last time. I guess from a board standpoint, I'd like to see what y'all's thoughts are. Do we want to use a consultant or not? Do we want to have that what's timeframe, you know, moving forward? How quickly do we want someone in? When do we want to put up officially, hey, we're looking for someone now, you know? I would, I would say we do that as soon as possible. You know, my quick timeline, just kind of thinking about it, would be like, June 1, it's up for two weeks. Mid-June, we, we get our list of, here's our, how many people applied? We go through them, pick our, our top ones, you know, like we did before, and bring them in to interview, and, and go from there. I, I really think that, that we've got probably people here in our own district that are probably ready. I think there'd be some people from other districts potentially, obviously, that, that see this county as a great county and a great district, and financially solvent, and we're going in a good direction, so. But I just want to get everybody's opinion on, on, one, do we want to use a consultant firm? I think that's big, number one. Scheduling, what's your thoughts on, on scheduling? And then, and scheduling, by I mean, when do we open it up? When do we close it? And then we go from there. So, thoughts?
Okay. Obviously, I have not gone through this before. I just watched it on TV. So, I am gonna have to defer to, you know, generally speaking, the rest of the board, Mr. Chapman, as to how we go forward. I do have one ask. I would ask that whenever, whenever the new person, whoever they may be, is in place, that we do master board. I want to make sure that we have a complete understanding of what we want from the superintendent, and what the superintendent wants from us. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna insist on this as much as I can, as one-fifth of this board, and we'll continue to nag you about it until we achieve it. So, just giving you the warning.
Sounds good. I agree with you. Ms. Breck?
I would not.
I'm just gonna go around.
All right. I don't think we need to do a consultant at all. I mean, our last agenda, we approved pretty good budget for advertising. Am I correct? We just?
Yes.
Use those avenues?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we need to go out beyond that. And I'll just come out and say, I don't mind doing master board. I'd like to see other options other than FSBA. I, that's just my, I don't know, Mr. Chapman, if there's other organizations out there that do?
Sure.
Does that kind of thing? But in my opinion, it's very misleading in some of their communications to whatever superintendent wants, you do it, kind of attitude, and I don't like that. So, two weeks, I think, is long enough to put it, put it out there. I would like to see the new superintendent in place by the beginning of August. So, that's a big ask, I'm sure. And then we gotta, of course, talk about range and all that kind of stuff.
Sure, sure.
Right. And the contract. Yeah, there was a lot of things that went on the first time around when I was here, that I wasn't too happy about, and I want 100% transparency. And not that it wasn't before, but just after the, the vote, that's when it started falling off the rail for me, a little bit, so.
Oh, like regards, like, the contract?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. There was, yeah.
I mean, it's definitely always gonna come back.
Outside of Florida was involved and everything else, it was just a lot.
Definitely gonna come back, obviously, to the board to approve, you know, any contract. And we're, by the way, we're finalizing the one for Mr. Chapman right now, for the interim, so that'll come back to everybody. We have a special meeting next week to finalize that. So, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Chad. I would, I'm gonna go slightly differently. I, I think we do need a consultant, whether it's FSBA.
Fads.
There's another firm out there, or fads, yeah, thank you. There's another firm, it doesn't matter. But I think we should, let me, let me start at the beginning. I think we should post the job this, this Monday, this coming Monday. Obviously, today, it's probably too late. I think we should post the job right away. The district, district staff can begin to collect the requirements that we will need from each candidate. And where I think the consultant comes in, is once we have closed it, it would take an incredible amount of staff resources to vet, to vet each candidate that comes in, and I think that's why we should, we should pay the expense of the consultant, because it's gonna fall on staff otherwise. And that's a lot to ask, when we're, all the things we have going on, and we're prepping for '25, '26. So, I think a consultant is actually really important, and it's money well spent, for just, just those reasons. Because it's a lot to do, information collection, and then that vetting process, I'm repeating. I think it should be open for, if we post it on Monday, the 26th, I think keeping it open for three weeks? If we did two weeks, that would be June 6th, or you want to keep it open till Sunday, the 8th, to, people can submit their documentation online? Maybe that's enough? We can, we can figure that out. If there's things we need to approve, we can do that next week. We've got a special meeting called for Mr. Chapman's interim contract. And then Florida versus National, I think I mentioned this the other night, but I think if we were to do, at least advertise nationally?
Sure.
You know, in the journals and trade publications and things like that, I think we should cast the net. But like I said the other night, you know, our three finalists two years ago were all Florida candidates. I think, in the, in the environment of Florida education, and Florida finance and law, education finance and law, having that Florida experience is crucial. I don't know if the board wants to, how we discuss, when we post it? Do we just say, hey, our superintendent is open, and just leave it that general? Or do we put in some bullet points with specific of what we're looking for? I might be getting ahead of myself here, but, but I think for the sake of the person who ends up in the job, because, you know, personally, I, I, I'll just say right away, like, I'm gonna prefer candidates who have Florida experience.
Sure.
And that's what I'm gonna be looking for. But I don't also want to limit it to somebody who may be out there, and is fantastic. And I think it will give credibility to the person whomever takes the job, to, that the search was, cast the wide net and not a narrow net, because I don't want that person to have to deal with any criticism of, well, you know, they did a narrow search, and it wasn't a real one, so.
Sure. I will say, just before I go to Mr. Tatum, Andrea Messina and I at FSBA, she did say, even Mr. Dye mentioned this too, like, they do like a abbreviated consulting deal, that's not so what we did before. And so maybe it can be a conversation, if we, I can get a conversation with her, we went kind of back and forth, phone tag. But I know that, that Mr. Dye just mentioned to me the same thing, that Dr. Bogle mentioned that to him too, that they do like an abbreviated. So, our last one went for like months, right? We had time, went for months. I don't think we, I don't think we had that time, and I don't think we really need that time. I thought they went kind of a little too long, to be honest with you. So, I will, I will ask, I will call, just to get that reference, we can obviously go to the other firms that we used before, like, we got like three, if I remember correctly, we got like two or three firms that we looked at to see who we wanted to use. Is that right, Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, they presented to the board.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we can always go back to those three and ask them, this is what we're looking for quicker, if, if that's, if people want to go that way, to use a consultant or not.
I think we should do the short consulting thing. And one of the main reasons why is I agree with your, the vetting process will fall on staff, and also someone who's been in this business a while made the point that you want to avoid the appearance of impropriety if you have any internal candidates. And so if you have internal candidates, and, and HR is the one who's vetting them, and it just could get a little messy.
Sure.
And, and that, so if you have an outside consulting firm that's doing that, that avoids that whole mess. And apparently, that person had seen that problem in other instances like this, and recommended at least a short consulting contract to avoid that potential problem. Ms. Felton, I agree with you that we should do some type of training together, because even, but I will say that, having been through master board training myself, it's, it's good for what it does. It's, but it's very much head stuff, as I mentioned the other day, and it's, it's not heart stuff. And so we even, you know, we sat down with, we all sat down together, the previous group, and came up with some ideas, and, and even then, apparently, it didn't quote-unquote work out, and I, and I believe that it was, there's just different training that we could do. And we could do both, right? We could do master board training, get master board certified, and still bring in like a leadership consulting training program that, that is more focused on the heart. And because, if you go through that training, you'll see it's a lot of processes, and where are the lines, and how are you gonna communicate? But unless you change the mindset and the heart, I know this sounds kind of philosophical, but having been in this world, that, that, MS, the master board training does not accomplish that heart training that maybe would, would help us all communicate a little better. I'll just throw that out there, too. And I like to see someone in place, I like to see 15 July, if it's possible.
Sure.
Kind of quick, but, you know, that way they can get their feet on the ground, and at least have some idea of what's going on before the beginning of school, but certainly, by 1 August, we'd want to have somebody in place, if at all possible.
I will, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add one more thing, too. I do want to make sure along, or, you know, with the board's approval, that we make sure, granted, we're gonna be on summer break, but I do hope we find an effective way to reach out to our employees, so they can provide, you know, once we've got our candidates in, and, because I know, I know folks are gonna, you know, folks are gonna go away for the summer, they're gonna forget about school, you know, for the school-based employees. But I would really want to make sure we find a way to message to our employees, hey, we've got some candidates, can you please take a look? Provide your input.
Sure.
Ultimately, it's our decision, but I think, I think that would be a crucial step, that would be missed if we did miss it.
Well, I, I think like last year, we, or like last time, we put a, on our website, we had a certain superintendent search like link, and it had all the, the people who applied and things like that. We should absolutely do that again, so that people can look at that and see, and then give us feedback from what they read and what they see. I think with Lex Chat, it's probably gonna be even easier to do that than it was before, because I don't even think, we didn't have that back then. And then, real quick, but then I want to mention something we got emailed, but, go ahead.
Okay. Excuse me. If, you know, again, this is all new. So, you know, if, if I understand the, the consulting and the idea of, of making sure we have full transparency, so I support that, that sounds good for the short time. Yeah, obviously, we don't want this to drag on and on and on. And also with, with making sure we have employee buy-in to this, and that they feel like they have a voice, because they should. And, so, yeah, anything that we can do to make sure that, you know, we can get some feedback, I think is really important, because they're gonna be working for that person.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that the website, I think that worked really well last time, and had people, you know, were able to comment and see on the website, from the, from the website, they were able to see the applicants, and go through everything that basically we did, I'm pretty sure. So, Laura just sent us some things that I'll double-check with, with Andrea, to see if this is something we can still use, like, hey, we did it last time, can we still use this? I mean, we could probably just, and if we don't use FSBA, we can obviously take them off. But the first one is the, that I've got up is qualifications, required qualifications, master's degree, 10 years' experience administrative leadership, doctorate, preferred qualifications, doctorate, experience in the school district 10K, experience as a teacher, school-based, and/or district-level administrator, and then a salary range, which I agree with that salary range, still, 195 to 270. So, that's one document. The second document that I've got open is another, is the, is the actual first one, I think, that was on the email. Says qualities. And so it shows the qualities of a, we were looking for, so 1 through 17. I would imagine they're probably the same qualities they were a couple of years ago, for me.
Yeah.
So, I would say, let's take a look at this, everybody take a look at these, these two, I think the qualifications, I don't know what else we would add to that. I think that's pretty much good. But the qualities portion, if you guys take a look at that, and maybe, not obviously right this second, but there's anything you want to add? We?
I mean, just like the first document that we looked at, qualifications, preferred qualifications, I mean, experience in, with school district with 10,000 students or more, I wouldn't be opposed to bumping that up to a whole lot more than 10,000. I mean, we have?
I don't mind, I don't mind saying 30 or whatever.
30, 40,000. I mean, we are over the 40,000 in our public, then you add in the charters, so.
Yeah, Chad, could we have the weekend to take a look at this?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then maybe?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Before we, okay, great.
Yeah, no, I was thinking, have the weekend, let's, let's put this, if, look at the qualities that we have here. I mean, obviously, we went through this, I mean, so last time, like, the consultants, that, you know, we went through all these things, and we marked them out, if you guys remember that? We went, we went and marked 1, 2, 3, you know, and all that kind of stuff, and they compiled these qualities up. And then obviously, the qualifications we did, and that was posted with the job that went out. So, that's what, I mean, for me personally, I don't think these are, are all gonna change for me, but absolutely, it's definitely take the weekend to see, you know, if there's any more that we want to add to this, that, that weren't on there originally from last If we want to bump the qualifications, you know, the, from 10 to 20,000 or 30,000, you know, district, I'm, I'm okay with that. And then the last one was a screening guide. That's that last, it's one of the last ones that is in there, and that one just kind of shows, like, the qualifications, it went through educational leadership experience. So, I think this was, I don't, I don't remember us using this.
I don't remember this one.
I don't really remember us using this one.
It was in my folder.
Do you, do you happen to see it? No? It was in the folder?
It was in the folder.
I don't, I don't happen to remember us, like?
I think this was just one that FSBA threw in there, but I don't think we actually utilized it, I think.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think that's.
Oh, yes, that's right.
This was for your own notes?
Yes, we're using it for our own notes to say applicant name, number, yes, 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 yes.
Right.
And we went through to say this is what they have. So, this was like our own guide of?
A worksheet. It was our own little worksheet.
But I think the qualities and the qualifications are good there. Obviously, there's, there's no work Monday, so it won't be Monday.
Oh, yeah, of course, Tuesday.
Yeah. So, it'd be, it'd be Tuesday. So, if y'all just take, we can shoot those things back to Laura, like, if there's anything you want to change with qualities, add, take away, or qualifications. If there's not, we can stick with it. I will get, I will call Andrea after this meeting, I'll call her to see, just as one consultant, if we can find the other couple that we used.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Laura to find the two other firms. I remember, yeah, it was a husband and wife team.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of the firms.
And then there was another firm.
Like Collier, somebody was using them down south, was using one firm. And then obviously FSBA.
HYA?
Yeah, HYA.
Mick Pearson and Jacobson.
There you go.
It was very expensive. I know, even with FSBA, it was just expensive, and I understand your point, you know, but...
I think if we got an abbreviated one, I think that, I mean, because they were, they were the ones taking care of, like, everyone's hotels coming down and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I don't even know if we're gonna need that, right?
Right.
And if we do, we need it, we just, I mean, we'll figure, I mean, I don't know. I, I just don't know if we need, go ahead, Ms. Chapman, with your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, just the, the, what we, going through this, and you're right, it was, it was a very lengthy process, right? It was very transparent, there was community meetings, there was rounds after rounds after rounds, I think there was finalists, semifinalists, quarterfinals, you know? And, and then you all spent an hour each with the candidate, you brought back points and all, you know, it was, it was a very, I mean, you went through a very thorough process. But obviously, FSBA managed that, right? John Reichardt and Andrea Messina managed every minute of that, and we posted a lot of it on, on our website, and everybody's cover letters, and video, remember, we did videos, and, and, I mean, it was, it was quite extensive. So, that will be very difficult, if not impossible, for us to be doing that, for one of the reasons Mr. Tatum said, but also just organizing all of that. Now, obviously, we're gonna work on website and make it as easy as possible. It would be helpful to have somebody who could help us in a very, like you're saying, in a, in a very, maybe, one idea could be, you know, they're in business, right? So, you'd think they'd want business, so we could say, we have a special meeting next Thursday, please send in a proposal for a 60, 45-day search process, and how you think it should be laid out in 45 days, and maybe that's what you then vote on next week, and then that way to Mr. Kennedy, it could be almost posted by Friday, or something, you know? If, if you approve something on Thursday, and, I mean, there's not many, I think Monroe County is done, I think, I mean, I don't think there's a county out there right now. So, there's, there's not much superintendent business, search business. So, I think, you'd think they would have a proposal, you know, I'm just offering ideas.
The board, I would say, I would say with your permission, let's go ahead and, and the ones we use, FSBA, HA, okay, perfect. So, using those, let's go ahead and send a, send a, an email out there, I can send it for myself, or Laura can do it, and say, we're looking for, for, I mean, I like 45 days.
Quick turnaround.
I like 45 days, meaning 45 days we're hiring, so that's July 15.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, you could always call a special meeting to hire, but we have board meetings. Yeah, 'cause, yeah, I mean, you could always call a special meeting to hire, but we have board meetings scheduled, we have workshops.
Six days, June, July, right?
Yeah, I mean, start of school is August 12th, right? And so you, like, someone, you know, but someone in by August 1st or before would probably be best, if that's possible, right? I mean, we don't know if someone's gotta give notice and move and, or, or what, you know, whatever the circumstances are, but, but, yeah, that's.
On the qualifications, then, you know, and I'm not opposed either to having somebody with Florida experience, I think that would be really helpful, so that would probably be something to add under qualifications, under the preferred, the preferred ones.
Preferred with Florida, Florida experience.
Florida experience. And then, but with regards to, you know, 40,000-plus students, a lot of the districts in Florida are really small. We may not find anybody with big district experience. So I'd, you know, 20 or 30 might be more doable for, for a number of students, rather than something closer to, to us, because if, if it's a, if it's a high number of students that we're looking for, that, this might be a step down for those, for those folks with that much experience and that many kids, so we need to, I think, be a little broader.
Yeah, no, I think, like, 20 or 30 is good. I don't think going as high as 40.
Thirty.
So then would you guys be okay with me reaching out to these three that we used last time, or if you guys come across any, like, we could definitely do that, but I'll, these reach out, have Laura reach out to these three, it looks like it's FSBA, HYA, and McPherson-Jacobson.
Sure.
To say, give us your 45 to 60-day search, what that looks like, cost, maybe calendar, whatever, and then we'll go from there.
And we need it in six days.
And we need it in six days.
Yeah.
We need it by Thursday morning.
Yeah, we'd like it by Thursday. I mean, Andrea, like I said, with FSBA, we've been playing phone tag, but we spoke about, so we can do a, you know, an expedited one, not as long as what we did last time, which was months. So, I mean, I think they've, most of these firms already have them, like, this is what we do regardless if it was now or
Got a product.
November, you know? Okay, so we can send that email out to these three?
Chad, if I may too.
Yeah.
Just one thing before we wrap up. Heather, this is my first search also, so you're not, we're gonna go through this for the first time together.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll send those out to these firms to get that going. You guys take a look at the qualities page there and see, you know, if those are good, if there's more you wanna add, we definitely can or take away. Lastly, before I, before we break, this is just an idea moving forward. I don't know if we'd have to vote on this or not. I don't think we necessarily would have to, because it's not actual meetings. But I think that I, I would like to, we've tried this 10 o'clock for, for workshops. I think it's better for us to move back to 9 o'clock for workshops on Friday mornings, a couple of reasons. One, I think that, I mean, it's now 3:50. A lot of ours have been going to this, when we moved it to 10, it's now going to 3 or 4 o'clock. I think for staff to have Thursdays, if it's a day meeting, and then pretty much 10 to 4, their day-to-day is shot. I think moving it to 9 o'clock, I know it's different than our board meeting is at 10, and that's what we originally talked about in November. But I think giving that extra hour, also when you look at, when we do lunch and break for lunch and things like that, like, it just, I feel like getting a little more chunk of three hours rather than two hours before breaking. That's just me, don't know how anybody else feels.
I agree.
But we can, I mean, I'm just, I'm asking you guys, so what, did you say yes?
I, I agree. I would suggest, if you wanna keep it consistent, let's move meetings and workshops to 9 AM, but if there's, I don't think we should do.
I personally don't care about the, the consistency of the 9 and 10, like, not a big deal to me.
Okay, don't worry about that.
But I, but we can do that if you want.
I'm just one.
But I definitely think that 9 o'clock workshops, it's just, it's just, we get out one or two rather than three or four.
I fully support that.
And it's a big, it's a big difference, I think, for staff. There's only two of us, I mean, so I don't.
That, that, that would be fine with me for workshops. I don't know about meetings, but workshops, yeah.
I like the 10 o'clock workshop, but that's just me.
What does the staff want?
Staff's here anytime, anyway.
I know, but if you, you know, if you were, you made the, I mean, what do you guys, what, what's easier on, because that's what we're talking about, like, what's easier on your staff, I mean.
I mean, would you rather
Yeah.
have it be done at 2?
I mean, Joe,
9?
Joe doesn't commit to about 11 every day.
What does, what does, yeah, what do y'all want, because, yeah, I can show up at 9, 10, 7, 30.
We've got two votes for 9 over there.
That's right, okay.
Right down the row.
Nine.
Three votes, nine, okay.
I just think, yeah, I mean, I, I, so I'm glad, getting you guys out early, whether you're, whether you're gonna go have an early weekend or not, or whatever, but it's, you know, after Tuesday meetings and then Fridays. Yeah, I just,
We put it on Fridays to accommodate your work schedule, because it used to be Tuesday, Thursday.
There were Fridays before that.
Really, Fridays before that?
And then, and when Golden became Chair, it was, went to, went to Tuesdays.
Tuesday, Thursday?
Or Tuesday, Thursdays. So Fridays was the way it was.
Because I've never been a big fan of Fridays because of this reason, holiday weekends, and you wanna leave early on Fridays, but that's another conversation for another day. Everybody's wore out.
I would keep the meetings at 10, just because if people wanna come and do public comment, I think giving them that extra hour, drop off their kids at school or whatever and get here at 10 o'clock is something to consider as opposed to 9.
Right. Well, but, I was gonna say, but in contrast to that, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, but in contrast to that, if you're gonna take time off from work, it might be easier to take time off at the beginning of the day versus taking time off in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, I don't know if we ever have a perfect scenario.
We're never gonna have it. I mean, just look at what we did today. How long did the charter public commenters stay?
Sure.
I mean, if they're committed to be in here, they're gonna be here.
All right, well, we don't have the workshop till three or four weeks anyway, so.
So what time am I gonna be? Sorry.
The next, actually, the next one's on Thursday, because we don't have school. So June 10, 11, 12, right, is the next workshop?
That's the one at 9.
Oh, we're doubling on the 10, that's right. We decided to double up, to do workshop and a meeting. I mean, that was how it was a long time ago, like several, several years ago, it was everything all at once. So I don't know.
Sure was.
I don't know, it's a lot.
That was a lot.
It got a little salty at the end of those days up here sometimes.
That's a lot. It's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff being thrown at you.
Frankie.
Snickers by the end of the day.
So, so it's the 10 is both workshop and meeting. Meeting.
Meeting's the 10.
Meeting and then a workshop? Yeah. Yeah, it's because we have Fridays off in the summertime, the, the staff does, and so. Oh, yeah, and we're gonna be at FSBA that Friday. That's right.
So the next workshop and meeting is the 10.
Correct.
Yes.
Other than, than one, we have a special meeting on Thursday.
Correct.
At 9 AM.
Correct.
All right, I just wanna make sure my calendar's right.
All right. Thank you, staff, and everybody, putting everything together. I hope everybody has a wonderful Memorial Day weekend, and we'll see y'all next week. We are.